All right, we're going to go ahead and begin the board meeting. Good morning. We welcome you to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Please note that Supervisor Hom will be absent from our meeting today. We take note that a quorum of the board is present. The acting chief executive officer, county council, executive officer, and sergeant-at-arms are all here to assist. We will begin today's board meeting with the county's land acknowledgement.
The county of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Tongva, T'atavium, Surrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, Fernandino T'atavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabrielino Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabrielino Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabrielino Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit the Los Angeles City/County Native American Indian Commission website at lanaic.laccounty.gov.
The invocation this morning will be led by Pastor David Laird, Parablossum Forest Square Church, Parablossum from the 5th District, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Henry Fimbres, member, Sons of the American Legion, Monobello from the 1st District. If you are able, please stand.
Dear Jesus, we come right now and we ask for your guidance and the conversations concerning our county. We have lots of needs for a lot of different people. I pray that you will give wisdom to these council members. I pray that their leadership will emphasize servant others, humility, integrity, and courage. I pray they will seize their leader's responsibility to serve the people you have entrusted to them, to lead with an upright heart, and to be an example of good conduct, integrity, faith, and hope. We just ask these things, and we ask that you bless us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. If you are a veteran, you may render a hand salute. And please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
For 23 years, I added two years to that. For 23 years, Pastor David Laird has been in ministry at Parablossum Forest Square Church, which is in the rural eastern part of the Antelope Valley. With a team of loving volunteers, Parablossum Forest Square feeds and clothes more than 300 people a week. A graduate of North Central University, Pastor David has been in pastoral ministry for more than 47 years, including two years as a missionary in Guam. In addition, Pastor David has worked for 20 years at Keppel Union High School District, 16 years as librarian, and for the last four years as a substitute teacher. And you're wearing this in celebration of an autistic student that you have?
Yes, I am, Max.
Max. Pastor David and his wife Laura, who is in the audience, have been married for 31 beautiful years. Their son Kendrick is finishing his second master's degree at Pacific Rim Christian University in Hawaii. Pastor David, thank you for leading us in the invocation and for all the tireless service that you provide for those in need. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Henry Fimbres for being here today and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Henry is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community. He is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and community.
Henry is a dedicated public servant and community leader whose life exemplifies service, integrity, and commitment to others. For over five decades, he proudly called the 1st District his home, actually contributing so many countless ways to the city of Montebello. Henry currently serves as a Training Command of the California State Guard, where he serves as First Lieutenant. He helps to develop and prepare the guard personnel to serve our state in times of need. His military service reflects the same dedication that defined his civilian career, one marked by leadership and compassion. Before joining the State Guard, Henry served as a Chief of Public Safety for the State of California Exposition Park and as Chief of School Safety for the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District. In those roles, he worked tirelessly to ensure safe environments for thousands of students, staff, and visitors, always guided by a deep sense of duty to protect and uplift others. Beyond his professional life, Henry continues to serve his community in many ways. He's the chairperson of the City of Montebello Civil Service Commission, ensuring that there is fairness and merit in local government hiring. He also serves as Vice President of the National Latino Peace Officers Association, East Los Angeles Chapter, where he advocates for diversity, mentorship, and professional development in law enforcement. Henry's dedication extends to his faith and community service. At the Ark Montebello, he plays an active role in both the marriage ministry and the military ministry, offering guidance and encouragement to families and veterans alike. He's also a proud member of the Montebello Alliance Club, supporting local charitable efforts and serves as part of the Honor Guard for American Legion Post 272. And that's where I've seen you on many, many occasions. Henry, on behalf of Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, I want to present you with this certificate that has been signed by all the board members and wish you success and continued support for all your endeavors. We thank you so much. Congratulations to you and your family and for the folks in Montebello, because I know they appreciate you. So with that, I'm going to give you also a challenge coin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. Oh, one more. You're too fast.
All right, we have two beautiful puppies with us today. This is Kyla, and that is Fern, two-month-old huskies who are equal parts adorable and loving, and they really are. This dynamic duo is playful and curious, spending their time alternating between exploring, playing, eating, and of course, napping a must. After being transferred from the Palmdale Care Center, they've been staying with a foster family, and I was told that the foster family failed because they kept one of them. But now, these two need to find forever homes. So to open up your heart and your home to Kyla or Fern or both, call the Agora Care Center at 818-991-0071. Again, Kyla and Fern, and they really are very, very sweet. And he said they're not going to get too big. Their mom is about 40 pounds. So that's, I think there's something more than husky in them. Yeah. And now, please turn your attention to the screen for our pet from Palmdale. Meet Hewitt, a four-year-old German Shepherd. The care center staff has been very sweet and would love, he's been very sweet and would love to make him some once-for-ever partner. We have a lot of large dogs in the Antelope Valley. We have a lot of animals in all of our shelters, but up in the Antelope Valley, we have a lot of large dogs who are abandoned into the desert, who are looking for loving homes. The bigger dogs mean even more love and more snuggles. So if you want to give Hewitt the love he deserves, call the Palmdale Care Center at All right. With that, Executive Officer, will you please call the agenda?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today's agenda will begin on page two, Set Matter One. Set Matter One is a report by the Acting Chief Executive Officer on the county's budget, including the latest federal and state policy changes with potential impacts to county staff, contracted providers, and service delivery. On Set Matter One, this item will be held for report. On page three, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, Items 2 through 10. On Item Six, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item Eight, Supervisor Solis requests that this item be held. Also, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item 10, the Executive Officer of the Board requests that this item be continued two weeks to November 4th, 2025. On Page 10, Administrative Matters, Items 11 to 45. On Item 12, Supervisor Horvath requests that this item be held. This item relates to Item 27. On Item 19, the Director of Mental Health would like to revise the board letter to remove recommendation number four. On Item 21, Supervisor Mitchell is recusing herself from the vote pursuant to Government Code Section 84308 because she received a contribution or contributions of more than $500 within the past 12 months from Jim Mangia, who was a party participant or agent of a party or participant in the proceeding. On Item 26, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item 27, Supervisor Horvath requests that this item be held. This item relates to Item 12. On Page 37, the Chief Probation Officer requests that this item be continued two weeks to November 4th, 2025. On Item 41, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Page 33, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda which were posted more than 72 hours in advance of the meeting as indicated on the supplemental agenda, Items 43A through 43F. On Page 34, Ordnance for Introduction, Item 46. On Page 35, Notices of Closed Session, Items CS1 through CS7. On Items CS1 through 4, and 5, One Case, and 6, the Chief Probation Officer requests that these items be continued two weeks to November 4th, 2025, as indicated on the supplemental agenda. Also, on Item CS5, County Council requests that One Case be continued one week to October 28th, 2025, as indicated on the supplemental agenda. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair. The requests for continuances through CS7 are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Horvath to approve the items. That will be the order. Executive Officer, please play the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
So today's meeting order will be Set Matter One, then Public Comment on Items Not Held for Discussion by the Board, including Closed Session Matters, followed by Item Eight, then Items 12 and 27, which will be taken up together, followed by General Public Comment, and then finishing with Closed Session. Before we begin, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information and explain the speaking roles.
Good morning, members of the public. If you wish to participate in public comment, you may do so in person or remotely. To participate remotely, please visit our website at www.bos.lacounty.gov to register and join the meeting, or you may call 213-306-3065 and use access code 25317277601 and meeting password 2672025. You will have the opportunity to address the board throughout the meeting. For items not held by the board, you will receive one minute for one item and up to two minutes for two or more items. For items held by supervisors, you will have one minute to address the board, one minute to address the board on general public comment, for a total of six minutes. When it is your turn to speak, if registered on a computer or device, you will hear a beep and your name will be called. Or if joining by telephone, you will hear your line is unmuted, your area code, and the first three digits of your phone number will be called. To ensure we hear from both in-person and remote speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so. We will now move on to Set Matter One, Report on the County's Budget. For members of the public joining us remotely to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature if you are online, or press star 3 if on a telephone. Representatives from the Chief Executive Office will make a presentation. For the departmental speakers, please state your name and title for the record when you address the board.
All right, Joe, do you want to begin?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today I will provide another update on the federal government shutdown as part of our ongoing updates on the budget pressures facing the county. This is our third presentation on the shutdown, and while there are few signs of a resolution to the deadlock in DC, there is some good news here in California. Yesterday, the state confirmed that they would bridge CalWorks benefits through the month of November. As of Friday, when this presentation posted, we expected these benefits to run out in October, so this is a welcome reprieve. The state is also bridging county administrative subsidies for both the CalWorks and CalFresh programs, ensuring that our DPSS staff will remain on the job and continue to operate both programs during the shutdown through November. That said, we are a mere 10 days from a benefits cliff for nearly 1 million county households who rely on CalFresh to feed themselves and their families. During today's presentation, we will first update your board and the public on our advocacy efforts in DC to avoid a continued shutdown, as well as our work with the state to address any gap in benefits. We will then focus on what we're doing locally to prepare for any gap in benefits, including a discussion of the network of supports and partnerships already in place, contingency planning for the month of November and beyond should the shutdown persist that long, and our plan for keeping the public informed to further limit the damage done by the shutdown. So I'll be joined today by a couple members of the CEO team to make the initial presentation, Angela Ovai, Acting Branch Manager, CEO Legislative Affairs and Intergovernmental Relations, and Dr. Carrie Miller, Branch Manager for the CEO Policy Implementation and Alignment Branch. We have department heads and departmental representatives who are also on hand in case the board has any questions for them after the presentation. Please bring up the next slide, and I will turn the floor over to Angela Ovai to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Joe, and good morning, Supervisors. Today marks day 21 of the shutdown, and as of tomorrow will be the second-longest shutdown in history. The House of Representatives remains in recess, and on Friday, Speaker Johnson announced that he was designating this week as a district work period, meaning no votes or House hearings are expected to be held during this time. The Senate's 11th vote on the House-pass continuing resolution failed on Monday with a vote of 50 to 43, and the Senate is scheduled to meet again today, but Senator Majority Leader John Thune has acknowledged that a longer-term stopgap spending bill may be necessary if the Senate cannot pass the current continuing resolution. Democrats and Republicans have not formally negotiated on the CR, and Democrats continue to advocate that a renewal of ACA subsidies, which expire on December 31st, be part of the negotiations to reopen the government. Now, a new development is that Republican leaders are quietly talking with senior members and White House staff officials over how to possibly structure and advance an extension of the ACA subsidies before the end of the year. And we are continuing to work with the departments to analyze any proposals that come forward. October 31st is the date to watch as a number of additional federal programs will run out of funding, including WIC, which was funded through the end of the month with diverted funds. States have been advised that November SNAP payments are unlikely if the shutdown continues past October 27th, and Laird is preparing a letter to the Secretary of Agriculture and Congress requesting the expenditure of any remaining contingency funds for SNAP, along with additional resources required to fully support participants. And we've also asked our National Association of Counties to do a similar effort. In an effort to put pressure on Democrats to end the government shutdown, the Senate is expected to vote this week on legislation that would enable payment for certain essential federal workers that are required to work during the shutdown. However, Democrats are not expected to support this bill. The administration had planned last week on Friday to announce additional cuts or elimination of some federal programs, but those announcements were delayed due to pending lawsuits. As Joe mentioned, we are in communication with the state and our state associations over the weekend to discuss the upcoming lapse in SNAP benefits, and he shared those details with you in his opening remarks. Yesterday, Governor Newsom said that if the shutdown does not end before the end of this week, CalFresh benefits will likely be delayed into November, or November, I should say. And he also noted that some state-funded food benefit, such as the California Food Assistance Program, which provides food assistance, excuse me, for non-citizens who do not qualify for CalFresh, would also be impacted. And in DC, we continue to work with our National Association as well as our congressional leaders to advance for the government to reopen. Thank you. Next slide, please.
So Supervisors, last week Supervisor Barker had asked, when are the hammers falling on these programs? So this is our hammer slide. What we're representing here is, in a pictorial way, the benefits, the programs that are at risk, and when they end. We've laid out the primary safety net programs we discussed last week. This includes CalFresh, CalWorks, Section 8 housing, and public housing maintenance. As I mentioned at the top of the presentation, this slide is already out of date since when it was posted on Friday, based on the news that we shared about the state stepping in to bridge CalWorks benefits and cover county administrative costs for both CalWorks and CalFresh for another month. So each bar shows how long funding lasts before it runs out, as indicated by the red vertical line, and includes the monthly funding amount. The bars in green are administrative costs, with losses hitting the county budget and our staff. The bars in blue are benefits going directly to residents, with losses hitting our communities in ways that will indirectly impact the county budget by increasing unmet needs for food and for housing. Given the state's support to bridge funding gaps, the second two bars from the top, representing CalFresh administrative costs and CalWorks benefits, will be pushed out one more month to the end of November. So that is the change to the slide that was not reflected when we posted it on Friday. This announcement means an additional $112 million in funding will be made available for CalWorks benefits and another $48 million to support CalFresh admin for the month of November. The State Department of Social Services intends to notify counties of additional updates if the shutdown drags on beyond November, as the state continues to refine its cash balances and look at options to help the counties bridge these benefits. DPSS previously reported that they had enough cash to cover CalWorks admin through December 31st, so that information at the bottom of the slide did not change. So based on these changes, our focus right now is on the top bar. This is the $320 million monthly CalFresh benefits that are still slated to end October 31st without relief from the federal government. And while the state continues to explore options for CalFresh in the event of a prolonged shutdown scenario, the state has made clear that none of the options, none of them, would be available in time to cover all November CalFresh benefits, nor does the state currently have access to enough general fund dollars to cover more than the $1 billion in statewide benefits for November. So there's two problems here, Supervisors. One is the mechanism for using state money to bridge a federal benefit. Right now, it's only federal money going into those benefits. And then the other issue is financial. Where is the money going to come from at the state level? For these reasons, and as Angela mentioned, the governor issued a press release warning for recipients yesterday that they will likely face a benefits gap for some part of November should the shutdown continue past the end of the month, and our trigger date is Friday. If we don't find out by Friday that there is some resolution, we know that some part of November benefits will not be paid to recipients. Just another point of news, the California Welfare Directors Agency also indicated they have received several inquiries from counties about the feasibility of local they have received several inquiries from counties about the feasibility of locally backfilling CalFresh benefits, and I know we had a discussion on this during the first presentation on the shutdown. The agency confirmed there is no available, I'm sorry, they're an association, not an agency. The association confirmed there is no available reimbursement mechanism for counties who choose to issue benefits payments either directly through, directly or through funding to outside organizations, and they warned counties that they would be assuming significant general fund exposure if they decide to advance payments, which is what we discussed in our first presentation. Supervisors, I want to flag one more risk, and we flagged it before, but I don't want to lose sight of it. While we're focused today on the immediate risks due to the shutdown, we can't lose sight of the additional pressures that will come to bear as HR1, the so-called big bill, is implemented. We haven't touched on this in the past few presentations, but it is still a huge risk. And as we've said in earlier budget updates, the precise impacts of the big bill will not be clear until the rules and regulations of implementation are established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and other agencies tasked with making the bill a reality. So at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Carrie Miller, who's going to discuss what we're doing locally to plan for a benefits gap in November.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as you heard, our first priority is about the loss of CalFresh benefits, and with that, trying to figure out how best to provide food to our residents. As you can see on the left slide, the need is really great. We have about 980,000 LA County households who rely on CalFresh now, which translates to about 1.5 million children and adults that rely on this program to buy groceries. They only have 10 days of grocery money left between now and whenever the government One of the things that we're looking at is what are our existing resources in terms of supporting these families? And one of the advantages we have is a very strong network of food pantries and local CBOs and partners. We have more than 600 partners with 940 sites across LA County that are all coordinated with the LA Regional Food Bank. The county and our partners have a number of existing programs that are offering resources right now as we speak with residents who are facing food insecurity, which is outlined on the slide. I won't walk through all of these resources now, but as you can see that the majority of these links are supporting food and folks who are food insecure. However, we also included supports that affect rent, mortgage, and housing supports, because we know that people, once they lose this CalFresh benefit, may need to start spending more of their money on these other types of services as well. Next slide, please. So as part of our contingency planning, we've been working very closely with a number of our county departments and other partners in the community to figure out what are actions we can take now to help mitigate the impacts of these delays and try to increase or address the increasing demand that we are anticipating in the month of November. So we've been talking to a number of folks, and one of the key strategies that we're recommending to the, for the board's consideration is to increase the capacity of our food pantries by allocating an additional $10 million in funding to help them meet this anticipated surge of food requests. This would allow us to not only provide additional food, but it would allow us to add additional sites, drive-through sites, and make it people for access, to access the food that they need within their own communities. Our inquiry so far to partners who work in the food insecurity fields across county departments, as well as our community partners, is that the $10 million initial investment is the right starting point for where we are. This was the strategy that we took during COVID-19. Our first initial strategy was to invest $10 million with our local food pantries, and then we increased that amount accordingly as needed as the pandemic continued. What that funding allowed us to do back in COVID was to provide additional donations of food to as many as 550,000 residents, which included 10 to 12 meals per resident, add an additional 500 sites, and this funding and support lasted for eight weeks. And it included 15 county-sponsored food distributions that served thousands of people at each one. Many of those were up to 3,500, and there was one site that actually served up to 7,000 people in a single day. We also are having positive discussions with our managed care plans about supporting food distribution, and we are hopeful that they will partner with us in increasing the food, the supply as well, and we will continue those conversations. This slide also notes that if this shutdown continues beyond December, that we have other options that we can explore, including expanding grocery vouchers, looking at grants to EBT vendors, and also looking at expanding our, our emergency rent relief programs. These potential actions could be implemented as part of a longer-term strategy that focuses on significant increases to food distribution and housing supports, which we know both are critical components of our safety net that is very likely to become at risk if this shutdown continues beyond December. Next slide, please. And so what we are doing now is we are working with our partners on a messaging campaign, both to those who may be food insecure, but also to folks who are interested in helping to donate and help those folks in need. So we have a two-part communication strategy right now that's being led by the Department of Public Social Services. Part one includes efforts to notify recipients that their CalFresh benefits will be impacted and sharing information about where to go if they need food assistance. The second part is a call to action for our public seeking their help in increasing donations of food and other critical supports to our local CBOs and other providers. DPSS has launched a text and email campaign already that has allowed their recipients to know that this is coming, and they started that campaign last Thursday. The messaging will be amplified through social media posts, and the posts that are being offered are in five languages that include English, Spanish, Korean, Mandarin, and Armenian. We also are working with DPSS, DCBA, and DEO on trying to leverage our network of EBT grocers to also get information out at point-of-sale to either A, let folks know that these delays are coming, but also to let folks know if they're interested in donating, where to do that and how to provide those donations. Our countywide communications team has created a social media toolkit that urges residents to find help if they are in need, as well as encourage people to donate and support these folks. We are also looking at giving a give early campaign to those who already are primed to give food and donations during Thanksgiving and the Christmas winter holidays time period because they're already willing to do this. So what we're going to do is ask people to give early because we know that the need is going to be coming early this year. And I do want to say that the social media toolkits are being shared as we speak and are starting to go out. We also want to make sure to share that the campaign that we're doing around communications is aligned with the state, and we're staying closely aligned with them to make sure that our message is mirroring the timing and effect of what they're sharing as well. And with that, I will turn this back to Joe.
Supervisors, let me conclude the presentation with a discussion of our immediate next steps. Carrie mentioned the recommended investment of $10 million in the Regional Food Bank to support a surge in food distribution at local sites. If by Friday this week, the federal shutdown remains unresolved, then residents will for sure see a gap in their November food benefits. I mentioned that earlier in the presentation. The Department of Public Health has an existing contract with the Regional Food Bank. If that day comes and goes, we will work with the department to increase that contract by $10 million on an emergency basis. It's a very similar model to what we did during COVID, as, as Carrie mentioned, so we have a good playbook we can borrow from. And then at a later time, we will, we will return to your board with a recommended source of the $10 million that we would add back to the DPH budget to cover the emergency contracting needs, and that would likely take place in your board's regular mid-year adjustment in February. The last point I'll make is this. Carrie talked about how we are reaching out to all of the folks in this space who provide food or otherwise support diapers and pet food or whatever it is for people who need some additional help. I see this as an all-county, you know, all-partners moment, all hands on deck. This is not something that the county can shoulder alone, given the magnitude of the cuts. And I'm concerned that our partners aren't as concerned as we are. So we've been ringing the alarm bell for the last two weeks, and as Carrie mentioned, we've had some positive conversations over the last few days as people start to realize that this is looking more and more likely to happen. And so we're hopeful that in the next two, three, four days, we'll have other partners step up, including Health Plans, Philanthropy, and others who we've been talking to, just to add some more capacity to the system during that benefits gap. And I'll conclude my presentation there. We should be on slide, the question slide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, and thank you for the work that you're doing, Carrie, to put this all together. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and, and I agree. Thank you for ringing the alarm bell, which we have done through these standing items, and really being very public and direct and upfront about what the general public's going to face and, and hopefully getting the attention of our partners. As you mentioned, literally ringing the alarm bell and hoping people hear, I got a text from a community college president in my district who, who, who heard the clearing call and is talking about how he's going to partner with private entity to provide five meals a week to every student on campus. So I want to use that as an example to reach out to other community colleges to figure out what resources they have. Couple quick questions for me, Madam Chair. Again, the mechanism issue. In your walk-around yesterday, Joe, we talked about it, and I'm, and I'm stuck on that because I thought there was a mechanism, and I'm not sure if it was the state or the county that would use it, when CalFresh benefits were lost through fraud, there was a way that benefits could be, you know, uploaded to their card. I don't know how immediate, but there was a way in which people were made whole. I never assumed that that was the federal government that took that action, so I just want to continue to push back on the lack of mechanism assertion. So can you help me? Can someone help me understand if there's a difference?
Supervisor, Michael Sylvester, Chief Deputy Administration for DPSS. The fraud fulfillment on a, on a fraud, fraud transaction is a request and, I'm sorry. Your, your particular question about fraud and, and reimbursement to the card versus where we are today.
Yes, yes, because I, because I'm hearing that, that the state says that we don't have a mechanism, that because the, the resources come directly from the federal government, that there is no way in which the state or county could add benefits to a card, you know, if we were to magically find the money. So that's the piece that I'm confused about.
So the, the fraud restoration actually does run right back through the same channel. It goes back through the federal processor, FIS, who actually provides it today, and it's on a request and, and, and receive basis.
Got it, okay.
So that's slightly different.
So it is, okay. I never understood that it was the feds that did that directly. I want to make sure I understand the, the good news, and I hope you'll update that chart because I'd like, I'd like to be able to share that chart with my constituents. And so the relief, the good news, the relief that we got from the state was on admin costs only, not benefits, correct? So you're, that, if we can go back to that chart.
Yeah. Can we bring up the slides so we can look at it? I think it's slide three.
So the one line, the admin line will extend to November, but the beneficiaries, the 320 per month cash benefits to recipients still ends October. Is that correct?
Right. So, so the first bar from the top, the cash benefits to recipients under CalFresh, that ends in October. The next two bars below it, county administrative costs for CalFresh and benefits for CalWorks, those are pushed out another month. So one benefit program gets us an additional month, and that's why we focus today on the CalFresh benefits.
On the, on the food element. Excellent. Another question to, to Lair. There are two safety net funds at the state. There's the Safety Net Reserve Account, all done through budget work. Then there's the Child and Family, I don't remember the name, which was the sub-account used to help increase CalWorks benefits annually over the last several years. I know the Safety Net Reserve was drawn down in the 2425 budget year to keep from cutting into the programs as it was designed to do. My question is, are there any resources in either of those two accounts that could be tapped at an emergency basis? The Safety Net Reserve was designed for CalWorks and Medi-Cal specifically, but the legislature could opine if, if we were to use it for CalFresh. I don't know if there's any money left in that account, that's one question. But the sub-account that's been used over years to increase the CalWorks benefit probably has some money in it. Is that something that the state is considering, or if we should ask them to?
Yes, we will ask them. As of now, they have not indicated that they're going in that direction, but we will reach out to DOF today.
And I will give you in two seconds the name of the first sub-account that I could remember. That I know is an ongoing fund because, again, it's been tapped to increase CalWorks benefit on an annual basis since 2017 or thereabouts. So hopefully there's some resources there that could be tapped into. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yeah, thank you both CEO and the panel for your, your answers and at least the direction that, that we have a path forward. But I am concerned, very much so, that in 10 days, we're going to see CalFresh, and that's, that is around the block. And even though we're going to put resources in, 10 million, it always takes time to get that on the ground. So what is the expedited plan, given that this is, this is upon us? And even if the Senate does something, is that still going to hold, hold us over? Are we still going to have sufficient support and, and, you know, food product to be able to put out? Can you respond?
Yes. So what we're, we are in contact with our LA Regional Food Bank. We have an existing contract that we could leverage and do so quickly. They are, the plan would be that typically it takes one to three weeks to purchase food. However, what they will do is look for existing food purchases so that that can happen within a week, and then we will start to roll the funding out that way. They have said that it works on a rolling basis, so they wouldn't need all the funding at once, and they wouldn't be purchasing all the food at once. So as the weeks go on, we believe that that would suffice. And even though 10 million doesn't sound like a lot, when we've talked to them and other partners who do this work, they said that they feel like that's a very good initial investment and enough to work with through November and potentially into December as well.
So one question I have is during COVID, you know, Regional Food Bank held these big drive-ins where you would get 2,000, 3,000, and people come driving through, and they would get text messages from DPSS and the surrounding area. But nonetheless, there's still a vacuum, and I want to underscore that in places like, for example, the San Gabriel Valley. Regional Food Bank, we would have to tell them where to go and, and, and who to include. And there are other CBOs that we have partnered with that I think in some ways do a better, more strategic focus outreach because of the immigrant population. And I'm not just talking about Latinos or Spanish speakers, I'm talking about all the other groups, particularly Vietnamese and also Filipino. And I really believe that we need to think about that. I think our offices might be able to give you some CBOs that are doing some of this work right now, because I know that is, it is a burden for LA Regional Food Bank because they're based, they're based on volunteers, just like all these other groups are. And it, and it isn't always, you know, supply side isn't always there. And I'm very concerned about that because we have people that are already in our cities putting out food through programs that they've designed with the cities. So might Regional Food Bank also connect with those different cities that are doing that right now? I could think off the top of my head, Omani, Baldwin Park, Montebello, Pomona, and others that have good, you know, access to, to folks in the, in the pipeline. So I would recommend that. And then I know 10 million is just the, the starting point. So I know- So I know, we spoke yesterday, Joe, about what other resources might be made available, looking at other PFUs in the future for other things. And I am equally concerned about the rent assistance, because when you see food assistance, rent is probably already delayed, because people are going to buy food before they pay rent. So we can't assume that they're going to stay put, and they may be evicted. So what plans do we have for that?
So, I mean, those are good suggestions, Supervisor, and we'll certainly work with the food bank. And I know that Dr. Contreras had mentioned hosting, potentially hosting food drives at the DPSS office locations, so that we make sure we have good coverage throughout the county. You know, I think it's a good opportunity to talk about the phasing of our planning. Right now, as Carrie mentioned, we're in Phase One, which is getting food on the street for a potential gap in November benefits. We have a Phase Two if the shutdown stretches on longer than November. That's when we start to look at needs for rent relief, for example. And we've talked a lot with DCBA about their timing for the emergency rent relief program, and the fact that the applications, I believe, open up in November, December, and they will have a sense of what their need is. And at that point, the timing is good. I think we have the ability between now and then to figure out what resources will be made available, probably through a bunch of different funding sources, to meet that need, and then we can report back to the board on that at that time.
I am concerned, though, that, I wonder if there's a hotline or a rolling amount or a number that tells us what people are already at risk, or they already missed their payment for this month. And then now we're going into November, so are we going to be in a position to be able to help backfill some of that? And that's what I'm concerned about, because I'm assuming people right now, as we hear folks coming in and calling our offices, that it's already upon us. So if we could think that through, and what are resources, our CBOs that are out there that have their radar on, and people are already letting them know, it would be good for us to have that idea.
Yeah. I think it's a good, as we talk about the network of folks who are in the space who can help, it's a good opportunity for us, when we talk to philanthropy, to talk about some of the gaps, because right now, we don't have a vehicle for getting rent relief out on the street as the program builds up. But maybe there are some opportunities through philanthropic sources to get that out sooner. And so that is one of our priorities, is to see who else can step into the, step in here to help us cover some of our operational gaps, excuse me, before we can catch up on the program that we're launching.
So Community Foundation comes to mind, Amity and others that have been helping us and the county in the past. So just having those conversations and trying to figure that out, pulling them in, I think would be very, very helpful. And I am also concerned about the vendor grants, potentially EBT for the small mom-and-pop stores in our neighborhood, and many of them are immigrant and have, you know, they're monolingual. So I think we have to make sure that we are really reaching as many people as possible at varying different languages. So I don't know that the five is going to cover it, that was mentioned earlier, Carrie. I know I have a lot of Filipino and Indo-American folks that run some of these operations out there, and I would really want to see how we're really stretching the net there to get to them. Other than that, it's just sad news. I'm glad the governor's helping us. I want to give thanks to them and the legislature, and we'll be calling on them more. And having just, you know, one message all the time, I would love to see talking points that we can share, even with our friends and CBOs out in the community, because they're also trying to share their frustration and their pain. At the same time, if we are going to provide relief, they need to know that, so they can also tell their clients and the people that they serve that we are on top of this, and that we do have plans. I just think that where there's a big gap right now, information gap with some of our providers. So thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, Joe, for your help.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you all for your presentation as well. I too am deeply concerned about the very real impacts that this shutdown is already having on our communities and what is on the horizon. Thousands of Angelenos, as you have said, rely on CalFresh and CalWorks, and these are our neighbors, our friends, our family members who need support now more than ever. I appreciate that the state is able to cover CalWorks through December, but the loss of November CalFresh benefits means families and individuals across Los Angeles County will go without food, relying heavily on food banks, uncertain of where their next meal might come from. And so I know our district too is also receiving calls from constituents who are scared, who are looking for help, and I believe this is only the beginning. The presentation did not, unless I missed it, explicitly mention WIC. Did I miss that in your presentation?
So WIC has funding through the end of this month, and the administration has not signaled whether or not they intend to divert more funds towards that.
And is there planning for a potential loss of WIC benefits included in the contingency planning if that comes to be?
Yes, Supervisor. We are looking at all impacts to benefits and making sure that we're able to cover them as we anticipate the deed arising. So we will look at that as well.
Okay. I want to make sure that's included. Is the Office of Food Systems involved in our county's response, and how are we leveraging their existing partnerships?
Yes, we have reached out to them. They have an emergency meeting around this issue that one of our team members will be attending on Friday, so we can better make sure we are aligned and coordinated with the efforts that they are moving forward. And we are reaching out to members and have spoken to a number of members of the Equity Roundtable that they run to make sure that we are leveraging all existing resources as possible.
I know that you mentioned a lot of social media platform information, toolkits that people can use, but as you can see, not a lot of people are here, but that doesn't, we already know that more than a million people in LA County are impacted, and that probably means either they're afraid to leave their homes because of the targeting that's happening by our federal government, or they are working and they can't be here to voice their concern. So how are we doing intentional outreach to make sure that what we're putting on social media, what we are doing as a county is actually reaching the people who are intended to get this information and support beyond social media posts?
It's a great question. One of the things that we have reached out to is our 2-1-1 LA partner, because we know that a lot of folks who are in a position of having needs but are not connected to the internet or are not on social media, call 2-1-1. So we've already alerted them of this. They are planning and ready with what the answers can be and what types of additional supports and referrals they can make, as well as we've been partnering with DPSS, who has cell phone numbers and emails for every recipient on the benefits, and they are sending out messages that started last week directly to impacted recipients, letting them know what is happening and where to go if they have a need for resources, which includes not only links to local pantries, but also to 2-1-1 LA if they want to talk to somebody live.
And will we be getting a written plan of what DPS's outreach plan is?
Yes, Supervisor. Yes, we have our communication plan, which includes coordination with the state. We launched our text and email campaign last week, as Carrie alluded to. We also have our, the state is launching theirs this week. So we're coordinating those so that we can make sure that they're not confusing the public as well. One of the things that we're making sure to emphasize in the communication is not only informing the public about the potential delay in benefits, because it could be any week ahead that it could be resolved and that we could move forward with, but also the need for them to continue to comply with any requirements that are associated with the programs, because we don't want them to misunderstand and think that if there's a federal shutdown, I don't need to turn in my paperwork, I don't need to follow through with that. We want to make sure that we don't have anything happening there. So we're trying to message on multiple fronts, and we're also tapping in, the state actually has their own texting campaign capabilities besides ours, so that should be a supplement to this. And we did push it out last week. We did also have a meeting last week, and our communication team was 60 promotoras to make sure we can get it out through the community. We met with 90 community health workers, so we're really trying to push it out into multiple channels so that they're informed about it, and they know what to do to try to hold on to their benefits as well, because we don't want that lost in the messaging. We want to make sure that the comprehensive message is going out.
That's helpful to hear. That was sort of my next question, is the frontline workers who are actually connecting with folks, making sure that they are trained and getting that information as well. So, you know, while we have this conversation here, not everyone will get that. So I'm glad to hear that you're being intentional in making sure that everyone who's fielding those calls actually has the right information. The county's action plan also mentions expanded food donation sites and food drives, and you have talked, you've touched on this a little bit, but is the county planning to host any official food drives beyond what you've already talked about in terms of the partnerships? I know in my district in particular, we're obviously working very closely with communities in the northeast San Fernando Valley, and our county focuses its resources where need is most concentrated and highest. And also representing West Los Angeles, there are people in West LA who need help, and the West LA Regional Food Bank needs support to support them. There's often a presumption that because there is a concentration of wealth, that there isn't a concentration of poverty there, but there are diverse communities who are relying on them and support. So how are we, how are we making sure that we are leveraging all possible opportunities? That we're focusing on, will there be county offices that accept canned food donations that we can then share or deliver? Can you talk a little bit more about that and how people can get engaged in that effort?
Yes, absolutely. So we are looking at, in terms of increasing food distribution, we're looking at all channels. So we're looking at our food banks, we're looking at all of them, we're very well of the West Food Bank as well, and trying to figure out, how do we leverage all partners across the county, because this is an issue that's going to affect everybody. So we are looking at how we get funding out and support. Like I say, a lot of the partners that we're working with are also looking at ways that they can contribute and give to other resources as well, so we make sure we cover the area. We are looking also at our, in our Chief Information Office, we have GI coding mapping, where we can look at where are the greatest needs, and overlay that with the local food pantries to make sure that we are hitting the areas of most need and greatest need, and that there aren't any food deserts. And if so, then make sure we're targeting those communities. But I would definitely invite information from your offices. If there are particular communities that you are worried about, let us know, and we can work with our partners to make sure that we are targeting those in particular. Additionally, we are looking at other types of ways to leverage food distribution, and so depending on, again, how long this goes, there are other things that we've talked about in our planning through the Department of Public Health, for example, that looks at Protos distribution through a contract with three different community-based organizations that actually serve 19 other sites. And so, and DPSS actually has four contracts with CBOs that do food distribution almost countywide. And so we're trying to leverage all of those access points, figure out where they are, and make sure that there's no area that would be left untouched, is into the best of our abilities of covering all the deserts.
And is there geographic restriction on anyone who's able to access those food banks or any of the resources that are being provided? Like, if there's an office in the valley, is that only available to valley residents, for example?
No, absolutely not. And, great question. We will make sure everything is available. And one of the things that's good about what we did in COVID, which we're going to leverage this time, is we can set up additional sites wherever we see a need. So we don't have to wait on looking for where there's existing infrastructure already. We can decide, hey, here's an area of need, we want to set up a site, and then find a place to do that. We did leverage that during COVID. There was 15 county-sponsored sites of areas of land that we provided, so that folks could set up these sites. And as Michael mentioned, DPSS has already offered up all of its parking lots to be these sites if we need to. And then, of course, if there's other sites within your community that are within county control, we could use that and leverage that infrastructure to make sure we're setting up sites and covering all the areas we need.
That's really great. And I will say, to my previous question, you know, there are a number of community-based organizations who are essentially functioning as the frontline, because we have community members who don't want to be anywhere near a government office for fear of being targeted. And so making sure that we're not only, I'm glad that we're using our offices and our county spaces, and making sure that we're working with our community partners who will get those calls, perhaps even more than we will, is important to make sure that they are involved, because they'll be able to connect with people, you know, just in a way that's different than just sort of setting up a site and hoping that people show up. And so that sort of intentional community connection, I think, can go a long way, and I'll make sure that my office is doing that on behalf of our district. I'm sure my colleagues will do the same, based on their comments as well. But I think just being mindful that, you know, there may be community partners who are better positioned to make those connections on our behalf will go a long way in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. And I want to also thank Joe and your team, and Angela, and Carrie, and everybody for today's update on the impacts of the federal government shutdown on county program services. And you know, there are many that don't think it impacts local. They think it's all about Washington DC. But they don't understand the trickle-down effect that it has. And I think it's important, and I appreciate the deeper dive into how the shutdown is impacting county revenues and the expected disruption of CalFresh benefits. The link to which this shutdown is going is really deeply troubling, and not only just at this level, but, I mean, across the state. I mean, I think LA County is better positioned in some ways than other counties that already are facing challenges as it relates to, especially those without the food. This comes at a time when the county is already facing massive financial challenges, and it's not lost on me that departments like DPSS have had to put curtailments into play and are being asked to do more with less. And now you've got people coming in that, quite frankly, need more. And so I want to thank the department's heads and the entire county team for going the extra mile, because that's really what it's going to take for all of us as county employees to go the extra mile. I want to let LA County residents know that we are planning ahead. And Carrie, I really appreciate the fact that we've got the holidays coming up, and it's time now for us to begin giving. I know I'm one of those frustrated people before Halloween that see Christmas, you know, carols being played, but I think it's time for us to step up our game and ask people to open their hearts and their checkbooks sooner rather than later, although I guess now would be then, Bill, right? It's not checkbooks anymore. I just dated myself. Immediate communication with our impacted communities is priority number one, especially for those receiving benefits from CalFresh. And I do applaud our efforts to partner with local food banks and leverage nonprofit and philanthropic support to help fill the vacuum and meet the needs of our vulnerable residents. But let's not forget that with the fires, I've seen firsthand how stretched our food banks are. To this day, on Saturdays, at one of the food distribution sites, the line is literally going around the block, and that is without the fear of benefit cuts. So recognize that this is just one more layer of need for the food banks, and they estimate that the number of means, meals they provide pales in comparison to the number of meals provided by our CalFresh. So, I mean, think about that. They're already providing, and with CalFresh, they know that the number of meals exceeds their capacity. So I agree with you, Supervisor, at least I think 10 million is a tip of the iceberg. But there's no question that we are going to have to do more, and I would even say, you know, maybe a campaign within the county to have our county family begin donating, something that I would wholeheartedly support. We must push lawmakers to pass the federal budget, and I think we, it's incumbent upon us to recognize that this is impacting people's lives, and we need to do what's best for our constituents and recognize that this impact is not going to be, once it reopens, it's not going to be a quick recovery. And I know that with COVID, we saw it, and I think it's important for us to be prepared for the long haul. If the switch were to be turned back on on Friday, we're still going to have to face If the switch were to be turned back on on Friday, we're still going to have to face a lot of the fallout from what's taking place. So I, again, want to thank you all. I am very proud of this county because we do talk it, but we walk it when it comes to the most vulnerable population. And I remind people, our budget is almost two-thirds health and welfare. And that is serving the most vulnerable. We haven't talked about public health and health and the impact it's having on them. But again, it's a trickle-down, it's a domino effect as it relates to the, the closure of the federal government. And, and we are the ones that are left holding the bag because we're not going to lock up our hospitals and turn people away. We can't. Or we're not going to, DPS S is not going to furlough all their staff and say, we're not open for business. We don't do that. So I want to thank you all. And I hope next week we've got better news, for sure. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Agree with everything that all my colleagues said. Just a couple of things hit me as I listened. First of all, my team was told, I think just yesterday, that the outreach was expected to come from individual impacted county departments. I would hope, based on what we've heard today, that our county YCOM's team would be engaged because it's got to go far and wide beyond just impacted departments. So is that the plan?
Yes, Supervisor. Actually, the social media campaign that was launched this morning was by Countywide Communications.
Excellent, thank you. Two more quick things, Madam Chair. The, the slide that shows us the time of the federal funding lapses. And I've always said, and because I've lived it and seen it my whole career, the people who will be impacted, it's the cumulative effect. You know, if I am on CalFresh, I'm on CalWorks, I very likely have some kind of housing subsidy. And the one entitlement that I saw here, that I realized is missing is childcare. Our subsidized childcare has a federal funding element. And then Head Start is all feds. And so do we know what's going to happen on the childcare piece? Because again, it's the cumulative effect that a family is going to be hit from a variety of, of, of cuts. As well as the childcare element is, you know, also the community of providers on the childcare side who will lose income as well as the lost benefits. So if we could know where we are in childcare and Head Start. I don't know that I've heard any press accounts in terms of impact to Head Start. The, and lastly, the $10 million figure, I agree, it feels like a drop in the bucket. And as we continue to use kind of our experience with COVID as the example, the difference is during COVID, CalFresh benefits continued to roll. So the people that showed up at our food banks were folks, workers who, whose income was impacted. They couldn't go to work because of COVID. But CalFresh benefits continued to roll. So with acknowledging that people are still lining up for all of the reasons, fire, ICE invasion, CalFresh loss is a whole new population that we didn't see during COVID. And so I continue to just elevate. I appreciate the 10 million is what people think is enough. Now, if this is going to continue into the latter part of this year, perhaps into the new year, we certainly pray not. We need to be clear about what the dollar figure really would be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Executive Officer, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers.
Emilio, did you want to say anything, by the way? I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers that have signed up for this item. We will go to remote speakers. As a final reminder for remote participants to be placed in the speaking queue to address Set Matter One, if you have not already done so, use the raise hand feature on your device or press star three on your telephone now. Caller 626-390, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Hello, this is Colin Campbell, District Five. Dear Mr. President Trump, Governor Newsom, Honorable Judy Chu, Mayor Braun, and LA Board of Supervisors, the Alpha Team was born with Susie Wiles on 9/15 to address gun violence, combining the capabilities of the DOD, DOJ, FBI, and local police. This technology can be used for fire prevention and evacuation homeless, DPS S, CalFresh, and to protect schools. With the LA Board of Supervisors, join the Alpha Team so we can build Stargate, life support for Los Angeles, and release the $238.5 billion federal budget and there's an incentivization plan for all public servants wishing to enroll. The budget of $238.5 billion, I present to LA Board of Supervisors on 1/21, which was approved by President Trump on the same day and is backed by Larry Ellison, Sam Altman, and my Masayoshi Son with a $500 billion budget backed by Japan. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Humphreys, your line is open, please begin. Roy Humphreys, your line is open, please begin.
Worldwide joke on all networks for their ludicrous emergency funding of illegal aliens while citizens go homeless and hungry. Yes, even Democrats are jumping ship over this perverted grab of political power while subverting and longstanding illegals over the Biden illegals supporting organized criminal enterprise. And yet, Dennis Han pulled $50 million off of the critical upgrade of Fullerton and 60 Roland Heights to fund illegals over citizens for corrupt political power. The citizens must not concede. This, and further, you created this problem and creating poverty in this county. And you deserve what you get. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 310-562, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Erica Rogers and I'm speaking on behalf of the Community Clinic Association of Los Angeles County, which represents 67 nonprofit community health centers serving patients across the county. We want to express our strong support for Item Eight and thanks Supervisor Solis and Horvath for introducing this motion to expand access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We're on Set Matter One, Report on the County's Budget. That one's the next item.
Yeah, it'll be heard next, so if you want to wait in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 310-972, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Hi, my name is Zeno, I'm representing Limer Park. We call it Aska Town. I want to lend some encouragement, at least better direction in terms of what to do with the rest of the year. I kind of heard some, I kind of heard a little bit of some rent moratorium sounding style advice and that needs to be considered. Also, when it comes to nonprofits, especially in our area for food and stuff like that, Food Revolution LA is some organization you should look into because they feed the village every Sunday. And with a little bit more help, they could feed them even more days than that. Other than that, we do need to be more mindful about what emergencies you guys are prioritizing. The last cluster meeting about the bike path, that definitely needs to be reprioritized because the emergency funds need to be used for the people. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 323-388, your line is, is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Hi, I was hoping to speak on Matter Eight. I'll go ahead and wait in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 562-783, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Hi, I was actually here to speak on Item Eight, if I can get put back in the queue. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes public comment on this item. This report will be received and filed.
All right, hearing no objections, that will be the order.
Madam Chair, we will now proceed with public comment on items not held by supervisors, including the closed session matter. At this time, we will hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on all items not held for discussion by supervisors, including the closed session matter. These consent items will be acted upon with one motion. For members of the public joining us remotely to comment on these items, please use the raise hand feature if you are online or press star three if on the telephone. Please indicate the agenda item numbers that you wish to address in the beginning of your comment for us to allocate the appropriate amount of time.
We will now call in-person speakers. And while they are coming forward, we will take remote speakers. This will be for all items not held by the board for discussion, including closed session. Greg Stegerwald, Nicholas Lampros, Claudia Herez, please, please state the agenda items you're addressing. And begin. Your line is unmuted, please begin.
Is this on Claudia?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to talk about the safety net. The safety net, I was just looking up the numbers for LAUSD students. Blacks are about 9%. Hispanics are 29% of LAUSD. And the rest, what are they? Ancient, white, and other cultures? Now, I have to tell you, the attack on the safety net is a very big deal. It happens every single time there's a shutdown for the government. We know that. So we're going to ride it, we're going to have to ride the wave, and that's understood. So I'm very, very grateful that, you know, we're coordinating, that, you know, there's enough food for everybody. And so just know that the safety net is being attacked. Read the book, Attack on Poverty. I believe it was written back in the 1970s. You know, it's Attack on the Poor. It's called Attack on the Poor. So that's an attack on poverty.
Caller 818-645, please state your name, the agenda items you're addressing, and begin.
It's Eric Preven and I'm annoyed because I was in the queue previously and wasn't called up on the last item. So I'd like to admit it. And I'd like to speak on 7/16, 19/26, 27, and supplemental. So first of all, you're canceling a meeting on November 12th, which should start at 1:00, it's following Veterans Day. That's lame because you have a problem. And you're pointing to the cluster meetings, which I took the time to audit the other day, the one on children and family services. And let me simply say, confusion, an hour, and you call it transparency Supervisor Mitchell, Supervisor Horvath, you got everybody in the room, nobody in the room. Okay? No public. So that's cheese. Now, as for your emergencies, I want the public to know that we are reducing the emergency list by two. We still have 10 ongoing emergencies. So this is an embarrassment, obviously, because if everything is an emergency, nothing is. As for the $500,000 party for DMH at the hotel downtown, this, the optics are not great on such a thing, I'll be honest. And if you really want to look at outreach, everybody's worried about, how do we make sure people know they're eligible for CalFresh and various, you know, net things? Here's 16.5 million up to for three organizations, Mosaic Media and Communications, Modern Times Inc., and Santa Monica Mountains Fund. What? LOL, not funny. And what do they do? All they're doing in the supplemental agenda is correcting the 501(c)(3) because they had it listed as a 401(c)(3). Where's that? That's like up to $45 million. Okay? Now, I'm sorry for the care-first, jail-last people who have to have a look at Item 27 and 12. And I know Horvath will jump up and, you know, do a little dance. But this is not what people need, is renovations at a jail when we need an alternative to this.
Thank you.
Drakon.
Caller 323-388, please state your name, the agenda items you are addressing, and begin.
Hi, my name is Brad Nunez. I'm with Alma Family Services. Good morning, Supervisors. I serve as the Associate Director of Behavioral Health for Alma Family Services, where our programs support thousands of Medi-Cal beneficiaries across LA County. I want to thank Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Horvath for bringing forward the important motion.
Sir, Item Eight is, sir, Item Eight is being held. This is public comment on items that are not held by the supervisors.
My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Humphreys, please state the agenda items you are addressing and begin.
Large general public comment on the men central joint. Thanks to Eric Preven for mentioning that, again, the supervisors should be allowed, should be required to habitate that until, this is a public date. It's a disgrace and it's all on you. And notice here in Roland Heights, there's supposed to be a meeting on homelessness in Roland Heights by the county.
Sir, this is not, sir, this is not general public comment. This is public comment on items not held by the supervisors.
Okay. Thank you. They still get to go to jail.
Thank you. Caller, please state your name, the agenda items you are addressing, and begin.
Los Angeles resident, may I speak on 43(c)?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a Games for All Vision Event Parking Fee Waiver. Please advise, how do you begin in less than 1,000 days to acclimate your citizenry for a supposed cars-free Games for All when you waive parking fees? You have less than 1,000 days. This is not the step to do so. Again, this is just another government, do as I say, not as I do. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Byron Jose, please state the agenda items you are addressing and begin.
Very concerned resident and longtime of SD2 and business owner in SD1, CS7. Who can't rise up for it with a $50 billion budget? And again, this is going to be a very short meeting. I know there's a lot of things to get to into closed session. And we haven't been tracking those as part of my personal mental health. I've been not reading your agendas. But I guess we do have to track the closed meeting session agendas and making sure that we're not using our NCC, our locker tax dollars to pay out TEO and other staff and that continue to block out Measure J. But again, we want to make sure that we're prioritizing not the payouts and the liabilities and the shares, but we're actually prioritizing care. So we have to continue to find ourselves into having to rush into closed session to continue to pay out and then further put us into, in the, in the right field.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other remote callers on these items. We will now move to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Greg Stegerwald and I'm here on behalf of Streets Are for Everyone to voice my strong support for Motion Five to allocate funds towards fixing the Marvin Road Bike Path at Dockweiler Beach. For over a year, the bike path in this location has been out of commission, pushing cyclists and pedestrians like myself out onto the roadway. This corridor is used by thousands daily. Many of you may use it daily for biking and walking. Yet the current state of the bike, of the bike path makes it very woefully unsafe and discourages active transportation. There's cracked pavement and debris, forcing riders into the traffic, creating unnecessary risk. Investing in this repair is more about fixing pavement, however. It's about protecting lives, promoting clean transportation, and fulfilling our commitment to safer streets for everyone. As both a cyclist and pedestrian, I just want to know that I can ride safely and with peace of mind and that the infrastructure I rely on and provided by the county is maintained.
Did you, were you specific about what bike path or are you saying in general? Oh, Item Five, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Item Five.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Nicholas Lampros. I'm here on behalf of Betsetic Legal Services to support Agenda Item 43b. Thank you to Supervisors Horvath and Solis. Our organization regularly advises members of the Los Angeles community in connection with Medi-Cal coverage. We've seen firsthand the confusion and disruption that occurs when Medi-Cal rules change. That is why we believe county-level outreach around the Medi-Cal asset testing rule changes is so critical. This motion will enable trusted, locally tailored messaging and community support to minimize confusion and support continuity of care. To that end, we have launched our own Medi-Cal Care's Outreach Initiative to proactively add advise prior clients about these changes and inform community social workers about the new rules. Finally, I want to encourage the county to include in its outreach campaign information about the Medi-Cal Spousal Impoverishment Rules for Married Couples. These rules enable people with significant disabilities who are married to qualify for Medi-Cal without depleting their spouse's assets. We look forward to continuing to work with the county to reduce barriers.
Thank you. That concludes our time for public comment on these items.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, the following items are before you. Items 2 through 7, 9, 11, 13 through 18, 19 as revised, 20, 21, where Supervisor Mitchell recusing herself from the vote pursuant to Government Code Section 84308, 22 through 26, 28 through 36, 38 through 42, 43A through 43F, 46, these items are before you.
Move by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Solis, to approve these items with the exceptions noted by the Executive Officer. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. We will now move on to item 8, access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh at-risk preserving beneficiary enrollment, which is held by Supervisor Solis. For members of the public joining us remotely, to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature if you are online, or press star 3 if on the telephone. Representatives from the Department of Public Social Services, Health Services, and Economic Opportunity are available for questions. For the departmental speakers, please state your name and title for the record when you address the Board.
Supervisor Solis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Supervisor Horvath for co-authoring this motion with me. Colleagues, as you know, on July 4th, President Trump signed into law HR1, which includes sweeping changes to public assistance programs. This includes implementing work requirements for individuals receiving Medi-Cal through the Affordable Care Act expansion, as well as expanding existing requirements for those enrolled in CalFresh. The work requirements under CalFresh will impact new categories of individuals, including former foster youth, veterans, and individuals experiencing homelessness, among others. According to county estimates, approximately 202,000 individuals enrolled in CalFresh will be required to meet work requirements beginning early next year. This is more than double the current number, and meanwhile, as many as 1.5 million Medi-Cal beneficiaries could be at risk of losing coverage when the work requirements take effect January 1st, 2027. We know that evidence shows that work requirements do not increase employment. The vast majority of beneficiaries are already working or have a good reason not to work, such as struggling with health issues, disabilities, or being a caregiver for someone in their immediate family. Work requirements will lead to significant coverage losses due to burdensome administrative barriers, putting a bigger strain on our county's social safety net. And earlier this year, I was glad to see the Board approve a motion to identify opportunities to connect beneficiaries to volunteer opportunities, as well as using the American Job Centers to help meet work requirements and preserve enrollment status. Those are good tools to use, but we know, again, that we have to do more. And I know that we have also led at the county what we call Keep Your Coverage, a campaign to raise community awareness, and I want to thank the Department, DPSSS, for that. However, given the significant changes to these programs, we need to do more to support those at risk of losing access to Medi-Cal and their CalFresh benefits. That's why this motion in particular directs county departments to coordinate with DPSSS to create volunteer opportunities to help county residents meet those work requirements. The motion also directs DPSSS in collaboration with DHS, DPH, DMH, DCFS, and the DEO, and the Departments of Aging and Disabilities, and Homeless Services and Housing, among other relevant partners, to do the following: prepare for the development of a coordinated verification system to track work and volunteer participation, exemptions and eligibility across both Medi-Cal and CalFresh programs, including through the development of a comprehensive database that includes technology solutions, data integration, and partnerships with nonprofit and community-based organizations, and with special consideration for populations that have barriers to access, including persons experiencing homelessness and those with language access needs. The motion also directs CEO Lier to finally engage the state on establishing a flexible and minimally restrictive verification process, and develop a strategy to advocate for technology that supports the submission of verification documents to help those residents keep their coverage. Make no mistake about it, work requirements will do nothing but hurt those that are most vulnerable. This will impact working families, veterans, former foster youth, people experiencing homelessness, and individuals with serious underlying health conditions, who are now at risk of losing access to the basic support systems that they currently rely on. Colleagues, I respectfully ask for your iVos, and now I will hand it over to my co-author, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you Supervisor Solis for inviting me to co-author this critical motion. As you said, HR1 continues to devastate communities across Los Angeles County, especially those who rely on public assistance programs like CalFresh and Medi-Cal, our two largest DPSSS programs. These programs are essential to the health and well-being of millions of Angelenos, including veterans, children, families, unhoused people, and people living with disabilities. The changes under HR1 will cause people to lose health coverage, to get sick, to overcrowd our emergency rooms, and even go hungry. It will make life harder for those who already struggle the most, and as many as 1.5 million Angelenos are at risk of losing Medi-Cal when new work requirements take effect on January 1st, 2027. As of last month, over 980,000 households relying on CalFresh include more than 460,000 children in food insecure homes, and we don't know yet how many will lose benefits due to these new requirements. Our motion today calls on county departments to come together and to support residents in meeting these new requirements wherever possible. It also calls on DPSSS to lead a collaborative effort to expand qualifying activities, including workforce, workfare for CalFresh and community service, or engagement for Medi-Cal and CalFresh. It also directs DPSSS to work with county departments, health plans, and community providers to develop a clear and efficient federal verification process. Additionally, CEO Legislative Affairs, DPSSS, and other departments must work with our state to reduce the burden on beneficiaries as this process is finalized. We must all do all that we can to help Angelenos keep the support that they rely on. While we must comply with HR1, we have a duty to protect our most vulnerable residents. We also need to ensure that our public understands these changes. And I know DPSSS is working on a Keep Your Coverage campaign, which we talked about in our last item, and I want to stress the urgency of sharing accurate, up-to-date information, which includes updates to the Medi-Cal Asset Test, which takes effect January 1st, 2026. That's this January 1st. I've authored another motion on today's agenda, co-authored by Supervisor Solis, to specifically address this, and I want to thank my friend Chuck Fisher for bringing this to my attention. Beginning next year, Medi-Cal will review applicants' assets, such as bank accounts, second vehicles, or homes, especially for those 65 and over, in nursing homes or living with disabilities. Roughly 400,000 current Medi-Cal beneficiaries in LA County could be affected by these asset test changes, and we must ensure they're informed and prepared. These are people who are trying to do their darndest to protect themselves should an emergency befall them, and now we're asking them to live with less of a personal safety net while there is less of a social safety net. These are all significant changes that will impact thousands of families across Los Angeles County. We have a responsibility to ensure residents are informed, supported, and able to maintain access to the healthcare and nutrition programs they depend on. Thank you.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thanks to my two colleagues for bringing the motion forward today. Appreciate it. I, while I fully support the goal of economic self-sufficiency, that goal can't come at the expense of compassion or access. And we know from decades of research that work requirements reduce caseload, but not poverty. Let me be clear that requiring people to adhere to work requirements will, without question in my mind, result in certain groups dropping off the caseload, and data shows that people in the Second District are already dropping off because of the numerous other federal policies and actions. I'm aware that DPSSS is still assessing potential fiscal penalties and the administrative cost-sharing implications from the state, so I'll stay tuned for those further updates. HR1 is not a plan for economic self-sufficiency. It's a plan for exclusion, and LA County can and must show that we can meet these new federal requirements without losing our moral compass. And so, again, I look forward to the department's report back in 90 days. I appreciate that the motion directs cross-department collaboration, encouraging departments to work together to ensure alignment. I would also emphasize the importance of including program participants in the process to ensure the system is accessible, equitable, and culturally and linguistically responsive. This kind of system-level coordination is exactly what the county needs to make sure participants experience once connected, and to making sure that our safety net is actually a safety net and not a maze of disconnected programs. So, I hope that participants will be included. And I think we have to be honest, there's currently no technology capable of reliably determining whether someone is working, how many hours they're working, or whether they qualify for any of the exemptions at scale. So, I appreciate the Department of Public Social Services is working with the Department of Economic Opportunity to leverage your virtual America's Job Center to bring the technology online. I do have a couple of questions, if I may, Madam Chair, really getting to that core issue of our current technological capacity and what that design will look like. First of all, can you walk me through what a caseworker would need to determine whether someone is self-employed, if they're working a gig job, or they're an entrepreneur? How are we going to track and allow those people to count their work toward the work requirement? Because we don't want them penalized.
Thank you, Supervisor. Michael Sylvester, Chief Deputy Administration for DPSSS, here on behalf of Dr. Jackie Contreras. Great question. With the economy moving towards gig jobs and towards a lot of self-employment, the regs do allow for self-attestation for these self-employment opportunities. So, that will be something that we will be employing, and we'll be handling verification through self-attestation, and then they can also submit any other kind of artifacts, such as receipts or things like that, that are related to the business that would help substantiate, but it doesn't go further than that. So, that's actually, self-attestation is key to that.
And the federal government is actually allowing for self-attestation?
At this point, we have not had that negated, I can only say at this point.
Well, that is new. All right, I'll keep my fingers crossed. What capacity does DPSSS have to track data, really in real time, to identify regions or communities who are disproportionately losing eligibility? And I say in real time because we want to be able to pivot and intervene as quickly as possible. So, what capacity do you have to do that?
Well, DPSSS does have a tremendous amount of data that we capture over periods of time. We use our at-a-glance case information, which drills down quite extensively, and we run analytics against that to basically pull projections and patterns. But we're also going further, especially with AVODs being on the rise. We're implementing a GIS platform that will put a geographic layer over this, so it makes it easier for our policy individuals to be able to focus in on certain communities, where right now we have to join ZIP codes, and we have to do it the old-fashioned way, but this will give us a way to really see it visually and be able to see if we're seeing disproportionality, and then we can make adjustments to our marketing and our outreach campaigns accordingly.
Okay, that's great. That's great news, I appreciate that. And I look forward to the report back, you know, as someone who has spent my entire elected career removing asset tests, and had been successful in doing so, it is so disheartening, based on what all the research tells us. Well, I mean, I guess it makes it clear that the goal of the federal administration is not about poverty alleviation, it's about exclusion and targeting poor people, and holding them accountable themselves for being poor, as opposed to acknowledging the role governmental systems have played in keeping them poor. So, I appreciate the motion and the work that we'll do to make sure that we're going to leverage technology in a meaningful way to support people, given what we already know to be true. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, Executive Officer, please call those members of the public that wish to testify on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers. Oh, I'm sorry. Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Loretta Lorraine? As a final reminder for remote participants, to be placed in the speaking queue to address item 8, if you have not already done so, use the raise hand feature on your device or press star 3 on your telephone now. Pretty Thinky, your line is unmuted, please begin. Please begin. Pretty? Please begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just a second, sorry. I have to mute. Hi. My name is Pretty Thinky, and I'm calling on behalf of LA Care Health Plan to express our strong support for item number 8. We thank Supervisors Solis and Horvath for their motion to protect access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh. LA Care serves more than 2.7 million low-income residents in Los Angeles County, with 2.3 of those lives in the Medi-Cal program. And we share the county's deep commitment to protecting access to vital health and nutrition benefits. We appreciate the county's proactive work connecting beneficiaries to volunteer opportunities and developing a verification process that helps people keep their benefits under the new federal work requirements. As a health plan, we have started working collaboratively with DPSSS to educate and support beneficiaries on upcoming changes to Medicaid. Our community resource centers offer free health classes, food charities, and social services assistance, which directly supports the county's efforts to help residents stay in.
Roy Humphries, your line is unmuted, please begin.
... have been abused for so long. This board and state have created this monster of dependence and abuse, and will not be corrected without deserve pain and suffering, but will provide stronger, healthier self-image and hope that procedure. This view of Supervisor Mitchell brings to question as to who is defining what is moral, since the world knows what this gang of four Democrats did with the definition of the word "emergency" with the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 323-388, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Rem Nunez, and I am proud to serve as the Associate Director of Behavioral Health for Alma Family Services, where our programs support thousands of Medi-Cal beneficiaries across LA County. I want to thank Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Horvath for bringing this important motion forward. Every day, we see how complex the process can be for residents trying to maintain their Medi-Cal or CalFresh benefits, especially those facing language barriers, instability in housing, or mental health challenges. For many, these programs are a bridge that allow them to access care, stay nervous, and move forward with stability. This motion takes a practical and compassionate step by preparing for the new verification requirements and ensuring that volunteer opportunities and compliance options are designed with equity in mind. No one should lose critical benefits because the system is too difficult to navigate. On behalf of Alma Family Services and the communities we serve, I strongly urge you to support item number 8. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 562-783, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
And I'm the... Oh. Hi, good morning. My name is Bernadette Levis and I'm the Community Development Manager with Alma Family Services. I would like to speak in support of item number 8. I want to thank Supervisors Solis, Horvath, and their motion to support access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh. These programs do enable some of the county's most vulnerable communities to access essential food, assistance, and life-saving healthcare. I appreciate the county taking these proactive steps to ensure beneficiaries keep the benefits they are entitled to, and I request the board to support this important motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Claudia Herez, your line is unmuted, please begin.
What I want to say is this, I think it's a very good idea, as Michelle said, about the leveraging, how these technological databases will help us clients leverage this new database and new technology coming in. I think that is very crucial.
Claudia, please lower the volume on your device.
Yes, this one.
Next caller. Caller 562322, your line is unmuted, please begin.
My name is Paul Hudak. Good morning Supervisors. My name is Paul Hudak and I'm speaking on behalf of the CO Consultant and one of my clients, Sanitized Pros. We strongly support Agenda Item Number 8 and commend Supervisors Solis and Horvath for advancing a plan that protects access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh while expanding workfare opportunities across Los Angeles County. We recognize the county's leadership in protecting access to Medi-Cal and CalFresh while preparing for the challenges of new federal work requirements. At Sanitized Pros, we are committed to being part of the solution for companies actively hires unhoused individuals and people with experience providing them with training, stable employment, and pathways to long-term self-sufficiency. By creating these opportunities, we not only uplift individuals but also help alleviate the cost burden on both the county and the state. Every person we employ is one less person at risk of losing coverage or falling deeper into crisis. We believe this aligns directly with the county's vision of expanding opportunities while safeguarding essential benefits. We believe this motion strikes the right balance. It preserves benefits, reduces administrative burden, and creates meaningful opportunities.
Caller 818645, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Quite an enterprising speaker. Look, let's stipulate that what we have, our net, is in fact a maze of disconnected services. It's problematic in plain English and broad daylight. So now that we're under great pressure from Priority Mountain, where Supervisor Mitchell likes to do extensive reports, to Supervisor Horvath's frontline queries into multiple languages, if you can believe it, agreed. But what... We have a terrible system. I think we have to come to terms. And also, the fact that now it is, the federal government appears to be allowing attestation, which is a good thing. Run. Run directly in that direction. And somebody mentioned philanthropy. Yeah. Where is philanthropy and the partners? Convenient that they're coming up with their plans in three or four days following the meeting, just in time for the next cast.
Thank you. Caller 310972, your line is unmuted. Please state your name and begin.
Hey, this is Zeno again, representing Aska Town, commercially known as Lamar Park. I want to let you guys not feel a little bit mixed about this one because being so dependent on the county, I'm pretty much aware of all the different processes that have been implemented throughout the last, like, 10 years even, to streamline things like this. There's something called ASAR-7, that's a semi-annual report. And as far as, you know, as far as verification processes, it's something that has to be done all the time to make sure that you can still get your benefits. So I want to know that, you know, you guys are probably making that extra consideration to make sure you're not reinventing will or adding more delays. There's one thing that definitely needs to be noted is that the dependence on virtual assistance definitely causes a delay in people being able to verify things or get papers and documents turned in, therefore being able to receive their benefits on time. So there needs to be, going back to the drawing board just for a little bit, just for some little considerations here and there to make sure that your intent is to streamline this actually.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes public comment on this item. Item 8 is before you.
All right. The side... Oh, we've got a public... We've got someone here that wants to speak.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm Ms. Loretta Lorraine, and I thank you ladies. And I tell you, this administration is getting ridiculous every day. Donald Trump has just benefited from all this chaos. There's people out here that need those stamps, need that money, because they got to feed their children. There's poor people out here. He has just benefited from this... Excuse my language. From this, because he don't want people to vote yes on his, on that, on that Prop 50. We had to vote Prop 50, yes, because this idiot wants to make a lot of changes. He's making an America, America's ridiculous. This is California, a state that's been, always been beautiful and done things for the people. Don't turn back on this idiot because that's not what California is about. California is about the people, and y'all ladies should know. And thank you Mitchell and thank you Ms. Horvath. I've been to y'all things and I love it, and y'all got to invite me over there. But thank you for inviting me, and I tell you, just let's make America beautiful and vote yes.
All right, now the item is before us. Move by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Horvath. Would you please take the roll?
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. We will now move on to item 12, Report on the Progress of Closing Men's Jail, and item 27, Pitches Distension Centers South Renovation Capital Project Construction Contract, which were held by Supervisor Horvath. These items will be taken up together. For members of the public joining us remotely to comment on these items, please use the raise hand feature if you are online or press *3 if on the telephone. A representative from the Chief Executive Office will make a presentation. Representatives from the Chief Executive Office and the Sheriff's Department are available for questions. For the departmental speakers, please state your name and title for the record when you address the board.
And again, I want to emphasize that we are taking up both 12 and 27 together. So if you want to talk on either one of those, this is going to be during this period of time. Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you. I actually think there's a presentation.
Yes.
And so I want to turn it to our panel to present your latest report, and then I'll go into questions from there. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you very much. So, good morning. Thank you for the time to discuss this important work. You can go to the first slide. My name is Wilfred Pinkney and I'm the Executive Director of the Community Safety Implementation Team. I'm joined by Chidima Ume, the Deputy Executive Director of the team. We're here to talk about the progress we have made towards developing a plan to close Men's Central Jail without a replacement. One question I know some of you have is when will we provide a timeline with benchmarks to close MCJ without a replacement? It would be easy for me to give you a date and begin backing into that date with a manufactured plan to fit that date, but that is not my approach. We are working hard to meet the nine-month target for completion of the timeline. However, there are many forces that influence this work that are beyond our control. Our directive isn't only about closing the building that is Men's Central Jail. We do not see our work as finite, as a finite process or effort. We believe it also involves building the infrastructure necessary to ensure that we have as few people in jail as possible for the shortest time necessary without compromising public safety. This approach is essential even if we were not to close MCJ. It is meant to prevent us from being in this position again in the future. The county will need to operationalize the processes we are developing and build the infrastructure to produce data in real time that answers the questions that we are asking to ensure the sustainability of these efforts. It is important to note that the growth in the jail population is putting our directive at risk. As of Sunday, the jail population is 13,405 people, which is up by approximately 800 people since February, when the population was 12,664. This impacts the other question that people are waiting for us to answer, can you close the jail without a replacement? Unless the county goes above and beyond existing strategies and current investments, we won't be able to close the jail without a replacement. With that in mind, we have identified certain conditions and some of the underlying actions necessary to accomplish the closure of MCJ without a replacement. The two variables that determine the size of a jail population are how many people come into the jail and how long they stay. The actions we have outlined in our report are focused on implementing strategies that will actually decrease the number of people entering the jail and shorten their length of stay. If we make recommendations with an out and eye towards implementation, we won't know if they are even possible or will be successful. That starts with an understanding of who is in the jail, why they are there, and what we can do to prevent them from being there in the future. This approach involves constant review of data and collaborative problem solving. For example, this approach resulted in New York City decreasing their jail population at one point to below 4,000 people. Past efforts here in LA have made progress, but we still have a growing jail population. Those efforts did not build the comprehensive data infrastructure necessary to review data on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis to identify the impacts of strategies aimed at decreasing inflows and length of stay. That's why we are building on previous efforts by using average daily population calculations and building the capacity to match data from multiple sources to help track progress. This will give us the ability to see where we are, track where strategies are falling short, and track where strategies are falling short so we can address issues in real time. This is not going to be fast or easy to implement. Collaboration and commitment are important to our work and requires a lot of everyone involved. Departments and agencies that are collaborating with us have large, complex operations that are focused on their core responsibilities related to addressing the everyday needs of county residents. Our work with departments has stretched their resources, but they continue to be responsive and supportive, and I want to thank them for that. Today, we will walk through what we've learned, what actions we believe need to be taken, and our next steps. Next slide. So, in terms of the jail closure framework, we intend to outline what needs to happen. This goes to the timeline question. What needs to happen? Who's responsible for each part? How much is likely the cost? And how long it will take to get this done? We've identified costs related to some of our proposed actions and continue to work with partners on others. We will highlight some of these actions in the next several slides. Next slide. We have completed the first part of the jail population projection that I know we spoke about in a previous report back. I already mentioned where we are with the jail population as related to just a couple of months ago. The projection projected that the population will increase to about 14,500 people in 2031. That's if all current conditions remain the same, which isn't often the case. We know that from what happened with Prop 36. The changing nature of this work requires constant innovation, analysis, and problem solving. I can speak to the impact of this firsthand from my time in St. Louis, where we did close the jail. We used that daily monitoring of probation violations to help decrease the jail population to a point where the jail was able to close. We must institutionalize these processes to monitor our progress and address issues in real time. Next slide. Average daily population is an important measure as we look at the impacts of the work and, like I said, measure progress in real time. Average daily population does not speak to the long-term impact or value of a program, but it does let us see what the impact of strategies are on decreasing the amount of people in a specific subgroup especially, for example, probation, people in on probation violations. Given to the extent to which we need to depopulate the jail and the impact of the strategies in real time on these efforts, it will take multiple reforms to work together to achieve the goal of closure. And you see on this slide, we've listed the broader categories of the proposed reforms. It is not about how much an individual strategy lowers average daily population or ADP, it's about the accumulative impact of all of the actions. That's why our approach is to ensure there are multiple off-ramps between arrest and the disposition of a case as we think about closure. Many of the actions related to the reforms will take time and a lot of efforts, as I said before. Next slide. So, we said one of the two things that are important are number of people coming into the jail. So we are assessing the impact of programs that do divert people and deflect people from coming into the jail, from being booked, and evaluating the feasibility of expanding those programs. One such program that is about to get up and running is JCA's Justice Supportive Release Program. It will be launching soon in two sites and will play a key role in supporting jail closure and depopulation efforts. We will monitor the impact of that implementation of that program and work with JCA to understand what efforts and costs will be needed to expand that program and incorporate those into the timeline that we are developing. The ADP, another area we're looking at is programs that divert and would deflect people who have, are suffering from substance use disorder. And one of the ways we're using data to identify subgroups and strategies is we looked at the ADP of people released in the first seven months of this year who were charged only with nonviolent drug-related charges. And that was approximately 180 people, and their length of stay was about 28 and 1/2 days. We know by implementing strategies to reduce that length of stay down to 10 days, we could cut that average daily population down about 125 people to about 66 people. So that's an example of how we do use data to look, and the data we are already receiving from the LA Sheriff's Department, to identify subgroups and then identify strategies so that we can then develop a timeline by understanding the cost of expanding or even creating those strategies. So we are looking at to see how many people, right now, the next step in this process is we're looking to see how many people are in jail that would have possibly been eligible for deflection or diversion programs but were not screened or declined screening. Another example of data in this realm is parole and probation violations. There were about approximately 1,277 people in jail on potential violations of probation, and they stayed for roughly two to five months. As I said, in New York, excuse me, in St. Louis, you know, we did a lot in working with collaborative partners, the courts, defenders, prosecutors, to understand what was the nature of the violations and to implement strategies to ensure that that group, where appropriate, didn't end up in the jail, and it helped significantly in reducing the jail population. In New York, they'd use the same approach to identify the issues and pass legislations that brought the probation population at RICO's down from 700 people to 10. And in St. Louis County, there was a similar reduction in the period of, the review period of these violations from 99 days to 10. I'm going to pass it over to Chidima Ume now.
Thank you, Will. So one of the takeaways so far from what Will has shared is, I would say, a combination of things, data and action. So the data is showing us who's in and why, and the action that he's pursuing and working on with all of the partners who are here is what do we do to get them out? Can they be, can we get them out? So the examples before you so far are how we're preventing people from coming in, so what data do we have to see who's coming in, on what basis, and how do we keep them from coming in potentially? I want us to flip to the next slide so we can look at, once people come in, how do we reduce how long they stay? So next slide. So, again, as Will mentioned, there are two main factors that drive a jail population anywhere. LA County is no different. So who comes in and how long they stay? A lot of the data that we've seen so far shows us that case processing, which is what's happening. And again, going back to that combination of things, we've got the length of stay, so how long someone is physically in our county jail. But on the other side of it is what's happening on the court process to help them resolve the case that's keeping them there. And it's on the court process side that we get a lot of the action. So as of around August of this year, there were roughly 2,189 people who were in our jail for over a year, so who had a long length of stay. That number is significant because the time that it takes to process a case, we currently have standards in the state of California which dictate that cases, we should make every, you know, best effort to resolve cases within a year, except for capital cases. So if someone's facing a capital punishment, that gets a longer timeline. But for other cases, a year is typically the standard amount of time that the state tries to resolve that case within. So again, thinking about data and action, our work has dug into the data. So who is in and who is in past that? So, who is in and who is in past that year mark, which I just shared the number for, and then what do we do about it? One challenge we faced is that there isn't, the data isn't great. It exists, but it takes a number of steps to get it, and we've got to put it together from all the different partners. So, there's some data from the courts, there's some data from the DA's office and all the defenders. So, what do you do when you don't have great data? You create it. So, a lot of our work thus far has been generating data sets, so, and the partners have been doing the heavy lifting on this. So, they've gotten data in a number of different ways. One is we spent two months collecting data in real time about the issues that were contributing to cases being delayed. So, if we think about that on a daily basis, what barriers were attorneys facing to resolve cases? What barriers are clients facing to get screened for diversion, for example, or connected to services? So, we did surveys with the attorneys through the partners. We've also dug into, so secondly, we've also dug into some of the oldest cases that have exceeded that one-year mark. So, looking at the cases, we pulled a sample of 30 cases, and again, the partners helped us look for trends. And then finally, we've also, CSIT has worked to get more data from the courts, so we now have access to what's called their justice partner portal. So, we're able to look up cases in real time, and we're working, we have to do it one at a time. We're working to get it so that there's a feed of cases instead of having to do a manual lookup, but we have secured the manual lookup. I mention that because that is how we got that middle column. So, if you look at the barriers column, you'll see that these are some of the things we're hearing from attorneys day in and day out about what is adding to the length of a case and that what is then on the other side contributing to people staying for long times and at times longer than a year. Those examples are here. We put them in our report. I'll name a few. We're working to address expert appointments. We've learned from the, again, from the data that we've gotten that any given, on any given case, if you need an expert appointed, that means for a diversion program or any other type of expert for your, even for your trial, just the process of getting that expert may add six to eight weeks to your case. And if someone's in custody, that's another six to eight weeks on their stay at minimum. So, that's one example, but I also want us to take a look at the right side of this slide, which is the next steps, because that is where we're focusing the action. So, there's a lot here, and I'm sure, you know, one could spend all day talking about it, but I just want to highlight a few of the steps that we have put into place since we started this work. So, CSIT has been focused on real-time pilots that can help us address some of these issues. So, one is we worked with the Public Defender's Office to get more funding from CFCI, the Care First Community Initiatives Fund, and through that funding, the public defender now has a public defender embedded in the jail, Twin Towers, every day of the week, who was able to go and look, meet directly with clients, in particular, people who are ODR candidates and who may have some issue getting to their court date or may have an issue with getting screened and they're waiting. So, the public defender is now doing that. They've been doing it since July, and we're trying to see where we can go next with that pilot. For instance, having some hearings held virtually via video. So, again, putting action into place and then building on it. Another example is a pilot that we've worked with the partners to start in one of the courthouses in San Fernando Courthouse. The idea there is to try to resolve a case earlier on. So, once a case is arraigned, which is the first court date, between that first and second court date, the preliminary hearing, we're trying to see if we can do two things. Can we resolve that case earlier on or can we get a person released? The reason that's important is because all of those barriers that you see in the middle, those are the types of things that keep the case prolonged and add court dates. So, anytime we can't get something done in between court dates, we may have to add extra court dates, and that's exactly what we're trying to shrink. So, those are just two examples. A third one before I transition back to Will is that we're reviewing more of the old cases. So, you heard me talk about that one-year mark around the case standards. We now are working with the DA, APD, IDCO, and PD to review all of the old cases where people are in custody and try to resolve those cases. So, each of those departments are working in each courthouse. They're reviewing lists every month and are starting to work, they've been working their way through, but there's a renewed focus, and we're working with the courts on that as well. So, with that, I'm going to pass to Will to take us to the next slide, which is about off-ramps for people from jail.
Thank you, Chitima. So, you know, as we go into the next slide, which is about enhancing the community-based system of care, we're really looking to foster opportunities to have people released into community care. I think the important thing to think about here is that people don't start out with high levels of acuity, and so we really need to focus upstream, and we really need to engage people as early and often as possible, even though I give the caveat that people have to be ready and willing to receive services. One of the challenges here is the county, we haven't been able to fully map the needs of people in custody, the number of people receiving treatment, and what's required to meet those needs. You know, there was a prior effort, I know, back in 2020 by RAN that used ODR eligibility to determine the percentage of people who could be diverted from the jail with serious mental illness. They conducted some limited chart reviews. Well, we're, once again, we're looking to build on that effort. It didn't focus on the needs generally of those incarcerated. It just used that ODR eligibility as a marker, and it is really important to focus on the needs of those because we need to understand what we need to do more than what we're already doing. It helps us set benchmarks as we think about setting timelines. We need to understand what is the interventions that we're going to implement, how long it takes to implement those, so the implementation of the interventions, and then understand what the expected impact will be, because now we can have a baseline on which to build. And, you know, the example of this, and we put it in our report, is ODR. We talked about ODR reaching its capacity, and we talked about expanding ODR services to P2. That's something that they do to some extent, but not to the extent that we put in our report. We were able to work with ODR to understand what was the ramp-up time, so what would this take to implement the effort? What was the cost of implementing the effort? And so, that's information that now we can put in a timeline and help us to build a broader timeline as to jail closure. You know, once again, you see the barriers, you see the challenges. One of the big challenges here, I will point out in working with our partners, is, you know, there's a lot of talk about release planning, previous, there were previous recommendations and previous reports about release planning. But one of the challenges are these lack of specific release dates, right? 78% of the population didn't have a specific release date, which is a challenge, and then connecting people to services. So, you know, we are working with partners, we're going to be working with the CalAim efforts to understand how we might be able to increase those or overcome those barriers. Next slide. On this slide, you know, I've talked about in the past that there is an impact to closing down MCJ. The motion speaks about demolishing it. So, we have been making progress on understanding what the extent of that is. We've worked with partners in DOJ. There's a matrix that we developed that we've been identifying costs based on previous efforts. I think the MHTC effort had a lot of data, numbers, that give us information around timelines, costs, efforts, and so the matrix allows us to understand those operational considerations. It lists them out. We're working with the Sheriff's Department and other partners now to confirm those things and to make sure they're accurate, and then if it's going to, if we need to go beyond that, then at some point, we would have to engage an architect in others. Next slide. I wanted to show what we're doing with data because we've talked a lot about data. So, we've started to create some internal dashboards with the data that we received from the LASD. You can see it tells us a lot of things. The, you know, we can see sentencing, we can see how many people are in on Prop 36, we can see length of incarceration. And all those things are great. It allows us to track changes in the jail population, which are going to be important to understanding impacts and developing strategies, but it doesn't by itself provide a complete picture. You know, we need to often, times, match this with other data to get a completed picture. One of the ways we've used this, and this is called a snapshot file, it's just a file, a picture of the people in the jail, in jail, in the jail currently. And matter of fact, I'll let Chitima speak to this because we use this as we were thinking and working with partners around reviewing old cases.
So, that old case list that I mentioned, the one that the partners are reviewing every month, we were able to pull those cases from our dashboard. So, that shows us who's in and how long they stay. I would point everyone to the yellow bars in the middle of the dashboard because that's essentially how we got the 2,000-plus figure that I mentioned. And from here, we're able to pull individual records, provide them to the partners, and dig into what's going on with the cases in real time and address them.
So, I'll go to the next slide. We've started looking at, we've talked a lot of, we've talked about P-levels before. These are labels or classifications that are provided by LASD to people to sort of denote their acuity, their mental health acuity. So, this is another dashboard we created. This is where we see that of all the people with P-levels, P2s are the largest population. This is why we talked about going above and beyond current efforts and thinking about depopulation and closing the jail. So, it does tell us that, by the way, any of these dashboards, we can filter out by any of the various categories on here, and then the rest of the categories would change. So, we could see sentencing by P-level and things like that, charges, length of incarceration. So, this is a mental health snapshot, but it doesn't provide information on treatment, you know, as we think about, you know, where people are ending up. So, you know, one of the things we did here is we were talking about the base population rejection, projection, and the second component of that, which is applying reforms and understanding the impact of those reforms on reducing that 14,500 number projection, we started to, once again, pull a sample from this file of 100 people to share with our health partners to understand what is the possibility of people who are currently incarcerated and being eligible and being enrolled in their programs. And so, we did, we did share that with them, and it helped us in that way. The next slide, please. The next slide is a release file, so this is based on the people who are released on a monthly basis. All these we update on a monthly basis. One of the challenges with this, it tells us release agency to some extent, especially for conditional releases. It tells us release reasons, but it doesn't specify, there's no specific reason that's related specifically to treatment. So, we can't really see how many people were released to treatment. This is why, once again, we are looking to couple this with other data. But the release dashboard did show us that probation violations made up approximately 9% of releases from the county jail, and I'll let Chitima talk to that.
So, again, in the theme of data and action, to the example Will was just pointing us to with probation violations, I'll point everyone to the blue bars on the right side of the screen. I know the font is tiny, but just pay attention to the bars because you'll see that the top blue bar is for people who are in on a post-release community supervision violation. Using this information, we were able to meet with the probation department, again, who's represented here today, and figure out what's driving those violations. Many of them are technical violations, so someone may be not missing an appointment or missing a series of appointments, at least three, and going into what's called abscondor status. So, in meeting with the probation department, they expressed that that's an issue that they, they're not happy with it either. So, we started talking about, again, what solutions can we address? They have already been partnering with J-COD, the Justice Care and Opportunities Department that we all know about, to co-locate in the South Los Angeles probation office. But to address these, the absconders, you know, potential warrants that lead to these arrests, they're expanding that partnership. So, I believe they're in an MOU status, and they can speak to this when we do Q and A. But they are now expanding those services to other parts of the county so that when someone, when the probation department has a difficulty reaching someone and that person is nearing warrant status, nearing potentially falling in that first blue bucket, J-COD is working with them to potentially provide reminders, rides to appointments, and other services that the probation department doesn't already provide.
Next slide, please. So, the dashboards before this were our own internal ones and not public, but this is a public dashboard that the CIO's office has created, a justice dashboard. So, we've been sharing this in our presentations with community, and we shared it in the cluster. So, we want to make sure that people know this is something they can, it pulls from the same source of data that we do, that people can go to and see. Unfortunately, the link is really long, so we were going to put the actual link on there, but it probably won't look good, but if this, I believe this presentation is uploaded on the website, so that link at the bottom right will take you to this dashboard. So, we just wanted to share that. Next slide. I'm not going to spend a lot of time because we talked a lot about data, but, you know, the work that we're doing is in various stages of being completed. Obviously, when we think about collecting data, we want to make sure that we do it in a way that respects the privacy of individuals. So, I will say, this really speaks to the SAPC data on the top left is really about really understanding more, and this relates to Prop 36 specifically, but broader as well. We're all talking about, we want to understand who's going into treatment, how many people are going into treatment. The work that we're doing with CIO and SAPC there will allow them to tell us that information and know for themselves as well, obviously. We're working with CHS and DHS to understand more about needs and about services that people are receiving. The SAPC MOU is in the signature phase. We're working with DHS, and we're doing some chart reviews with CHS, with DMH, and with SAPC to understand those needs, but we're working with DHS more broadly to collect data. LASD, we've already gotten the data that allowed us to create the dashboards that you've seen. ISAB, we've got some arrest data as we think about diversion efforts. We want to make sure we have that so we can assess those strategies aimed at reducing jail admissions. And then we're working with our court partners to really get information that's going to help us establish baselines on case processing, but understand the factors that lend to, and a lot of that was on the slide that Chitima shared already, lend to, you know, what that means, and I'll let Chitima add anything she wants to add here.
That covers it.
Good? Okay. Next slide.
And it's me again. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the prior two presentations that spoke to the impact of the current budget climate on our work. We're feeling it too in the CSIT sphere and the county's ability to close Men's Central Jail. We have been working with the partners. I think the takeaway here is that we're monitoring the impacts in real time, and we're trying to address them as best we can as a county. A couple of things to note, this is not all of the budget constraints that the departments are experiencing that affect their ability to participate in this work and move it forward, but these are just a few examples. I would say the theme is essentially reduction, reduction in services like with ODR. So, they are projecting that due to potential cuts with state funding, federal funding, this one is less about county curtailments and more about outside funding that they're able to draw down for providing services, that there may be, they may be able to, less able to provide slots, services for people who would be diverted out of jail. And as we all know, they serve our most serious population in the jail, serious in terms of mental health need and then most serious in terms of charges. PD, APD, IDCO, and the district attorney all fall within a similar sphere of their reduction is more about potential budgeted vacancies in staff. So, each of the offices has reported to us that fewer potential staff means that they may see higher caseloads, more delays, again, going back to the case delay that we were talking about before with lever two, all of which means that they are not able to move as quickly to resolve those cases, and people remain in jail during that period of time. So, theirs is more about staffing. We are working, at CEO, we're working with the public defender to try to mitigate some of these challenges. So, I believe the board is quite familiar with the Public Defender's Pipeline Program that essentially trains new attorneys to be able to handle cases. So, recently, CEO did resolve an issue that we saw, that they voiced to us where they were going to have budgeted vacancies, but we've rightsized their budget so that they can continue to hire under their pipeline program. Just a quick note about the CFCI, again, the Care First Community Investment Funding. There, the challenge is a little bit different. The CFCI process changed in May, where previously, we were, we at CSIT were able to directly allocate where one-time carryover funding would go, and due to the change in the board process, we now, we now work more collaboratively with the advisory committee to identify programs that support the funding. So, it creates, it does create another step, but thankfully, as of Thursday the 16th, so last week, we were notified, we did learn that the programs that we identified as potentially depopulating, that we requested funding for the committee for, that those programs were approved. So, that's, again, another way that we're trying to work around the county as a county to address some of these budget cuts. With that, we can go to the next slide, which is our last slide. I would sum this up by saying we are continuing everything you've heard us mention. I'll just note, again, the budget curtailments, as I mentioned, we're monitoring those, we are in close contact with the departments about issues as they arise and how we can address them. We are also continuing to gather information that's going to help us continue to build the implementation efforts that we have named, I would say, and as Will mentioned, we are still within our, the nine-month timeframe that we provided to your board about the framework. So, trying to identify those key steps that, if taken, can help us close the jail population. That nine-month period puts us at about early next year. So, all of these other next steps are geared towards helping us complete the information that we will provide to your board for review. So, I will pause there. We are happy to answer questions when the time comes, but I will provide, I'll seat the mic. We are happy to answer questions when the time comes, but I, I will provide, I'll, I'll seed the mic.
Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you very much. Was there any information, I know that we held these two items together, 12 and 27. We, this presentation largely focuses on item 12, but I just want to make sure that if there's anything with regard to 27 that needs to be presented before we begin discussion. Otherwise, we can jump right into questions.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. I'm Maggie Carter, the county's Chief DOJ Compliance Officer, charged with working across county departments to drive the county's multi-pillar strategy for compliance with the US DOJ Settlement Agreement and related cases. We're very pleased to be here with our CSIT colleagues to support their work to reduce jail population and close MCJ, and we see that work as very complimentary to the county's compliance strategies. Indeed, depopulation, community beds, and facilities alignment are three of our five strategic pillars, along with improving staffing and support and operational performance and data, both inside and outside of the jails. Now, we, my team is focused very specifically on the board's priority to get into compliance and on the requirements of the settlement agreement and the needs of our mental health populations in particular, while CSIT is very focused firmly on what it will take to close MCJ. But those missions and those board priorities have significant overlap, especially when we're talking about depopulation efforts, diversion for those with mental illness, reducing lengths of stay through case processing times. We also think there's substantial overlap and alignment when it comes to increasing the flexibility of our other existing facilities to reduce our reliance on MCJ, especially for individuals with moderate mental illness who are currently housed in moderate observation housing dorms at MCJ. Currently, we don't have any severely mentally ill patients or acutely mentally ill patients at MCJ. Those, those are the P3s and P4s that we sometimes talk about. The men are exclusively housed at Twin Towers, and the women are exclusively housed at CRDF. But we do have some moderate observation housing at MCJ. We have been working for some time to reduce our reliance on MCJ for moderate observation housing. That strategy has been a strategy of the county that predates even my role or the existence of my team. It, it started back in 2022 when we began the full renovation of PDC North, which used to be an exclusively GP or well facility to be now an exclusively moderate observation housing facility. That work began in 2022, it completed in January of 2024. During the course of that renovation, we were actually court ordered to complete it by a certain date. We had to get an extension of that date, but we ultimately completed it within the court's requirements by January 31st of 2024. But since that time, our, our need for moderate observation housing continues to grow. Even as our jail population has dramatically gone down in the last 10 years since the beginning of the settlement agreement, our mental health population keeps growing, both in absolute numbers and as a percentage of the jail population. So the, the demands of the settlement agreement and the demands of our US DOJ monitor is that we continue to look for ways to renovate our existing facilities to be appropriate for moderate observation housing. As we were completing the PDC North renovation, and, and essentially every quarter thereafter, it has been clear that we need still more appropriate facilities to reduce our MOH population at MCJ, and the monitor has been asking it for us to look for that. So we have been doing feasibility studies at our other existing facilities to look for what are the best next options. And we've been reporting the certain benchmarks and the progress of those feasibility studies in connection with CSIT's work and before, before CSIT returned to the CEO through J-COD's reporting. And what item 27, the board letter does, in our view, is, is take the next step towards meeting the requirements of the settlement agreement. What it does is it sets off design work for a renovation of the PDC South facility to be, to make 600 GP beds there, appropriate to be 600 moderate observation housing beds there. So there is no increase to the jail footprint or increase in our rated permanent housing capacity at that facility. It is a renovation to make it appropriate for a population that is growing. MOH is our fastest-growing subpopulation in the jails when you're looking just across the different mental health classifications. And so we are continually looking at possibilities for making our existing facilities more appropriate. In the words of the monitor, safer, more clinically appropriate. So I'm happy to answer questions about the specifics of that board letter. We also have colleagues from the Department of Public Works, from Correctional Health Services, and from LASD and CEO Asset Management to answer any questions from your board. But essentially, you know, the, the, the plan is to, to renovate 600 beds for, to make them safe and more clinically appropriate for MOH, and also to build out the clinical footprint at that site, which is currently small because it's currently sized for a population that is not on medication to the same extent and does not need all of the clinical programming and services required by the settlement agreement. And as we continue to, you know, we, we don't believe that this is necessarily the last or full solution. We are going to continue to work across all five of those strategic pillars to look for small, medium, and large solutions across the short, medium, and long term. But in our view, this renovation and item 27 is an important medium-term and medium-sized project. That 600-bed conversion would allow us to, to essentially rehouse 600 of what is now a little over 700 folks at MCJ who need MOH housing and do not have some other security restriction or court order or medical need that, that requires them to stay in the basin. And we do have folks in that category too, including some who have court orders saying that they can't move from the basin. But we do have a large enough population that we could, we definitely need and could use those beds today. And we expect that if, if our trends go anything like they've gone in the past, that that need for moderate observation housing will be a persistent need as we look across what our jail, existing jail facilities need to do and what the county's strategies need to be.
Okay, well, I want to start out, thank you for both presentations and for the work that you have done. I think it helps us set the table for our conversation very clearly. And I'm glad that you acknowledged the overlap, as well as the court orders, but definitely the overlap between these two issues. While they are separate, I think in the work of the county, making sure that there is shared vision and desiloing of what sort of efforts are happening is important. And so while I understand, like I said, these are two discrete actions and discussions that we are, you know, one can influence and have impact on another. And so to that end, I just want to confirm with county council, item 12 is directed as a receive and file. It is not an action item. 27 is an action item, whether we want to take action on the proposed renovations to Pitchess Detention Center.
That is correct, Supervisor.
Okay, I highlight that because I know there were a lot of social media and other communications that today the board is taking action to close the jail. And 2015, there was a vote to take, for a new facility. In 2018, there was an approved plan. In 2019, the board canceled the contract and, and instead moved towards a mental health facility. Then that plan was later abandoned. 2020, the vote was taken to close without a replacement. And in 2021, the board gave direction to decarcerate and depopulate. So just for the history of where we are, those were action items that the board took. Today is not an action item necessarily unless the board decides, but it is a receive and file in terms of the progress that has been made by this team. And I, and I think that's important to highlight. Given the context of the conversation, I know there are many people who reached out to my office expressing positions on something that isn't actually on our agenda today. I think in a 21st century reality, I share your concern and frustration around the lack of having a database to track what, what you see as a very important information for us to be mindful of as we're thinking about closure and how we meet not only our DOJ obligations, but also the obligations that this board intends to have in terms of a care-first approach and how we generally treat people in our custody and in our care. And the express purpose of a jail facility at the county level is largely twofold, to hold people over for state cases and to also incarcerate for lower-level offenses. I know that post AB 109, there's a smaller population that does stay for a longer term, but that's largely the purpose of a jail. And so I think the data that you highlighted is very important for us to understand how long people are staying and what, what sort of issues are there, are supposed to be addressed in that facility, I would say, are not sufficiently being addressed there. I think it's also important that you're looking at the broader system of care and all of the relationship that the respective departments have to this effort to close the jail, which is directed by court order, which is a DOJ directive that we must comply with, but it's also something that we have heard from our community that is a goal as well, as well as this board, to close the jail. So how has your experience been in working with the various departments to, to get the, the data that you need? And what has your team done to overcome any challenges that you've experienced?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So one of the things to overcome challenges Chitima talked about, you know, so the data is there in sense that people are in the jail, they're receiving services, they're being clinically evaluated. The challenge is it may not be being collected, in which case to overcome that, like Chitima talked about, it was, I think, in the case of the courts, we are working with our partners to start collecting data for a period of time, right? I mean, obviously, we need to build their capacity to collect it going forward, but in the short term, for a 30-day period, you can say, hey, the partners now, this is a challenge for the departments, right? They've, they've supported us in this, but the challenge is who do they get to do that, right? When they have other responsibilities to meet. And so one of the ways we overcome the challenge of data is that. The other, the other way you overcome the challenge, you know, we've done it with the, with the reviews of the, the, the chart reviews, right? So we need to understand, you know, what people's needs are because we need to then understand, there's a certain percentage of people who are voluntarily going into care, right, or, or accepting referrals to care. Whatever that percentage is, we need to increase that to depopulate the jail. So an important part of that is understanding what is the needs of people who are currently in the jail, understanding how many people are not only being referred, but ending up in treatment so that we can say, set baselines to say, we want to go above and beyond that. We also want to map those two against the levels of treatment that the health department partners present in their bed report, right? We have different levels of treatment from high-acuity residential treatment, outpatient, all FSB. And so we need to get an idea of, you know, what is it mapped like from people who are currently in the jail and it needs, if they were to go into community treatment, to say, well, do we have enough beds so that we're creating the right beds, right? And I know that the, the Health Department's board reports is all about that, right? And they, they spoke about that, and they spoke about where their deficiencies. But it's really important to have that information be as accurate as possible. And then talking about going forward, you want to be able to, to query that information on a regular basis, right? So I understand how some people might see, like, what does it have to do with closing the jail? But it's very important to close the jail, not just in the health vein, but even thinking about parole and probation violations, right? So the challenge there is we need to understand what the nature of those violations are. So we can see the parole violations, we can get percentages on that, we can see how many people in the jail, but to then develop an intervention to say, to Chitima's point earlier, hey, we want to connect them with J-COD, and they have all these great programs to connect people to services. Well, what does that look like? And then once we can understand what that looks like, then to the point of a timeline, we can say, okay, to develop that intervention, it requires this many people, it requires this much money, and this is how long it's going to take. So that helps us get there. So I'm answering two questions, or maybe one you didn't even ask, but that's how we, we tend to be overcoming it. A lot of it is just around working with CIO and the departments to get this information so it can be matched. So that's the biggest thing. So the departments are working with us. It's a challenge for everybody, and we're just working through those challenges. And I'll let Chitima add some.
To the topic of working through those challenges, just two examples for you all. So for your board, one important, so if we go back to the two main drivers of the jail population, right, coming, how many people come in is a big factor. So for us, that practically, practically means booking and admission, admissions data. When we, when we as CSIT, this iteration of it started, we realized that there was an agreement in place that allowed us to receive data on bookings, but we weren't receiving it in our hand, right? It wasn't in our hands. So now our team is actively working with ISAB so that we can get that information and plug it into the, the dashboards that you all saw, so that we can monitor spikes, including with Proposition 36, which, which I know is another big factor for us. So that's one is, is data on bookings. And then the other is, to Will's point about matching data, a, a big question for us, and this, this is another area where the DOJ compliance work is related, is what do we do about the changing composition of the jail population? That more people have service needs, substance use, mental health? How do we understand what those needs are? And how do we track when we see that, that population or the, you know, particular populations growing in the jail population and at what rate and where? So on the CSIT end, we've been working with SAPC to amend the, the, excuse me, the, a lot of acronyms, to amend the MOU that we have in place with the sheriff's department so that they will be able to match people who are, who we're seeing who have those needs. And on the back end, it will help them better identify how they serve those people and how they connect with them upon release.
I think that's helpful, especially because, as I alluded to earlier, it's generally expected that people who are, who come to LA County Jail aren't going to stay there for life or hopefully even for an extended period of time based on the charges, although I, as I acknowledge, there are some cases in which that's a little bit different. But the point being, if people come into the county jail, they will then be released and back into the community at some point. And the goal is to make sure that they not only face consequences for whatever the crime was that they may have committed, but also, most importantly, especially in the cases that you just highlighted, if there's a mental health issue or substance use issue or other issues that contributed to those factors, that we're actually addressing what the cause is. So we're creating safety through care by, by addressing what's actually happened in, in that circumstance. It's not, in my view, it's not enough to just put somebody in timeout. We actually should be doing all that we can to address the causes of what took place to bring someone there in the first place. And, and you did highlight what you expect to be your ongoing timeline. And so I appreciate that because I think that's the concern that I've consistently heard is, you know, we've, I just outlined sort of the 10-year conversation we've been on. And now you came in, I think, around December. So we're coming up, getting closer to a year of you being here. And, you know, studying and studying to death can, you know, frustrate people even if your intention is to move people in the right direction. I think there are a lot of studies that have been done. There's direction that's been given, both by board motion and other work. And so, you know, to me, you know, I've heard from community members who have said, well, why don't we create a Blue Ribbon Commission on this? I said, because we've already done 10 years of work. So, you know, from my view, I don't think that's an effort worth pursuing. I think we need to get to the action part. And so, you know, a logical first step to many people is how do we get people out of the jail? Where are they going to go? And so I think you're highlighting, you know, where, where and what kind of facilities are needed. And I think that's an important step because, you know, whether you're committed to this jail closing entirely or whether there's a discussion in some parts of the community around another facility, there are, there is a commitment to getting people out of MCJ. And so there has to be a clear, how do we get them out of the facility and where are they going to go? And, and I think the fact that we have taken 10 years to get to a place where we can't even answer that first question is really frustrating for a lot of people. So I want to make sure that we are staying on a timeline that's reasonable.
Can I just say something? Because everything you said is spot on, and I understand the, the, the point that people make about studying, but I just want to be clear, we're not studying the issue. We're gathering information for implementation, which is what everyone wants.
I'm very clear about that.
There's a difference between those two things. So I just, I just want to make that clear.
And I think that's worth highlighting, and there are parts of the community And there are parts of the community who have been involved in the jail closure effort who feel that they prepared a report some years ago that identified what solutions exist in the county. And making sure that you aren't sort of duplicating, in their perception, what work has already been done, is important. I think getting to the implementation part is the hard part, but it's the necessary part for this to happen. So I very much hear you. With regard to the PDC South renovation construction project, I appreciate and value the effort to improve the lives of those who are mentally ill and are required to be in our jails, and we absolutely must do better by them, not just because a court ordered us to, but because it's the right thing to do and it should be what we have been doing all along. We also owe them and our county more broadly a duty to make sure that the choices we're making are not mere Band-Aids, but are sustainable solutions. And I am not convinced that the PDC South project presented here today is one of those. Put simply, if this project moves forward, it will make life and treatment incrementally better for about 600 moderately mentally ill persons in our jails. It will also commit at least $10 million before any construction cost to jail improvements that we will not be able to spend on the community, on investing in the mental health care, housing, treatment, or services that JSIT just highlighted are needed to depopulate the jail in order to close MCJ. It will, this plan does not empty MCJ of moderate observation housing inmates. To the contrary, we heard that it will potentially give more swing space to decide where to house the mentally ill. The likely impact is increasing the total number of moderate observation housing inmates in custody and making space for continued moderate observation housing in MCJ that does not meet our compliance obligations and nor our constitutional obligations. And as I understand it, there is no commitment to closing any moderate observation housing units at MCJ as part of this proposal or maintaining release criteria designed to maintain constitutional conditions by releasing county sentence inmates as soon as safely possible. So in my view, this project will add more moderate observation housing beds without any corresponding updates to programs, processes, or procedures that reduce inmate population, improve the quality of care for those at risk of entering or re-entering the justice system, or reduce reliance on MCJ in the broader scope of our jail system. Our CSIT team, like our CEO compliance, is housed in the CEO's office and is specifically tasked with helping move the county towards closing MCJ. But I don't understand from the presentation today that CSIT was directly involved in what was proposed in Item 27 today. In my view, we should demand that our efforts connect across departments, priorities, and goals. If we're asking all of our departments to chip in on and focus on this effort to close the jail, we need to be working and walking cross jurisdictionally. And that didn't happen, I think, is a big miss. We cannot solve these issues in silos, especially when money is tight.
If I can speak to that.
Well, I have a few questions, if you don't mind. Can you give a bit more detail about the Care First Jails Last Capital Project 87733 Fund and how much is currently in that account?
Supervisor, I have the asset management team who can speak to the history of the account, but currently, if I can rifle through all of my pages here, there is, here we go. There's about, I'm going to ask Matt Diaz, our manager, to answer that question. There's about 83 million or so in the account, I believe, but he will confirm that.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Matthew Diaz with the CEO's office. So currently in the Care First Jails Last Capital Project Fund, there is approximately 85.161 million available.
Okay. And since that account was created, how much has been spent generally, on what? And are there any other uses currently proposed for that fund?
Yes, Supervisor, approximately 32.355 million has been spent to date. There are a variety of items that it's been spent on, namely, a motion in 2021 to develop a restorative Justice Village master plan. That was a $500,000 expenditure. There was a motion in 2022 to proceed with the development of the restorative Justice Village master plan. $65,000 was spent at that time before it was subsequently canceled. In 2022, there was a motion to appropriate and transfer approximately $10 million from this fund to the General Hospital and West Campus project. And in August of '22, there was approximately $21.79 million transferred to the Camp Gonzalez Los Angeles Training Program to fully fund that project.
Thank you. I think it's important to highlight where we have invested because to the CSIT presentation, we need to continue those kinds of investments in order to depopulate our jails. And I understand that this account was not created for further investment in expanding jails, but in fact, for the kinds of programs that you have just articulated. Is that right?
Supervisor, the motion that was put forth that established this Care First Jails Last Project Fund and the amending motion by SD2 did outline specific requirements for the use of the funding. There was a requirement that the funding would be used for the modification, renovation of existing jail facilities. There was funding.
Generally, I believe that's conditioned.
That's correct. That is the condition, modification, renovation of existing jail facilities. And where any funding is spent for modifications or renovations, those modifications or renovations should be without expansion unless specifically ordered by the court.
Thank you. I think that last part is important. I understand that improving facilities specifically focused on mental health can improve qualitative care requirements of the DOJ settlement agreement. But I would argue, aren't these benefits, aren't the benefits from these 600 beds likely short-lived if we do not solve for the constantly increasing population of MOH inmates in our system? And have LASD, CSIT, or anyone else presented their view of how this type of proposal might fit in the larger plan of closing MCJ?
So Supervisor, I don't think the benefit of these beds will be short-lived because they will be part of a basket of strategies that we will continue across all five pillars, including continuing to focus on depopulation and community bed strategies while continuing to align our facilities to the population we have. I think the part that is not going to change is that we are likely, I don't see any trends coming and I don't think, and I think we're aligned with our CSIT and department partners on that, and not seeing any trends coming that would substantially reverse that trend. In other words, you know, I think we have seen over the last 10 years, total jail population decline quite substantially while our mental health population rises up to meet that number, to the point where now it's, you know, essentially, half of our jail population needs specialized housing. So projects to align our existing facilities to the folks that we have in our custody are going to, in my view, continue to be necessary and continue to be demanded by the court and our monitors and our litigation partners and won't be wasted in that sense. But they have to be combined with all of the other strategies and pillars so that we are not, we are limiting our population growth or going back to reducing our population wherever we can. And so that basket of strategies is important and very complimentary. But this, I think, is likely the way that we need to be going and I think is a continuation of the county's successful strategies to improve the care for MOH patients that included the north facilities renovation, for example. I think we constantly hear from our monitor and our stakeholders in the litigation that they find that facility to be much safer and more clinically appropriate than MCJ. We get a lot of credit as a county for doing that renovation. And I think that looking ahead at other abilities to align our existing facilities so that we can be caring for these patients at PDC South instead of in MCJ, which is a very, you know, is a very problematic facility, will be what we are continually asked to do in the litigation.
So your long-term plan then contemplates turning jail beds into mental health beds?
I think, I think our long-term plan is to take the existing jail beds and make them safer and more appropriate for the mental health population. You know, that question of whether something is a jail bed or a mental health bed, I think in some people's minds is a legal question as to whom is custody of that individual committed. For the people who are remanded to the sheriff's custody, we have an obligation under the settlement agreements to provide clinically appropriate care. So we can't just have a jail bed that doesn't do that. We need to align our jail beds to do that while also building out community beds and beds in the, in the system of care that it, where somebody may be committed to or voluntarily entering the care of a facility run by one of our health departments, for example.
I agree that we need to meet that obligation. And I think that the fund that we are, that is proposed to be funding what is on our agenda today is intended to create the kinds of community-based solutions that you just talked about. And I think that the long-term, we have to be expanding those while we're addressing the issues that are in our jail in order, based on the report that we just heard, in order to address the broader, all of the broader concerns that are, that are before us. And when these conversations are had without some of the critical partners who need to be part of this conversation, I think it doesn't contemplate everything that we need to be thinking about as a county. And I know that it's hard because there are many departments that need to be part of the conversation. And I feel that if we aren't figuring out how to make that easier as a county system, we are going to move even slower in solving things that we're being asked to solve even more quickly, given what the directives are from our federal government. I appreciate the extensive effort of our CEO compliance team. I recognize the importance of improving the conditions of care experienced by our mentally ill community members in our county jails. And we have made significant investments, as was mentioned, in building out capacity in our community for mental health care, for substance use treatment and housing, and I believe we should be building on that success. If we want to get this right, we have to work across departmental and project barriers and make sure that our commitments fund major projects like the significant renovation at issue here that fit into a broader strategy of county investments that honor this board's and the voters' commitment to invest first into care. And so that's where I'm at on those two items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to go back to basics. From your point of view, what does jail closure mean? Is it simply the closure of the facility? I mean, how would you define it? Because you talk to different people and you get different answers.
Yeah, I mean, I think I addressed that in the opening. I don't see it as just closing the building as MCJ. In fact, the motions don't speak to that, that created JSIT. It talks about spending community care, it talks about ensuring the people in the jail are receiving enough care so that they don't stay there long and they have to. So I see it as us addressing those root causes. I see us as building the ability to constantly look at the jail and understand why there's increases in certain populations and others and develop strategies to ensure that, once again, we have the fewest people as possible in the jail.
So given that the mission, your mission is to close Men's Central Jail, which doesn't just mean dismantling it, it means building something within the community, correct? It's not just closing the facility, it's, it's building an infrastructure to support...
Depopulation.
Depopulation.
Yes.
How would you respond to those who oppose making further investments to improve the conditions at Men's Central Jail as we speak? Because that seems to be an ongoing debate, too, because we're spending a lot of money to keep it open.
Right. Yes, that's definitely a challenge, especially in thinking about closing. But I'll go back to what I said about what's in the motion and just generally, like, while the people are there, it's a horrible place, it needs to close. But while the people are there, who are there now, we need to ensure that they're there in conditions that are humane and are best for them, right? We don't want, there's been an unfortunate number of deaths to this point in the jails. So we can improve conditions that can improve that, and if that's related to the physical conditions of the jail, we need to do that while we are moving forward with the work of CSIT.
And I think that's why I support the PDC South, because that's one step toward doing that. And I'm looking over at my favorite doctor, Dr. Belichick, who would tell you that even as we invest in Men's Central Jail, the facility is not conducive to the kind of treatment that many need. If anything, to your point Supervisor Horbath, when you said, you know, providing them with the care while they are in our custody, I would argue that it's actually, I mean, and no disrespect, because I know the staff is committed, but it's almost making it even more difficult to provide quality care, I'm looking over at Dr. Belichick, more quality care for those that are housed there as we speak. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. You, and then you talked about the data collection as a challenge. And given that each department gathers their data differently, I think that's the county way, each one has their own little way of nuance of doing things, making the process of consolidating is time-consuming, as I'm sure you would agree. Have you identified any other structural or operational barriers that add to the difficulty of this work that we can address as a board?
Other ones besides the ones we've named so far, as in the information living in different places, taking multiple steps. To answer one question, I'll give an example of, you know, what we've heard from departments that, to answer the question of how many people do the health department serve who come from jail, that is information that they have to rely on contracted service providers to get. So they have to ask the providers, which means the providers has to ask the person, which means the person has to self-report that, yes, I came from jail and potentially, you know, manage any perceived stigma that comes from that. So I would say the biggest challenges we've seen so far are, a lot of times, answering a question is a multi-step process. And even within the departments, information may live on one team, you know, to answer the first part of the question, then they have to work with other teams to get it.
So are you looking at identifying those barriers and then disseminating that information to departments so that, because you're going to ask for it, and it'd be easier for them to front-load what data's going to be, because I think data is really what's going to drive where we go. And if we're not, and you said that if you can't find it, then you build it or you create it. But I think you didn't mean create, like, out of the blue.
Correct.
You meant create on your own, the infrastructure.
Correct.
So is that what you are going to do with the departments?
So yes. So the initial example I meant about gathering, creating the data set. So let me go back. There are two ways to think of the types of data that we need. One is because of our immediate charge to develop the closure plan, a lot of what CSIT is trying to do is get information that will help us project out. So we know that if we do nothing, in five years, the jail population is going to rise to about 14,500 people. So we are trying to get some, be very precise about which steps are going to help us mitigate that. So take, for example, a two-month survey of attorney data. In two months, we're trying to understand what are the pain points so that we can then extrapolate strategies and say, if we take these strategies, if we make it easier for attorneys to visit their clients in between court appearances, so we don't have a, we don't have to do that on the court day, if we make it easier to do video screenings or screen people between court dates, if we do that, how much time does that shave off of a case? And then how much impact does that have on the jail population? So I would think of the created data sets that I mentioned earlier as more about helping us get some point-in-time measurements that help us give a future projection. That's one. The second one, and I'll just say briefly, is infrastructure. So when I say build, I mean quite literally, we do have to build more infrastructure, and I'm thinking more about what CIO is doing with Info Hub, and that's where we get data from the different departments that we can match.
And I appreciate, go ahead.
I just would add, I mean, I'll add on to what she said, she said already, but we have seen and there have been departments that are starting to restructure their data collection systems to collect data that we are talking about. To your point about the departments starting to re-figure their infrastructure, some of the changes are going to be harder to make, and departments probably won't be happy about it, I'm sure, because it's tough. But these are things that I would say I think are important in the long term, to your point.
Well, tough initially, but long term.
Tough initially, but long term.
Beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so I hear you. In Slide 8, you note that 1,000 new ODR housing slots are needed to maintain diversion for the P3, P4 clients and to expand eligibility to P2s, the largest group in mental health housing. Will the framework you present include a projection of housing slots and the associated costs needed to serve the P2 population? Because that's a population that I think we need to focus on, well, I know we need to focus on.
So the 1,000, and I'm going to answer, you can let me know if I'm understanding your question correctly. So, and we might want to bring up somebody from ODR to help answer this, but the 1,000 slots and the costs associated with that, does include any permanent supportive housing for those people for the period of time they need it? So if your question is about including housing, I believe it's already included, but we have Clemens here and Dr. Goult.
That is.
Yes.
Hi.
Hello, Clemens Hong with ODR. So the 1,000-bed projection that's in the presentation is what we need sort of immediately. In April of...
Like, right now, without the closure of Men Central?
So in April of 2026, ODR runs out of the ability to expand our housing slots because our budgeted housing amounts come to, we hit our ceiling, basically. So starting in April 2026, the only people will be able to divert will be filling beds based on turnover. So if we assume a 2% turnover, which is essentially what we see, we'll be able to serve about 70 individuals a month versus the 115, 120 that we're serving currently. So it will significantly reduce our ability to remove people with serious mental illness from our jails in the P3 and P5 for population.
What about the P2?
That's who we're serving currently, with some P2s. So in the P2 population, to expand beyond that, we would need additional beds. And so the 1,000 beds and the program that was developed...
Can you do me a favor? I just realized some people may not know what P3, P4, and P2 is. Can you?
So in brief, there's probably better people to describe it, but the P3 and P4 populations are essentially individuals in our jail who are assessed to need higher levels of care, so either an acute hospital setting or a subacute, like institutions for mental disease setting in the community. So those are people that would align to that. Whereas a P2 would be considered someone who could go to the community without patient or sort of ambulatory, sort of a community-based mental health treatment.
And the percentage of P2s, I think, is greater than the P3s and 4s. That's why I say you should focus, because you want to get them into the care as soon as possible.
Yes. So there's a larger number of P2 individuals in our jails, or people that are assessed to be P2s. And so in terms of the beds, the 1,000-bed estimate is what we would need, essentially, even starting this budget year, as I said, April 2026 is when we would hit our ceiling to continue our expansion of the beds and serve individuals coming out at the current sort of rate that we're doing it. To add P2s, we would need to add additional beds. And so the 1,000 beds, the approach that we use because of the lack of ongoing funding available, at least per what we understand this year, is we converted ODR housing, which is historically a permanent supportive housing approach, to an interim housing approach, one in which we can, to basically serve people that are coming out and move into interim housing. And the budget that you saw up there is the amount that we would need to increase our beds by 1,000 this year. We would need more beds ongoing to continue to serve populations coming out. So that is really just the stopcat immediate need that we need to not basically reduce, right, our ability to move people out of jail currently.
So knowing that, and I can't remember, it was on one of these slides, that the P2 need a lower level of care when released into diversion versus the P3, P4, which need more likely a locked facility. When we look at things like the IMD waiver to expand on the board and care model, are you all incorporating that into your model, Will? I mean, in terms of how we are going to go about placing these people in the community?
So, yes, we are thinking about that. We've been working with our partners at DMH around that. We've talked to some of the board officers, obviously, and you probably know more than me, because you've been here longer, that that is definitely an impediment to creation of beds and maintenance because of the requirements of the number, right? And so I don't know if Dr. Wong here, she wants to speak to that, but we are incorporating it in terms of our thoughts around the strategy.
No, I've been pushing for this since I was elected. I mean, I believe it's a necessity, even beyond the closure of the jail, for the people that are unhoused on the street. I think it's equally as important, and it's something that we need to do. I don't know if Dr. Wong wants to.
A little bit of a hike. I have a shuttle.
Hi, Doctor.
Good morning, supervisors. I mean, good afternoon.
Yeah.
Yes, I think all of your offices have worked to support our efforts for, you know, doing something with the IMD exclusion. I think definitely if we can make progress on that front, that would increase the availability of the subacute beds needed. When we looked at the number of people coming out of jail, especially on T-CONs, that is the level of care that is most needed and most difficult to attain.
And I'll just add, I mean, I've been talking with Dr. Wong and her staff, who've been thinking of creative ways, right? Because we do need to get innovative. Everybody's been really, we're working hard around this. But even many of the innovative discussions we have about how to approach this, the IMD, it always comes back to the IMD and the challenge it's going to create. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah. And I think what's important to consider is that we have proposed to the federal government different levels of IMD reform, everything from just a modest increase of beds to taking boarding cares, which are non-locked settings out of the picture, to a full repeal of IMD.
And thank you for that. The last question, Will, that I have actually is, does the movement of the MOH population to PDC South advance closure efforts? I think you said it does.
I mean, to some extent, it's not, because of my understanding of it, and Maggie will have to speak to this, because it's renovating beds, it's not adding to the census of the jail. It does in a sense, but it doesn't support it generally, because we're not decreasing, we're not moving in a way that we would be able to decrease the population. So it does help, but it's not going to really substantially get us in that direction.
And I would just add that I think that my team thinks of it similarly, right? That we are helping to make the other existing facilities more flexible so that we have more options for MCJ, but we'll need additional solutions to put together as a county family to close the jail.
Thank you.
Supervisor, if I, I'm sorry, if I could just put a finer point, just a finer point on that, because Maggie has talked about her pillars, but it occurs to me that it's not clear to the board and perhaps the public what those pillars are for DOJ compliance. And there's a lot of overlap between C-CIT and DOJ compliance that they work on. And so two of the pillar, three of the pillars in particular are depopulation, community beds, and operations and data. And there is, between the three, almost 600, over $600 million in county investments in those three areas. There are facility improvements that are separate, that Maggie sometimes has to look at to improve conditions, to comply with some of the monitor's demands. They may not immediately be responsive to the closure, but the teams are very aligned. And I'm sensitive to that, because everything flows up through the CEO's office, and they actually share staff on depopulation, and they meet all the time, and they're working together. So they are not in silos. I just want to make sure that everyone knows they're working together. There are some things that are in Maggie's Venn diagram that are separate, something that are in Will's Venn diagram that are separate, but there is a lot of overlap where the two projects are working on the same things.
And just to give a couple of examples, too, I mean, I think sometimes we, as a county, and we should, always need to look to the next set of solutions. But some of the things that I think we've accomplished together with C-CIT, the prior iterations of C-CIT and the other county departments include really reducing the state transfer populations, working to decrease transportation bottlenecks so we can get people to court. We can't improve the court process or the speed of the court process if people continually miss their court dates. And the P3, P4 ramp-up for community beds, where we have worked very hard with C-CIT and the prior iterations of C-CIT before Will's arrival, to build out and meet the board's ramp-up targets for year one and year two for DMH and ODR beds for P3s and P4s, which is critical. There are no P3s and P4s in MCJ, but keeping that population, which is our very highest needs population down, allows us to continue to fit at Towers and CRDF. And so I want to just highlight those specific examples. Again, we've done some of those things. Now we need to look to year three and the future and everything else that we need to do.
So one of the things that I learned at CCJCC is that the courts play, the judges play, a very, very important role as it relates to who can be released. Do you, I don't know if this would be data, but do you have the percentage of P3, P4s that are not eligible for diversion?
So...
Or I guess the overall population, because that's one of the things I heard.
What I would say is, yes, and it depends on what type of diversion we are talking about or what's meant by diversion. ODR can speak to this very well, but the mental health diversion statute, for example, is specific to people in a certain part of their posture in their criminal case and with certain charges. And so ODR has criteria that they have to look at to determine who their, who is the population of P3s and P4s that they can serve. Likewise, DMH is serving a percentage of that population, especially those who end up on a path toward conservatorship. So we do have to look at these subpopulations and, again, have a basket of solutions.
But I do know that, just listening to the judges that have come to CCJCC, that many will not, they will not sign off on diversion. They don't fit the criteria. I don't really, I can't, they'd have to speak for themselves, but that's why I think it's important to note that we're talking about diversion for population, but we need to know what that population sector is. I would think, if you're going to look at a plan, because those are, if the courts don't sign off on it, they can't be released.
Yeah. And I speak from outside, this goes back to what I talked about, looking at infrastructure and data, right? So we need, there's been growth in the population, as Maggie referenced, right? And so while DOJ compliance is working within the provisions and doing what they're doing, we need to be looking at, well, why is it growing, right? What is the story? What can we see in the data to understand that? What can we see, to your question about, for the people who aren't eligible, what are other strategies and options to serve that population, right? This is what I talked about in terms of what's been done in other cities, to continuously problem-solve around this, right? Everyone's not going to be eligible. That doesn't mean that they're not returning to community, I think, as Supervisor Horvath said, right? Like, they're still coming back to the community at some point. We're thinking about public safety. How do we develop strategies to address that? So that's the C-CIT approach.
100%. And I don't think it's an either-or. I think it's an and.
It's an and, yes. Not either or.
It's a comprehensive, an and. And then I know that DA Hockman's sitting over there, and I talk about the courts, it's also the DA. You all weigh in on this. And I would just ask you, are you collaborating with the CSIT on expediting case processing? Because I heard the number a year, and some of them have not even, have not gone before the courts. Are you working to try to bring that number down so that we can get the courts?
Absolutely. We are working, and I commend Mr. Pickney and his team for giving us data. Data we didn't have. Data is information. Information is power. Power allows you to make better decisions. So in that respect, I applaud that effort. However, I want to give, very briefly, three observations. The first observation is just a numbers analysis that isn't part of this, but should be. We have, and I'll round it up or down to 10 million people in this county. 10% of that would be 1 million, 1% is 100,000, .1% is 10,000. So if you want to figure out our jail population in a percentage of the total amount of people in our county, 99.85% of our county is not in our jail population. Percentage-wise, we're dealing with .15%, roughly. So, and the reason I say that is to the thought that we're going to get it down from 99.85% to 100%, or 99.99%, I think I'd love to live in that world. I would absolutely love to live in a world where the criminals are figuring out that it's not worth it to commit crime in our community. So we can go from 99.85% to 99.99 or even higher percentage of people in our community not committing serious and medium-serious crimes or having mental, serious and medium-serious mental illness when they do so. So that's observation number one, is that we're kind of stuck, because of our numbers, with a certain population that is going to be committing these crimes for the foreseeable future. I think 14,700 is probably a conservative estimate, depending on how population, if population keeps increasing. The second is, in Mr. Pickney's presentation, his first point, first page, first slide, talked about increasing opportunities for deflection and diversity, excuse me, diversion, as ways to deal with our overcrowding problem and reducing the population in the jails in order to close it. But I think there's one additional D that is the true solution to truly reducing the numbers to numbers we can deal with that give us a lot more options, and that's deterrence. In other words, if we can deter criminals from committing the crimes in the first place, they never enter our jail system, mental health-ridden or otherwise. So how do you actually deter the criminal, the would-be criminal population from committing crimes so they don't enter our jails? And again, I'm not referring to the halcyon days of the 1960s and '70s, if they ever existed. I'm more referring to 2014, considered our safest year in the last 50 years. So how do we get back to those numbers?
So, and I appreciate that, DA Hockman. Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
No, she wanted to say something.
Just to add to the question, I think the DA's presence here, as well as other staff from his office, is a testament to the partnership, two other examples of the ways in which we at C-CIT are working with the DA's office. One, you heard me talk about the resolving old cases, cases over a year. The DA Hockman and his team issued a special directive to help address those cases that went out a few months ago as part of this big push, that's one. The second, that San Fernando courthouse pilot that I mentioned, the DA's office is a partner, they're doing the reviews at...
So there is collaboration, recognizing that there are impediments, barriers. And I don't disagree with you, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have jails, right?
Right.
But to that point, there are individuals that would be better treated outside of the system as it relates to diversion.
Absolutely. But this is the big caveat. Here's what we've actually seen as the mental health laws have been applied to our criminal justice system. If you want to get, if you have a felony, you are looking at mental health diversion possibilities, that'll basically be an off-ramp from the criminal justice system. Let me give you a very real situation. An individual committed domestic violence. He beat his wife to a pulp in 2015, convicted, got probation. Did it again in 2017, beat his wife to a pulp, got actually one year of state prison. Then in 2025, February of this year, he did it a third time. He goes in through his defense attorneys in ODR and says, "I have undiagnosed schizophrenic disorder. I don't even know what that is." ODR submits a one-page letter with no backup, having conclusion saying, "I actually, this person has undiagnosed schizoaffective disorder, and there's a treatment facility, an unlocked treatment facility, we can put that person in. We opposed it mightily in the court, the court agreed with it. The person went in to this treatment facility unlocked." And you know where this story goes. Walked out of the facility, and now his wife is in a coma, and the three kids aren't going to have a mother or a father. So my point to you, Supervisor Barger, is this: For the right case, without violence in the background, without serious committing of crimes, with the, having never had the opportunity for mental health treatment, we will be the first proponent to get as many people in ODR as we possibly can. ODR is actually the best program out there for mental health treatment. They do a very good job of screening the facilities, the unlocked facilities, because they're mostly unlocked, to do it. However, where the system is putting violent and serious offenders into unlocked facilities, we are going to oppose that on behalf of the victims every single time.
No, and I hear you, DA Hockman, but I also know that the judges are equally as apprehensive.
But we're working with the judges, Your Honor.
And I...
Your Honor, you're...
I was like, wow, okay.
You're supervisor. You're chair. Your Chair.
But.
I like Your Honor, actually.
Yeah. I just, I just believe there's got to be a balance and I don't, I mean, go ahead.
And I would just say, the balance is also built into the process. So it's part of the adversarial process. Under the mental health diversion law that allows for the hearing to be had where the DA can make their arguments, the defense can make their arguments and the judge can hear the case. So not taking away from anything D A Hochman is saying, if anything, I think some of what you're saying is exactly what plays out during the hearings on a case by case basis, to your point about balance.
And there's, and those outcomes, I mean, out of the cases, and that's horrific, but O D R also has success stories working with, actually with your district attorneys on situations where it's been successful. And that's a horrific case.
So then my, my last observation is this, you're going to have a population in the thousands, Supervisor Berger, that is going to have serious mental health issues and we don't have the locked facilities to put them in. Sadly, our jails are effectively those locked facilities. So while everyone universally wants Men's Central Jail to be closed, decimated, destroyed down to the rubble, the question is, what are we going to replace it with? Are you going to replace it with 50, 100-person facilities throughout the entire county? You'll find out that that is wildly inefficient, wildly exorbitantly expensive and can't be done. Or are you going to finally build a state of the art facility that has a thousand of the best mental health beds out there, centralized in one location, which will be, again, efficient and effective? Having the court, a video courtroom down below, having each inmate having an iPad where they can communicate with their defense attorney because the Wi-Fi is that good and that encrypted. Again, helping speed up the process for getting people in the system and out of the system while giving them the treatment, the rehabilitation that they so need when they get into that system. Our question is, we want to all shut it down, but we need to be talking about that replacement. And if we want to build one facility or 50, 100-person facilities, we just need to make that decision and get about funding it. Because Supervisor Horvath, the only thing I disagree with you is this issue has not been studied for 10 years. This issue's been studied for 17 years, since 2008. Between 2008 and 2019, this board studied this issue, came up with a plan that you initially adopted in the beginning of 2020 and then changed the direction, which is fine. But now we're five years later, we need to come up with a real plan to deal with this multi-thousand people population that gives them mental health treatment, rehabilitation, and detention.
And I think that that's what Sheriff Luna has been looking at in terms of that care campus or what it's called. But when we talk about Men's Central and the DOJ consent decree is really what's driving moving the P D C south, I think. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Oh, I'm sorry, for Maggie, for the pitches at Detention Center.
It is Supervisor Berger, but also the reason that that is an imperative of a litigation is because it's an imperative of properly serving our population that is changing. And so yes, we need to be meeting the requirements of the settlement agreement and also meeting the requirements of our population who needs mental health, housing, and services.
So if this project does not move forward, which I'm in support of it, are there alternative options available to ensure compliance?
So there's, there's nothing, there's nothing else that has a better set of trade offs in the views of the departments. And I think all of those who are looking at the options that exist in our available facilities that meets what the monitor's urgent demand is, which is to find now something in the short or medium term that will be an alternative to M C J for people who are remanded to the custody of the sheriff. Of course, we need to put all those other options around this too, though.
Yeah, and I know that the sheriff, I mean, has expressed concerns about this being a Band-Aid. To your point, D A Hochman, about long-term plan. And my greatest fear is that we debate this and then as we term out, someone new comes on board and has their own view and wants to start over. And that's why the DOJ monitor, I believe, is taking a serious look at how we are moving forward with addressing, looking at the mental health, but you'd have to be deaf, dumb and blind not to see what M C J looks like from the inside and the out and the treatment and care that is being provided there across the board, not just for mental health. And I think so it's only a matter of time, mental health first, but it could be, it could be coming and spreading out amongst the entire department as it relates to those in custody, I think, with the DOJ, given the substandard care and even just the facility itself. I have serious concerns about that. Out of the interest of time, I'm going to save my remarks. I know that my colleagues want to say something. I've got more questions, but I think there's been a good discussion and I will let Supervisor Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has been an interesting conversation because to be honest, I think it would be helpful that we somehow are able to articulate the history of how we got here. And I don't know that we need to go back 20 years, but I know that this board changed their prerogatives when Supervisor Ridley Thomas, Sheila Kula, myself were all on the board. And that's when we started to put care for, that's where the notion of care first came about. And it was as a result, in my recollection, at least when I was here back in 2018, is that we knew that the Twin Towers could not adequately continue to serve as a mental health jail. And so we thought about how we could expand beds in a setting, not necessarily in the community per se, but using some of our hospital facilities that have, you know, I would say just an enormous opportunity and land that could be used to build recuperative beds. And that was the agenda at that time. And as a result, I know on my campus at General Hospital, we've already built 98 recuperative beds. And money was sought from A B 109 and other funds. We used ARPA money, we used B chip money, C F C I money, mental health money, realignment money, all of that to help build out beds because we knew the pressure was on the jail system. And for us, or at least for me, that was my obligation. I felt compelled to do that. And I think it has worked. I don't think enough people have really fully realized what a relief it has been to be able to at least build those kinds of facilities. And now I think we have them at other campuses, they're moving forward. I think we're going to see much more of that and it would be, it would be good collectively to put that all together. So everyone can see it with public eyes where these beds are being built because they have been built as a result of our overcrowding and the use of mental health services. Because I do agree that Men's Central Jail should not exist the way it is currently. I would, as was said earlier, I would, I would just like to see it totally removed. I think we do have an opportunity, though, to look at the data that was just presented by you, by C C. And I'm very pleased, this is the first time in my 10 years that I've seen data of this magnitude that actually pinpoints where levers of pressure can be so we can implement the change. And I don't think you studied it in the way that other people have criticized you or us, because we're all so responsible for this report. Is it, can it be improved? Yes. And I think part of that's going to start with what we do in terms of the recommendations that you brought out, some of which are under our control and some of which are not. But I do, I do empathize with you when you point out that some of the things that we have tested, either in a pilot manner with some of our departments like A D P or probation or P D's office, some of those just got pushed aside because of the budget. So we probably need to think about reprioritizing that once our budget is adjusted to, so that we can continue on this trajectory of having those, as you've identified in your report, areas where we can provide, you know, readily efficient information for courts, for release, and really exploring why people are detained so long and what those barriers are. And a lot of them are impediments, but I think if we can go again at that and have the full support of the departments, because that's the other thing I have a question about. Do you really have teeth in this? I mean, when we talk about, you're asking departments for data, how long does it take? And I know we all have to say, well, we're all working together, but be honest here. What is it really going to take to get the information at a specific time to have some of these action items moved, moved in a way that's meaningful?
I mean, it's going to take time. It's not easy. It's not easy for departments, as I said, because.
Is it a year?
I wouldn't, I would, I would, yeah, we can ask the departments, but I'll say this. So I think we've got to look at it two ways. The departments getting, having the ability to get the information that they're engaging people around to give to us. And then the infrastructure, which a lot of that's guided by the C I O and by I S A B and by the C I Os within the departments. If we're talking about automating feeds of information, that's a difference set that it's not within the purview of the department itself necessarily, right? It's just how long does it take technology wise to do all those things, right? And I know Peter Lou's here from the C I O. And then you have the legal parts of that, right? I said, we're doing this in a way to respect the privacy of people. So now we're talking about M O U's, we're talking about the county council's office. So we're talking about the bureaucracy it is, right? Some of it could take a year depending on it, but I'd say the things that we identified, no, we don't, the things that were specifically on the side, no, that's not a year because they're already in progress. Now, changing the systems.
But it's ramping it up so you have more.
More of it. And changing the systems in the long term of a department, their, whatever their data system isn't collecting it, you know, a simple change is a workflow change, is related to the workflows that their, their staff has and contracts and all of that.
But again, it goes to priority.
So that stuff can take a while.
Do you have the authority and are we making it a priority in our departments so that we can move this needle along, you know, C E O?
Yeah, we, so the board in a series of motions granted J C it the authority to direct departments with respect to jail closure. And I know that Mr. Pickney has been working collaboratively with departments. He has not flagged for me any immovable barrier in a department that has anything to do with the will to do it or not do it. We need departments to prioritize it. They need to be doing that. From what I've heard, they are doing that. What he's flagging is operational challenges. So if you think about the jail as a system, the, the technology in the jail is decades behind where we need it to be just to start automating data. Now, if he flags an issue with, you know, in departments where there's an issue about, you know, they want to do X and we think they need to do Y, that's a discussion I expect him to have with me and we can figure out the way forward there.
And is that something that has come up? I mean, you don't have to give me an example, but I mean, I think this is the time where we have to have these, you know, really open conversations so that you have and you know that there are members on the board that support that, that want to see this rectified as soon as we can.
Right.
Anything that's going to move the needle.
I mean, I guess what I'll say is, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say everybody, well, everybody's here, so we all align, but that doesn't mean everybody always agrees. I mean, that'd be, that would be.
This reminds me of probation.
That wouldn't make sense and we shouldn't all agree because then we're not going to get anything done if we're all saying, oh, you're, you're right, you're right, you're right. But I'd say we're working through those things. I haven't gotten to a point yet. And it's early on, right? We're doing a lot of digging and we have a small team. So like it's taking time. I wouldn't be surprised if we get to a point where, and I expect to get to a point where we're going to say, we think this is best in the department, may say, we don't, or whatever, whatever the response is. And like the C, Acting C E O says, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that when we come to it. But I don't, nobody is looking, in my opinion, nobody's looking to say no. I think they're trying to get to yes, they're just pointing out the challenges.
And I would ask, I know in your report you posted too that you are seeking more C F C I money, getting that back and prioritizing some of the money.
I mean, it would be good and we're working with the advisory committee as we, as we're directed to, to figure that out. I mean, I think it is a benefit for us to be able to have a certain amount of pot of funds to be able to direct to us things that are specific to jail closure. Most of the work that's done by departments, nobody is really specific to this work, right? They're doing work that's supportive, even in the health departments, right? Like in mental health, D M H is doing, providing services for people generally to have, are suffering from mental illness, right? So being able to direct it to things that'll help us accomplish our goal is helpful.
Could I ask you, do you, do you currently receive A B 109 money?
No, we do not.
And I wonder why, because if in your reporting, you're saying that there are obstacles with, I mean, we have a high incidence of people that are, that are being, that are having to stay longer in jail because they have violations with probation. Shouldn't we be somehow working closer and perhaps identifying staff through that money or something, or, you know, providing the support that's necessary so we could start to look at that issue? We have that source of money now.
Yeah, Supervisor, A B 109 funding is part of the funding landscape for the different, the different strategies we've implemented to both on the jail closure side and on the DOJ compliance side. I think going forward, what we've seen with A B 109 is there is a lack of ongoing funding and there is also a strain on the one-time funding. But we, we get, we allocate all the A B 109 and supplemental as that comes around and that's just because that's the rhythm of the funding from that funding source. As that comes around, just like we did last year and the year before, we talked to our initiatives, C C, DOJ compliance to see how best to leverage that money. So it's definitely on the radar, Supervisor. It's just not, hasn't been a font of new money coming out of A B 109.
I'd agree with that. I'd just add, C C right now is not receiving A B 109 funding directly, but the departments are, various departments are receiving it and they're leveraging that funding for some of the strategies that we've talked about today as well as others.
I think that could also, that also needs to be reported in some way because I don't think the public may understand how that money is being utilized. They typically think that it's just enforcement, enforcement and the hammer. And I think sometimes we probably hurt ourselves by not being more open about, transparent about what that money is used for. And then I would just, just lastly say that in terms of what is happening with this new, this other item, item 27, the renovation of pitches, can you walk me through again just what the triggers are in terms of the consent decree, why we have to do this or what, you know, what, what came first? You said this was underway some time ago, so can you walk us through that history really quick?
So as, as you know, Supervisor, the settlement agreement is, has been in place for a long time and, and the county entered it in 2015. Our jail population had a much different composition then. The total population was much higher and the percentage that had a need for specialty mental health housing was much lower. And so as we have journeyed to get into compliance with the settlement agreement, I would say, you know, that some of the county's challenges really changed, especially emerging from the pandemic, where what became real barriers to compliance with the remaining provisions of the settlement agreement was that mismatch between specialty mental health housing and services and the growing percentage of the population that needed it. And so that then began to drive a lot of the county's compliance strategies. It was around that time that the county committed to renovating P D C North for mental health housing, for moderate observation housing. Later, as, you know, part of various promises we, we made in connection with the settlement agreement, we were court ordered to complete a fully renovated facility for moderate observation housing. And as that, that project was coming to completion in early 2024, it became clear that our, our mental health population had grown so much, even, even as we were pursuing that strategy, that, that we then began to hear demands for additional plans and solutions, which we have been trying to respond to. And so, you know, I think that, that providing safe and more clinically appropriate mental health housing options is part and parcel of our obligations. They have often been real barriers to compliance across the settlement agreement. Increasingly, we are coming into compliance with various provisions that, that where, where that mismatch held us back. And, and we're doing that through a variety of strategies, but it remains a barrier with regard to provision 79, which requires appropriate mental health treatment for everyone with mental health needs in the jail who needs M O H or H O H housing. And, and also our monitor talks about it more generally with regard to the imperative to. to articulate more plans for our changing population. And this, and I think it's the monitor's words, that we'll struggle to come into compliance in general without those plans. So that's how I see those as related. I think, you know, it is also fair to say that the monitor has recognized just how much progress the county has made across its strategies despite a very challenging backdrop that includes this change in composition. We still need to do that. We still need to do everything we can to make the very best, safest, most therapeutic use of every person we have, every facility we have, every strategy we have. And also, we're going to need to continue to articulate plans as our population changes to properly care for people in our custody.
So I guess, I mean, there's, there are many ways, paths that lead us to improving. And I think collectively, this report helps us look at some of those ways and then trying to build on that. But having the data between the panels here, I think is going to be even more helpful for us publicly. And you could have a whole day discussion just on that. Unfortunately, this isn't the, you know, time that we can go into everything. But I do want to applaud the work because I was wondering myself when we were going to hear from you, because it's been some time. But I'm, I'm hopeful that the information you get, we will get more expeditiously in a manner that's going to be concrete. So then we can move on action items to actually make these improvements. And I'm anxious at some point to hear again from our departments individually or whatever, also how they feel. So PD, ADP, all those other entities, as well as our jail health professionals there because I understand we have to improve that, the conditions in our jail, no doubt about it. And I know it's a challenge. And some folks come to us and they're very sick, unfortunately. And for me, in some ways, I say, why do we keep them in there if they're that sick? Can't we put them in, in a place where they can be watched or whatever, but, but given dignity and respect? And that, to me, is really important. So I'll end it with that, Madam Chair. I mean, it's, you stirred a lot in me. I think there's a lot here. And I hope that the public and our folks that have been on this issue, including the folks out in the, in the public that have been engaged on this issue, help to also understand what this path looks like for us and how they can help improve this as well. So thank you for the presentation and the panel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Supervisor Solis. Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentation, lots of great data. Appreciate all the comments made by my colleagues. I'm going to do my best to keep it short. Appreciate Supervisor Horvath kind of walking us through the motion history and trajectory. And I agree with you, sometimes I have found based on calls to my office and letters that the public, our agenda can be misleading, the concept of a motion, the concept of a report that sounds like, I think, oftentimes, an action to be taken. So I appreciate you identifying that. And agree with you Supervisor Solis about the moment in time when the orientation of this board shifted with you three members serving. I will also add that it was also the community-based justice reform movement here locally and statewide that aided and abetted that, that culture shift with you three on the board and folks in the community. And it had resounding impact. It impacted statewide policy shift around. From my perspective, the language I choose to use, rightsizing both the juvenile and criminal justice system. And so it really was you three and the community-based movement who continued to look and monitor and hold us accountable to motions we've made and actions we've taken. So I think it's important. And I think based on all of that, based on the compensation of the board today, there's agreement that MCJ must close. I think the question before us is how we close it in a way that aligns our Care First, Jail's Last vision with our legal and compliance obligations and reflects our commitment to ensuring that people are provided the necessary care, rehabilitation and support they need. I think for me, that kind of summarizes where we are and what has to happen. And so the conversation and the work toward jail closure, I think, is a test of the entire county's commitment. And I emphasize the entire county and quite frankly, a test, again, ongoing of this board's will. Building capacity to meet the current housing needs and safe environments with critical services for our existing moderate observation housing population is necessary. And there are additional needs for investment for depopulation and for diversion. You know, with that, I think I'll pivot to some of the charts we saw today. And I was reminded, I looked over my shoulder and saw DA Hockman was here, but when he was here last Tuesday, he talked about his three-legged stool that focused on justice, that law enforcement investigates and arrests, the DA prosecutes. And again, he said that the board sets priorities and we fund it. What he didn't call out in board priorities are things like prevention, which I acknowledged last week, depopulation, diversion. I hear that he added a fourth leg to his stool today with deterrence. And I think that's important. But when I look at this, the jail population projection, the chart you gave and the 1,400, 500, if, and that's the pivotal word in that sentence, all current conditions remain the same, based on my experience, just five years on the board, they will not. You know, Prop 36. Frankly, the orientation of this DA, as, as we heard today. You say in this chart, expanding ODR by 1,000 beds. I have worked, we have worked to try to get permanent funding. The DA continues to challenge who he feels should go to ODR versus, I think, ODR's perspective and practices that they've enlisted. And while the sheriff continues to tell us that crime is down, even serious crime across most charges across the entire county, our numbers continue to go up in terms of who's in jail. The sheriff is promoting the wellness center. How we define what that will be continues to be seen. I'm hoping that DMH and other county departments will weigh in and opine to figure out what we build for whom and where. You know, the board made a decision to not build a big, single mental health facility. The DA says it's not, from his perspective, cost-effective for us to build multiple smaller facilities. The sheriff is calling it a wellness facility. But if DMH isn't at, isn't co-leading that effort, will it really be wellness as opposed to another detention facility? So I just, those are just off the top of my head to suggest that there are so many moving parts that I don't know that this 14,500 is real. Who knows what the next election cycle will bring in terms of additional, more punitive policies? And so how do we plan with so many unknowns and so many moving parts? I really appreciate the acknowledgement of the impact of the budget cuts. I do. And join with my colleagues who understand that the budget is our lane and that if this is a priority for us, we have to make sure it's a priority in the budget. So I appreciate that chart. I appreciate the barriers and the next steps. I know that there continues to be a call for win, 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 win. And I understand how challenging that is. I am going to ask that we continue to see delineated next steps so we can track progress so we don't continue to find ourselves in a position where we're looking in the rearview mirror about who took what vote when and who did what research when, as opposed to having a plan that we can check off and know when we've turned a corner or we've reached a landing. With that, I just want to ask CSIT, you know, and I appreciate the landscape and the conditions. From your perspective, what is your clear, actionable vision for jail closure? Can you give me that in three sentences? Is that a fair question?
Probably not, but that's all right. There's a lot of unfair questions. I'm sure you get a lot yourself.
Because I think that's important-
Yeah.
-for us to hear, for the public to hear, for the other departments to hear. What is your clear, actionable vision for jail closure?
I think it goes back to what I said about the problem-solving piece and the data piece. The vision is that we need to, so I'll go to your point about the 14-5. I'll answer in a roundabout way. So the 14-5 and any projections, they need to be done annually for the very reasons that you articulated. Things change. Criminal justice, public safety is dynamic, is always changing. So we need to think about that. The box I didn't really speak to was a smaller one that talks about, the previous projection was actually accurate if you take out the current Prop 36 population. And the reason I raise that to your question is, this means, my vision is that we have to be data-driven, accurate and transparent. The reason that that number is close, well, would be where it should be without Prop 36 is because there was a lot of effort into thinking about the reforms, some that Maggie talked about with the CDCR transfers, the reforms, and I'm sure in conjunction with the sheriff's department, the reforms that, that were implemented to ensure that whatever the high number was, they got to where, you know, the reforms would actually help them land where they needed to land. So in our example here, to, we haven't done it yet, but where we talk about the reforms that need to happen for jail closure, as we look at those, including the probation piece, thinking about the mental health biz as it relates to ODR or anything that DMH may do, we have to be really diligent in understanding what those reforms are and what the impacts will be so that we can get as accurate a pitch as we can that if we do these things, it won't be 14,500, it will be X. That is really important to jail reform, jail closure, right? Because as I said in the beginning of my statement, I could just pick a number or a date without really being diligent in terms of understanding why we're doing that. But it won't be accurate, we won't meet it, and we'll just be running projections every year and we won't make it. But then we'll just be looking like, well, why, right? Like, right now, I go back to, right now, we know that the population of MOH, as Maggie pointed out, is up, but we don't know why. So how do we develop solutions to it for whatever issues come up, right? Whatever else may come from the federal level or the state level. So that's the main closed, main vision is that we have to be diligent and constantly looking and developing and innovating to address this problem. And that's, like I said, that's regardless of whether we were trying to close MCJ or not, that's the way we have to be if we truly care first, jail's last oriented.
Do I get to add three sentences to that?
I said more than three, so you can do more.
There you, several sentences. I'd agree with Will. And I, I think our vision is also contemplated in the presentation. So that second slide where we talk about the conditions that we see as needing to be met to close Men's Central Jail, those play two roles. So those are the conditions we, we identified as needing to be met again for jail closure, but also conditions that need to exist regardless. So as many opportunities to deflect people and divert people safely so that they avoid coming into the jail, which a lot of our discussion has gone to, and, you know, decreasing unnecessary court appearances, which, to the DA's point as well, is good for litigants and victims and survivors of crime. It's good for everybody, right? It's, it's in the interest of everyone who's participating in our legal process. And then the third is making sure the community capacity is what it needs to be so that people are served there instead of jail because of unmet needs. I'll just say briefly, maybe this is where I get the extra sentences. Prior to coming to the county, this is the work that I was doing all around the country. And the same conditions that need to be true for LA are the same that need to be true anywhere. And I, you know, also worked in Nigeria, where I'm from, on the criminal justice system policy. And we say this not as an academic exercise or a statement, but something that we know to be true, that jurisdictions everywhere, it is important for us to have a coordinated effort to make sure that our jail is as small as it needs to be, our jail population is as small as it needs to be, and our community resources are as robust as they need to be so that people are getting, we're meeting them where they are so that we avoid them landing where they, no one wants them to be.
I appreciate that last sentence because I was struck by DA Hockman's kind of analogy in looking at a percentage of our jail population as it relates to the overall county population and if there should be an expectation of 98% or 0%. And I never thought of it in that context. I thought of it more along the lines of what you shared. I didn't think about it in terms of a comparison to total population, but to think about it in the context of the conditions in which people are living. Is incarceration the most appropriate placement based on their needs and the crime committed? Are they there too long because we don't have any place else for them to be? And a hard acknowledgement of the over-representation of particular populations in jail versus the workplace, the college campus, anyplace else. So that's the way I view it. And so I appreciate you saying that. Would you say, if I'm looking for measurable benchmarks or milestones that will indicate progress toward closure, would you say I should start with this sheet you just referenced, which is your where we are?
I mean, you can start there, definitely.
Okay.
When I think I'm-
Do you intend to build this out? If I want to-
Oh, yes, definitely.
From, from this presentation to the next, be able to look to benchmarks and milestones that we were meeting that shows everyone that we are making progress as opposed to just talking about it ad nauseam and having more motions and more motions, but benchmarks towards the goal?
I would look at that, slide two as a north star and maybe slide three is more of the milestones that we start with.
Okay.
So our next, our immediate steps, so between now and the next time we report to your board, we will be making more progress on what's on slide three. So identifying the specific actions, you've seen some of them that we've already had underway or we've already identified, but more of the actions to depopulate, which, as we've talked about, is aligned with the county's overall goal. Someone spoke to this earlier, who's doing what and when and how much will it cost? That's what we plan to, that is the next immediate milestone that we're working towards to provide to your board. Would you add, would you?
Yeah, and I would just say, I know people talk about measurable things. I would think of objectives as being measurable, right? As we identify the strategies. If they're smart objectives, I agree. But yeah, the milestones of where we should be, because I understand, once again, I talked about this all the time, right? The urgency of this situation, we're trying to move with urgency, but we also want to move smartly, to your point.
So I hope that the objectives that we outline, that are identified for us and the public are indeed smart, that they're strategic, memorable, I mean, measurable, help me with the ART, you know, smart is an acronym. So I hope that they are smart.
That's right.
Because I think that's what we and the public need to feel and see and witness progress, will make it tangible for us as a board, given our role to fund the work. If it's a smart objective, then, then we can prioritize how the funding should make it real. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, did you want to say anything? I know you've been sitting there listening patiently. I know Sheriff Valuna is here, and so I'm going to give you the floor. You wanted to wait to hear from us before you spoke, so welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Just, just in really summary here, I just want everyone to know, I mean, I've been listening intently and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work of my partner sitting to the left because there's a lot of work that's been done. It's impressive work. And I love the fact that we're looking at data. And I, just for clarification, I expect every person in my care, which is in custody, to have constitutional care. Fundamentally, that is our job, and I always stress that, it is the county family's job to make sure that we do that. I also want everyone to know that I fully support, as the sheriff of this county, that we divert and/or keep the right people out of custody. And I stress, it's the right people out of custody because community safety is all of our jobs. And as we're listening to this conversation, the math isn't working out. I want to close down Men's Central Jail, but I have 4,000 justice-impacted individuals there. And as the math we're talking about increases over the next several years for a variety of reasons, and I do want to stress, and I'm going to say this again publicly, when I arrived here in this seat- we worked as a team to depopulate our county jail by about 14%. We had the population down to 12,500. Proposition 36 passed. Got to remind everybody by about 70% of our electorate. And since then, our population has grown about 8.2%. And it continues to grow. My inmate, my... The inmates, the clients that I have in my care that are mentally ill is close to 50%. And I need you to know, as I talk to other sheriffs around the county, or I'm sorry, around the country, their number is about 60%. So if that's any indication, it's going to grow. So we do need space for our mental health population. And right now, as I sit here in front of you, I can tell you, we don't have it right now. And I don't have a choice. So what I'm asking all of you to consider, all of us, because this is a team effort, is I need your help. I really... We need to work together to figure out a way to take care of the population that is remanded into our custody, not by my choice, by not... by anybody's choice sitting in this room. We need... It is our obligation to care for them. And right now, we're not doing that to the best of our ability. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, and I'm just going to repeat this and I'll end with this comment, is that we do need to look at the future that incorporates both concepts, where people can safely be put into the community for the appropriate care, whether it's mental health or addiction, but then the folks that need to be remanded into our custody that we have. What I... I've been calling it a Care First Campus. I've modified that to a correctional care center. And just to repeat what I think it is or what it should be, it's a correctional care facility that provides state-of-the-art and appropriate therapeutic programming space. We do not have that today. It is our obligation that when somebody comes into our custody, again, remanded by a judge, that when they get out, that they're better than when they came in, whether it's mental health, addiction, or just somebody who needs an education and a job. Let's fix... Help fix them so they don't come back to us. I don't want to see them back. I hope someday I don't see anybody coming back. But I'm tired of seeing people come back. I'm tired of being a pipeline to homeless camps. I don't want to see it anymore. And we have that obligation to do this together. I want recreational areas and treatment facilities for the medically fragile. A lot of the people who unfortunately pass away in our custody, not all of them, have never seek medical care ever in their lives. I think correctional health can better address that than I can. That's not my expertise. And those with substance abuse disorders and individuals suffering from serious mental illness remanded into our custody. We need to have a better system. We don't have that. We never have had that. Let's be different. Let's be leaders in this and do it differently. And it's going to take everyone in this room that's sitting here right now to get it done. That's the summary of my conversation there. I thank each and every one of you.
All right. Just out of curiosity, are you working... Is your team working, Sheriff, with Will? I mean, in terms of what your vision is?
We are, but we need to do a better job.
Yeah, you do.
And another... I'm just going to throw this out. Remember that a lot of the department heads sitting in this room are very good at taking all of your directions. And I say all of you, the majority of you. And the task has been close down Men's Central Jail without a replacement. And that's what they heard, and they're great people, and that's what they're trying to do. That is in conflict.
They're not providing you with any information to help you build...
No, 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 I'm not...
What... I don't know what you're saying there.
We are great partners, but their mission has been assigned very differently than what mine is. I have this vision. I'm hoping to get everybody on board. But remember, their vision... Their mission has been close down Men's Central Jail with no replacement.
Okay. But if you work with Will and his team...
Yes. We're all working together.
Okay.
Anybody here can call me, text me, come and see me. There is no issues with collaboration or partnerships here.
So for example, if your team needed information on this... What did you call it? A correctional care center?
Correctional care center.
Okay. So if your team needed to know certain parameters around mental health, if they call mental health, will mental health provide you that information?
We're working on that.
Okay. Got it. All right. Executive Officer, would you please call those members of the public who wish to testify?
Will the following individuals please come forward and staff will assist you. Mark Gale, Konstantin Anthony, Trout Winters, Anthony Arenas, Devia Kumar, Claire Ramers, Rejnal, Loretta Lorraine, MJ Weitz, Berkeley Donovan, Allison Robinfield, Marcella Rosen, Vanessa Perez, Hilda Eek, Dana Kelly, Chichi Navarro, Terrence Keel, Anthony Robles, and James Nelson. As a final reminder for remote participants, to be placed in the speaking queue to address items 12 and 27. If you have not already done so, use the raise hand feature on your device or press star three on your telephone now. Caller with phone number 310-377, please state your name and begin.
Yes. Pete Derringer, Mayor Pro Tem of Rolling Hills and past President of the League of California Cities, LA County Division, which represents 86 county cities. And I'm speaking on behalf of the President who sent a letter yesterday which lists our city's recommendations that include the new construction of a modern care-centric replacement for MCJ with consolidated resources for mental health and substance abuse capacity. As a DA who worked in the alternative sentencing courts, I know that we have diverted as many inmates as was safely possible, but it is unsafe to just reduce the inmate population without providing capacity to retain all dangerous inmates. Our residents should not be forced to defend themselves against these inmates with limited police resources.
Thank you. Marcel Rodarte, your line is open. Please begin.
I am the executive director of California Contract Cities Association. Speaking on behalf of our 80 member cities, our cities share your commitment to humane treatment and meaningful reform for individuals in custody, particularly those struggling with mental illness. We strongly support Sheriff Luna's vision for the care campus. And it represents a forward-thinking, treatment-centered approach that integrates care, rehabilitation, and public safety. However, the reality today is no such secure mental health facility exists. Until it does, closing Men's Central Jail would place both inmates and the broader public at risk. Our cities rely on the county's ability to safely house and treat individuals who present serious behavioral and mental health challenges without a secure facility in place. Law enforcement and emergency responders will have nowhere appropriate to take those in crisis. Also want to thank Supervisor Horvath for clarifying today's agenda item. Earlier today, there was a bunch of hubbub about this. We urge the board to prioritize the construction of the care campus before closing MCJ to ensure a safe transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, your line is open. Please begin.
Yeah, hi. I represent my neighborhood and our neighborhood watch group. I am very opposed to closing the Men's Central Jail without an alternative. I'm hearing a lot about the prisoners and the decrease, but what about the people? What happens if your plans don't come to fruition and the jail closes? Do they just get released into the community? What does that do to our safety and the safety of the people? I'm not hearing enough about that. I think there needs to be a better plan in place because plans don't always, you know, do well. I have a relationship with Supervisor Horvath's office as well as DA Hockman's office. I'm trying to learn, and I went through the report yesterday, but I'm not hearing what's going to be done for us, the people, if something goes wrong or where are all these inmates going to go if there isn't someplace to put them? So that is my biggest issue. And hopefully, you'll consider that before you take this to an official vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Roy Humphries, your line is open. Please begin.
Thank you. Great group research, but what is the net effect on the criminal activity and impact on the quality of life in the free space outside? Washington DC with President Trump is the poster child. The activity of the supervisors over decades has been criminal on its face. Public safety and quality of life is priority one in and out of confinement. As to criminal justice system, the DA and courts have been criminal. To correct the system will take tens of billions of dollars and five years. The operation of the correctional function must be made an independent entity. The state wants to take rights away from the people. Proposition 50, they can change California Penal Code 4015. And DA Hockman is a true breath of fresh air. As to drugs, contact the Chinese for that particular issue. Thank God for Donald J. Trump.
Thank you. Claudia Harez, your line is open. Please begin. We will go to the next speaker. Caller with phone number 818-645. Your line is open. Please begin.
Thanks. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And when I was a little... Little Leaguer, this was the hot issue. We've got to close Men's Central Jail. And Steve Lopez was banging his fist on the desk, and I was freaking out and holding hands with Unisys Hernandez. Well, here we are, 25 years later. And, you know, Peter Eliasberg is cutting the ribbon on something. I don't know. This has not gone great, to be honest. And I appreciate Luna's open door policy. I disagree that Hockman is such a sweetheart, but he's a talker. That man can talk. Now, in terms of what to do, I think we have to go back to James Austin. You need to treat people in the community in smaller facilities. I know that that doesn't sound efficient, but think about a giant, deflavorizing mental health facility. That is not... I know it's nice to picture it beautiful. It's not beautiful. It's not beautiful. It needs to be smaller and close to the community so people can connect to their families immediately.
Thank you.
After...
Caller with phone number 323-652. Your line is open. Please begin.
Good afternoon. This is Byron. Thank you Supervisor Horvath for uplifting the need, the sense of urgency that the community is expressing and make sure we're not duplicating any work. And Supervisor Mitchell for uplifting, make sure we are prioritizing care for our communities. I'm wondering if Marcel Rodarte and the cities he represents are special interest groups will be the ones hosting this center? No one is calling for this other than people that just want to help host. And if you... Hockman really wants funding, he should go ask the voters for it or Newsom. And TC wants to leave his own little version of MAGA elite world. He can go ask Trump to open the government and fund him. We want to make sure that the C-SIT, the CEO C-SIT now, the CEO C-SIT, is a prioritizing transgender, gender expansive, and intersex population. And we're depopulating and diverging K6G. And we look forward to working with them and the rest of this board to leverage not just NCC, AB109, and Master J funds that we continue to be taking away from us.
Thank you. Leila Murthy, your line is open. Please begin.
There's a lot to address. Bundling these issues together and then asking us to speak on a replacement is honestly a little disrespectful, but I'll do my best in the short time that I have. Using Care First, Jails Last funds for jail construction is a direct betrayal to community. Whether you call it a renovation for pitches or you call it this correctional health campus, if the LASD is running a quote-unquote "treatment facility", our loved ones are going to die. We're at record-high deaths this year. 38 individuals, more than half without a conviction, dying in LA jails, dying in Men's Central Jail. And we're supposed to believe that the same department is going to prioritize their care if we just give them more money? They have $4 billion. They want $10 million more for the idea to... for discussion of renovation? It's so disrespectful. And it's a campaign to distract us from the real thing that's happening, which is that we're being killed en masse inside of jails without convictions.
Thank you. Anthony Arenas, your line is open. Please begin. Please begin.
I'm with Dignity and Power Now and the Justice LA Coalition, speaking alongside the over 170 people who wrote to the board and to C-CIT with a clear message, no more delays, close men's central jail. Thank you, C-CIT, for moving forward with the people who have long demanded men's central jail be closed with no replacement. The time to have this conversation has never been more urgent. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell for asking for a timeline with benchmarks. It speaks to what community has been demanding for, for years. And I appreciate you Supervisor Horvath for being critical of how power tax dollars are being spent. If the county can find the means of paying upwards of $54 million to renovate pitches, I want you to find $55 million for Care First jails now. You cannot provide mental health services to people who are in custody of murderous violence.
Thank you. Caller with phone number 310-733. Your line is open. Please state your name and begin. Caller with phone number 310-733. Your line is open.
Hi, my name is Salam Alim. Um, you are talking about how the population is increasing the mental health in jail. Well, it's time to address the issue of conservatorship. So conserving the patients, partitioning the patients will help in preventing advancing the illness. But you're not doing that. LPS conservatorship is not being initiated. We are not allowed to do that. How can we take care of our loved ones? So of course, mental health, if it is not addressed properly, this is what happens. And then when they are in jail, um, because of their illness, the lawyers are not really pushing to go to mental court. So I really think LPS conservatorship, you really need to look into it. I have sent you the letter, all supervisors. And Sharif Luna, you're really part of, you need to be part of it.
Thank you. Nicolette, your line is open. Please begin.
I'm Ms. Nicolette. I'm with District 5 and I represent Dignity and Power Now as well. The county already has evidence that diversion works. The Office of Diversion and Reentry has demonstrated that many individuals charged with serious felonies can and should be released to ODR beds. Yet the tone from these presentations today, it appears that those responsible for moving along jail closure do not see the possibility of diversion for most of the jail population. So I'm concerned that the jail closure implementation team does not even believe its own mandate. Once again, the county is having departments report back on their plans to help close men's central jail. In the last five years, the board has received upwards of 11 different reports with pathways to close M CJ. Yet the board believes more report backs will help solve the crisis. So thank you again for asking for timelines with benchmarks that is so needed because we need action. No more reports. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to our in-person speakers. Please begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Constantine Anthony. I am an elected council member from the city of Burbank. Today, I'm not talking to you as elected official, though. I'm talking to you as a formerly incarcerated county resident. I know that the sheriff would love to have fewer individuals, inmates, and the district attorney would love to have more options for diversion. But all of those things happen, the treatment and everything, after you've been arrested. So I know there's not a vote today. And yes, we absolutely need to do everything we can to reduce our jail population so we can eventually close the facility down. But I urge this board in every future vote to expand mental health and drug rehab treatment centers moving forward for the general public outside of jails. Yes, we need more facilities, smaller facilities spread out throughout the county, not just for diversion programs of people who are incarcerated, but for people who just need the treatment before they fall into the criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, I want to do item 12 and 27. Can I have two minutes? Please. Uh, okay. Let me tell you, uh, it's, you know, our jails are corrupt as anyway. I believe in law and order, but I don't believe in corruption. That DNA, DA, he's the prosecutor. He, you know what? He don't, y'all don't go to those mothers that lost those kids and how to bury their kids. Thanksgiving is coming up. Their chair is empty for those mothers. Those young men, black young men, Spanish young men, transgenders have died in the jail, in the jail for a long time. I have seen it. I have experienced it. I've been there making funds for those ladies, for their sons, to bury their sons. And who, that DA wasn't there paying, giving any kind of money for those children and those mothers. Those mothers are, are one justice. They want answers. They don't have no answer. What he just did today, walked out, that's what he did to those mothers. Those mothers are waiting for those answers for those children. Where are their children? What happened?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And it was hard to say no, but only two minutes, but thank you.
Madam Chair and Honorable Supervisors, my name is Mark Gale. I'm the Criminal Justice Chair for NAMI Greater Los Angeles County, speaking on item 12 only. We have grave concerns that the current planning for the closure of men's central jail, utilizing only existing resources, will fall markedly short and fail to move us forward. We believe, like every stakeholder here today, that community-based diversion options, all of them, should be funded and expanded to the full extent possible. However, we fail to see after all these years how diversion alone will accomplish this goal. If every improvement discussed today were to be implemented, we fail to see how that would reduce the population sufficiently to close men's central jail. And it's clear that the only pathway to closing the jail is to move the jail population with serious mental illness out of Twin Towers. And that would free up jail capacity to transfer inmates from men's central to the towers. But where do the mentally ill go? We support Sheriff.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Trowdy Winters and I'm the Executive Director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Greater LA County. NAMI GILAC is proud to represent the voices of tens of thousands of individuals who live with a mental health condition and their families and those who support them. Many of our members have been justice-involved or are family members of those who have been through the justice system. I'm here to represent these community members who know firsthand how broken our country's justice system is for those experiencing mental health challenges. NAMI GILAC supports the provision of treatment regardless of setting. We support diversion when possible and community-based treatment, and we also support treatment in the custodial setting. NAMI GILAC supports the closure of men's central jail and urges the board to consider any option which enhances treatment for those who need it, whether custodial or in the community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My son is Joseph Perez. My name is Vanessa. My son has a skin condition of piteritis lynchroyce chronica. Uh, when he was incarcerated in 2020, your deputies, your county medical diagnosed him with that. He's been having a really tough time with his condition. He put in a grievance and it took about four weeks for someone to go see him. And when the nurses did see him, he couldn't remember his medication. The nurse told him to get the F out because she didn't know the medication as either. You know, my son was beaten in 2020 by your sheriff's department. He, his memory isn't like ours. He couldn't remember his medication and he had to put in another grievance and wait four more weeks to see another doctor. This is a kind of abuse that needs to stop. And this is why M CJ needs to be closed. Not only are mentally ill getting beat by the deputies, but they're being verbally abused inside by the medical. Once again, I'm, my name is Vanessa and my son is Joseph Perez.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is MJ Vivas. I'm an S2 resident and a senior program associate with the Vera Institute. In June 2021, this board created the Jail Closure Implementation Team, now C-CIT, to close men's central jail without a replacement. Four years later, the jail remains open and Angelenos continue to die in custody. While C-CIT's report reflects meaningful progress and we commend that work, we know that every second that the jail remains open, that means that more people are going to die. So to that end, we, as at C-CIT, quickly delivers a clear, time-bound closure plan. Instead of spending tens of millions of dollars solely on jail renovations during a budgetary crisis, this board must prioritize services that will safely lower the jail population and help us close M CJ. That means fully funding the proven community-based programs like mental health and drug treatment, ODR, RDP, full-service partnerships. The things that research shows can be more effective, more humane, and more cost-efficient than incarceration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ally Rubenfeld. I'm a legal fellow with the Loyola Anti-Racism Center and with Check the Sheriff. Funding the Office of Diversion and Reentry is Care First. Funding mental health programs is Care First. Funding permanent supportive housing is Care First. Funding the public defender is Care First. Giving LASD, the department our own Attorney General has stated, is either incapable or unwilling of addressing the pervasive issues within our jails is not Care First. Giving them $10 million more dollars on top of their $4 billion budget will not see the end of these abuses. Meanwhile, the county is considering consolidating our law enforcement oversight system and disbanding the Civil Brand Commission, the very body whose reporting has been integral to shining light on the inhumane and dangerous conditions inside of our jails, particularly for individuals experiencing mental health issues. I urge this board to recommit to Care First. That means funding should go towards keeping our most vulnerable community members out of jail, not investing in better facilities that continue to criminalize individuals experiencing mental health illnesses. Care First funds must be used to create.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Marcella Rosen. I'm with the Justice LA Coalition. Twin Towers was built almost 30 years ago as a more humane facility and an alternative for the growing mental health population to M CJ. The exact same thing that Hockman and Luna are saying pitches could be. Decades later, they're both still open and they're more deadly than ever. Any facility run by law enforcement will be a site of violence, brutality, and human rights violations. The problem isn't overcrowding. We have one of the highest death tolls this year with one of the lowest populations we've had in the last 10. The problem is LASD. And giving them more money, more beds to lock people up with mental health challenges will bring, will not bring LA County into DOJ compliance. The LASD budget is bigger than ever, growing by millions, while every other department's budget gets slashed this year. And giving them $10 million more from the CFCI funding to increase incarceration is a violation of voter rights.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is James Nelson. I'm with Dignity and Power Now. And I won't be redundant because you hearing it from my colleagues. But what I would like to point out is, the jail should have been closed. Everybody agreed to do that right. But we heard from some people today that's not, have no interest in transparency and accountability. We heard from Sheriff Luna, right? When Sheriff Luna came into office, he was supposed to eradicate the gangs. But now he the leader of the gangs, right? We heard from the DA office, right? I was wrongfully convicted in 86. I did 29 years. I've been home 11 years just the other day, right? I have a wrongful conviction in the DA office. But now I'm only told because I'm not in custody, my case don't have a priority. And I told him it didn't have a priority for 29 years when I was in there. So these are not people that's trying to get to the bottom, or the root causes of our issues here. So how can you trust them, right? The county jail, Twin Towers was.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Berkeley Donovan. I'm with ACLU SoCal and the Justice LA Coalition. We demand the closure of M CJ without a replacement jail or a carceral mental health facility and for this board to expedite the creation of mental health beds and services in the community. This board knows diversion works and we just learned that the county has $85 million to spend on these efforts. So why are we not using these monies to fund diversion efforts that you yourselves are emphasizing the need for? We don't need to spend up to $60 million on modifications to PDC South because it's ultimately just moving MOH folks from one place to another and does not equate diversion. The courts need diversion options and without beds available, this option is not even on the table. And disturbingly, DA Hockman clearly doesn't see those in our jails as real people worthy of rehabilitation with the way that he painted them earlier. So I don't trust that the DA's office to work effectively towards diversion efforts without true community care options, without LASD involvement available. We will continue to hold this board accountable and expect to see supportive of a strong implementation plan with a timeline to close men's central jail without any kind of replacement.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please come forward and staff will assist you? Nicholas Shapiro, Zoe Ascarnees, Jane Afonso, Asael Robledo, Grace Sosa, Zaya Hamond, Helen Jones, Melissa Camacho, William Freyplunt, Colleen McLean, Leila Etachfini, Sornell Antabian, Nehmat Mon, Stephanie Guayanli, Brian Caneta, Brian J., Dr. Ezra Le Mohamed, Dr. Critical Trupe, and Daniel Garcia. We will now go to remote speakers. James Takamatsu, your line is open. Please begin.
James Takamatsu, I'm with Dignity and Power Now and the Justice LA Coalition. First on item 27, it should be a nonstarter, touching any of the CFCI funding. Put more money back into the jails. It should be a nonstarter for this board. And then getting on to Hockman and Sheriff Luna and their call for their care campus BS. The Twin Towers, like I was mentioning, that was pushed as the same thing. And we know what it turned out to be, a jail. A jail is a jail. Anything run by the law enforcement become a deadly, horrible place. And we already have seen it fail. I don't know why we would take any feedback from somebody who can already oversee the facilities he had, he wants to build a new one, be so bad at it that our Attorney General is suing the county. Um, and then on to the C-CIT report. While it was okay, I do want to comment real quickly on the comments made at first, like not being able to commit to a timeline at your next meeting or even committing to without building a replacement should be unacceptable by this board to this diversion team.
Thank you. Maya Hendricks, your line is open. Please begin.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Maya Hendricks. I am a resident of SD3 and a member of the Reimagine LA Coalition. Asking for $10 million in Care First, Jails Last funding for a jail is ironic and disgusting. Jail spending is already out of control and this will make it worse. The pitches jail plan is expansion, no matter how you frame it. And as stated during this conversation, $10 million is just the beginning of this renovation that is already quoted at 50 to 54 million additional dollars, while the county just absorbed over $4 billion in abuse settlements. We have to stop pretending that the failure to build out community-based care is a funding issue. The funding is there, it's just in the wrong places. The sheriff said we need to be different by having a correctional care center, but we need to be different by actually investing into Care First and closing down these jails. Care First means reducing capacity to incarcerate and increasing capacity to treat.
Thank you. Sahara White, your line is open. Please begin. Sahara White, your line is open.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sahara and I'm with Dignity and Power Now. I'm disappointed that there's still no concrete timeline or tangible benchmarks for closing down these deadly facilities. It's unconscionable to claim that Care First agenda while stealing $10 million from community care funds to construct another jail. That's not care, that's disrespect. You continue to ignore the cries of community while collecting six-figure salaries to do what you want to do instead of doing what the people need and ask for. Now Sheriff Luna over here talking about a so-called correctional care campus, saying he's been working with C-CIT, but their alignment isn't there. He just admitted that C-CIT was tasked with closing the jail while his vision is to create a new one. And for Supervisor Barger to sit there and ask him what he needs to get that going, that's blatant disrespect. That's not what we asked for. We don't want another jail or a care campus or a mega facility. You need to take that money, that $10 million, and use it for those thousand ODR beds. Stop wasting more data. BOSS, you are being enablers. Stop killing our families.
Thank you. Caller with phone number 909-239. Your line is open. Please state your name and begin.
Hello, I'm for, do not close the jails until the appropriate facilities are available and the taxpayers demand it. I work with businesses, HOAs, and residents. And we do not want to be victims of what's already out on the streets. Every city in the county right now has a problem with substance abuse and crime. Look at the cities, they're on the buses, they're on the trains. They are now moving out of Skid Row and onto many little city streets that people as residents have to handle now. Also, the numbers I do not believe are correct. They, there are many that are not caught as of now that do have problems. They trust press, they prowl, they do drugs, they assault, they steal, and they burglarize. They get out on sight and release and they're in our cities. The numbers I don't feel are correct, they're not tangible because they don't know until they are caught. There's too many criminals as of now since 2020 out there. So the jails, please do not close the jails.
Thank you.
That's how we have the correct.
Helen Igenberg, your line is open. Please begin.
Resident of SD3. In regards to 12, it's been four years. Close men's central jail without any kind of replacement facility. And 12, or 27, I'll agree with another caller, it's a nonstarter. What will it take for you all, Board of Supervisors, to implement county care? Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen, your line is open. Please begin.
Can you, can you hold on one second? Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I wanted to ask CEO or Sheriff's Department, I think the public may have confused CFCI funding that's set aside via Measure J and all of that with this account that's paying for the pitches renovation. And that comes out of the $85 million that has, I think, the title that says Care First. But can you clarify that for us, for the public?
Yes Supervisor, the, the funding that is, would be dedicated for item 27 is, is not CFCI funding. That is a special care budget that we have related to capital projects and other programs, but it is not CFCI funding.
So people are confusing it and thinking that we're taking it from that CFCI pot of money. So I just want that to be known for the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think it's very misleading. Okay, thank you.
Carmen, your line is open. Please begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen Pang and I'm calling to urge the board to take immediate action to close men's central jail without building any replacement facility, to expedite the creation of mental health beds and services, and to hold the Sheriff's Department accountable for the jail crisis. It is critical for the county departments to hold themselves accountable to a concrete timeline for closure and to commit to measurable benchmarks for funding, resource allocation, reductions in arrests, and other key factors that will make closure possible. In the past year, the board's received over 10 reports outlining how to close men's central jail. And it's time for action. There's evidence that diversion works and ODR has proven that people, even those with serious charges, can be housed safely and supported in the community. We don't need more reports. We need coordinated action and accountability and a sense of urgency within the departments to close men's central jail.
Thank you. Ingrid Martinez, your line is open. Please begin. Ingrid, your line is open.
I'm a resident of District 3. Today, we heard from C-CIT about what it would take to close M CJ. And we already know that we need more money for mental health clinicians. We know we need more money for public defenders. We, we need more funding towards diversion programs. And we're asking the county to fund the things that actually keep, keep our community safe. If, if community safety is a priority for the board, invest in community-based services, not more jails, not, no more billion-dollar budgets towards the Sheriff's Department. And I believe that the community believes in, with every dollar that goes towards prisons and policing, the board, the board prioritizes human aging over care.
Thank you. Claudia Jerez, your line is open. Please begin. Claudia, your line is open. Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board. Remote participation for items 12 and 27 is now concluded. We will go to our in-person speakers. Please begin.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, all. I want to respond directly to the concern. We keep hearing that closing men's central jail is impossible without building a replacement and that setting a clear timeline is unrealistic. With respect, those arguments doesn't hold up. We must not, this will not keep us from acting while people are dying. You, we don't need a replacement jail in order to close M CJ. What we need is a replacement system of care, diversion beds, mental health treatment, reentry support. And that already exists in the county's own planning. We already know how to do this. The ODR tool already shows people charged with offenses can safely be diverted into community program. So the narrative that we must build a brand-new jail first is backward. We must build care system in parallel and must act now. Setting a timeline isn't saying everything will be perfect from day one. A timeline is saying we would stop tolerating death and neglect as the status quo. Of the 232 people who have died in custody since you all voted to close the men's central jail, every one of those dead is administrative delay cost.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Janet Asante. I'm with the Justice LA Coalition and Dignity and Power Now. A $10 million pledge now is a $60 million pledge later. And that is not a Care First approach. We know that treatment for folks in the P2 population, as stated during the conversation today, is inherently a population that can be treated outpatient to begin with. And along with this proposal, there's been no pledge from LASD to actually divert people who are in M CJ who are P2. This is an expansion. If they're not shuttering down the entire P2 population section of the jail, this is an inherent expansion of the jail system. And every single day that these facilities stay open is another day that someone can die. We are currently experiencing families who come to us saying, my loved one is inside. I'm scared for them. I don't know what's next for them. Can they get ODR? Everyone, including the outrageous person Nathan Hockman, agree that ODR is a program that needs to be funded. Why isn't C-CIT asking for even a sliver of this $85 million? Why isn't CSIT asking for even a sliver of this $85 million separate funding? I don't care that it's not CFCI, it needs to go towards care first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Anthony Robles. I'm a resident of District 1, and basically here to say that we all know whether crime rates go up or down, one thing that remains constant is the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department's budget continues to rise every year. Meanwhile, vital departments like ODR, J-COD, DYD, the Public Defender's Office, and community-based services are consistently among the first to be cut. LA County Fire Department, this is unacceptable, and as a result, the criminal justice system becomes more punitive and larger. A quick recommendation that we can make is to increase the budget and staffing levels of the Public Defender's Office to prevent case delays and unfair plea deals. We can also, a few other recommendations that the community have been demanding for years is, one, increasing OR releases, two, increasing expediting compassionate releases, three, decreasing the number of people incarcerated through sight and release, and decreasing the 48-hour arraignment period to 24 hours, ensuring that people are served in a timely manner, and I guess that's...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Nguyen Lee. I'm a county resident. Men's Central Jail must shut down and community care must be prioritized, not just beds. Jail deaths are at a record high in LA County, even with one of the lowest jail populations in a decade, and over half of those who have died were legally innocent. Something is very wrong here. We have to pivot and make changes. This is a matter of life and death. A jail is a jail, no matter what language is used to disguise it. When the Sheriff's Department runs a locked facility, it will be deadly. People, human beings, are not disposable, not a case number to be filed away and forgotten. Every person behind those walls is someone's child, someone's baby, someone's mom, someone's dad, someone's entire world. Their safety and dignity is our responsibility. We are all a part of humanity. It's time we put people first and take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Grace. I'm a resident of District 2. I want to make our position very clear. We're asking for MCJ to be closed without a replacement. The board also voted to close MCJ without a replacement five years ago. Rebuilding Pitchess to house folks who would otherwise be in MCJ goes directly against that commitment. The Correctional Care Center goes directly against that commitment, and we're not going to stand for a closure or depopulation of MCJ that it ends in other folks being incarcerated in Pitchess or any other jail facility that's maintained by LASD. People do not get well in a cell, and we know this. The mental health population will continue to grow until people with mental health needs receive treatment. I also want to address that the CSIT team said that without significant reform and investment that we can't close the jail without a replacement. So ask for investment. Create the environment for reform. Engage the groups that need to be involved for this jail to close. Taxpayers are in support of using our tax dollars for alternatives to incarceration, and it's time for you to advocate for those funds to be used for actual alternatives to incarceration, mental health treatment, addiction counseling, housing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Helen Jones, and I'm the mother of John Horton. I am with Dignity and Power Now and check the sheriff, and I've been fighting for 16 years since the death of my son, John Horton, who was beat to death by 3,000 boy deputy sheriff gangs. And how Luna sat here today and talking about a Care First jail when he won't even convict the deputies in there that's killing our family members, they won't even acknowledge the deputy gangs even exist when we know that they exist. Just think if y'all took this money that y'all taking care of the folks and saying that y'all taking care of the folks in jail, just think if y'all invested that money into the communities and put more care stuff in our communities, put more systems into our community, put more places where folks can have love and understanding in our community, put treatments in our communities, put jobs in our communities, that would stop some of the stuff that is going on if y'all showed more care.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is William Freypont. I live in the 5th District. I'm a student in the Pretrial Justice Practicum at Loyola Law School, where I've learned about local pretrial policies. Reducing unnecessary pretrial incarceration can advance the planned closure of Men's Central Jail. The goal for Los Angeles County should be to promote rehabilitation rather than incarceration. To further reduce the total LA County jail population so that Men's Central Jail can finally be closed, the board should increase funding for important pretrial services, including the J-COD Rapid Diversion Program, the ODR Housing Court Program, and Project 180. These programs provide cost-effective services that are a viable alternative to jail, which reduces recidivism and keeps our communities safe. Please increase funding for these important pretrial services so that the county can meet its goal to close Men's Central Jail and invest in Care First. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Colleen McLean, and I live in District 1. During law school, I represented young people charged with crimes and worked at the LA County Public Defender's Office, where I saw firsthand how pretrial services like Project 180 make a real difference. I strongly support J-COD's pretrial and diversion programs and urge the board to continue exploring ways to expand text message reminders for justice-involved youth. These reminders are low-cost, proven to reduce missed court dates, and help keep young people connected to supportive services instead of cycling them through the system. Investing in programs like this helps break the cycle of incarceration and lowers the risk of future arrests as young people become adults. As the county pursues its goals to close Men's Central Jail and invest in Care First approaches, expanding access to text messages reminders is a critical step. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Leila Itashvini. I'm an SD1 resident and a law student at Loyola Law School studying LA's pretrial justice system. I'm here to urge the board to take concrete action to see to the closure of Men's Central Jail without a replacement facility. The data is clear: more jails only harm our communities while services help them thrive. That's why you voted to close MCJ in 2021. Today, I ask that you make good on your promise by taking three steps. Redirect CSIT to focus on tangible action to close MCJ. We don't need more reports, we need to depopulate our jails. Fund diversion programs by redirecting funds from law enforcement. Community-based organizations are struggling to provide lifesaving care while LASD spent $75 million of our money on lawsuits just last year. Three, enact deadlines with budgetary consequences. It's simply unacceptable that MCJ is still open and destroying community members' lives.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Melissa Camacho. I'm a resident of SD2 and Culver City. Today, LASD is housing 4,400 MOH people outside of MCJ in Pitchess North and Twin Towers and about 1,000 in MCJ. Those 1,000 MOH slots need to be reduced by diversion. There's no reason for DOJ compliance to be asking for Pitchess South renovation instead of ODR expansion, and certainly no reason for this county to give up Care First capital funds for this purpose. CSIT is telling you, and Director Hong just told you, they need more funds to add P2 diversion beds. Will you have the money for ODR expansion if you siphon money from Care First accounts? The proposed Pitchess South populations are P2s, those are lowest-security, lowest-medical needs, most divertible. At the very least, this vote board should vote no on 27 and direct CSIT to determine the fastest and most durable way to reduce reliance on MCJ for MOH, not just throw $10 million in Care First capital funds to preconstruction for a jail's first solution.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Sarnell Ontabian. I'm a resident of District 5, and I'm a Loyola Law School student and member of the Loyola Pretrial Justice Practicum. I'm here to urge the board to increase funding for pretrial services so we rely less on jail and more on care. In Los Angeles County, nearly 43% of people in jail have mental health needs and over 7,000 are held in pretrial. Programs like ODR Housing and the Rapid Diversion Program already show that treatment and supervision work better than incarceration. We need to divert funding to care focused on crisis stabilization units, residential treatment, and supportive housing. It's crucial that we fund places where people can actually get care instead of being warehoused in Men's Central Jail. Funding these options fulfill the county's Care First Jail's Last vision and makes our communities safer and stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Nema Man. I'm a resident of District 2 and a student at Loyola Law School, where I've been studying the harmful consequences of pretrial detention on our community. I witnessed jail conditions firsthand, and I urge the board to invest in community-based alternatives. A majority of people in jail in Elia County are held there pretrial because they cannot afford bail. Even a few days in detention can cause a person to lose their job, housing, or custody of their kids, and it actually increases the chance of rearrest. Court reminders, transportation assistance, and access to treatment have proven to improve court appearance rates and reduce rearrest at less than half the cost of detention. J-COD was a critical first step towards Care First, Jail's Last. Now, the county needs to expand its services to be available at every courthouse. This board has committed to closing Men's Central Jail, and it must increase its investments in community-based alternatives to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And then you got here. I want to express my sincere and grateful and for a wonderful and faithful courage and for solution solving of the community, the community. But I'm wondering if maybe next time, could you please offer us a comparison analysis, a comparison analysis? Because we cannot be the only county in the world, in the USA, in America, to have this problem. We cannot be the only county in the whole world that has affordable, that's not affordable in the history of the world. We cannot be the only county in the whole world that has so many people in jail.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greetings, my name is Dr. Critical Truth Bay Policy Analyst for the 6th Region. I appreciate the presentation today, but let's talk about statistics. You have about 113 deaths from 2023, 45 in 2023, 32 in 2024, 36 in 2025, 113 total. Two-thirds of that is from fentanyl, methamphetamine, and heroin. So if Robert Luna really cared, he would have stayed here and listened to all of the public comment, because again, a lot of these families lose people. When you look at the LSD website of these deaths, you don't even have their names, they're just statistics. So, Mr. Wilfred Pickney, appreciated again, but this presentation is just as good as aluminum foil toilet paper. What they need right now is actually real-life help. They need help, they need phone calls, you need to be not overcharged, you really need computers, they need books, just simple stuff. Chedima umme. Thank you, but please, make the change.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I would like to respectfully request two minutes to address both items, if that's okay.
We're on items 12, yeah.
27. 12 and 27. I note, somebody else was able to get two minutes? Chair and members of the board, for the record, Dr. Issraana Al-Mohammed. Items 12 and 27 together on closing Men's Central Jail and the Pitchess Detention Center represent the county's historic shift from custody to care. That transition embodies the prevention and equity logic first documented in the ADA-protected Bureau Care-to-Custody Cemetery Pipeline and the B2C3A Pipeline Prevention Model. Today's action operationalizes the very idea that infrastructure can prevent harm, that capital planning, human rights, and public safety belong in the same sentence.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker.
Surprisingly ready to go, I want to give a shout out to my only son. I love you, Angel. Mom's still fighting for you, all these years have passed, you know, statutes of limitations, but not for you, son.
We're on item number 12 and 27.
And not for you that's been taken away from DCFS hands, and immunity does not stop, right? So I came prepared, let me get, hopefully I can read it really fast, here we go. This is for you, Angel. Hi, honey. I love you.
Ma'am, you need to be giving public comment on items 12 and 27.
This is for the gender for DCFS, okay?
This is not a DCFS item?
Well, he told me to pass, so I don't know how about you talk to your comrade, honey?
No, well, you can come back and bring general public comment, and then you can speak.
He told me to come ahead and speak, so I'm gonna just speak. All right, so excuse me, ma'am, okay? So this is for all children in foster care, for profit, right? Under neglect, the guys, okay? So excuse me, please, if it comes from you, yes, I say, must tell you the truth. So let's start healing everybody, okay? Who has been in this big trap, this maze, spider webs, groupie love, grouped up for studies, grouped up on...
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes public comment on these items. The report for item 12 will be received and filed.
All right. Motion on item number 12, I'll move it, seconded by...
12 is a receivable file.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, the 27, go ahead and read it then, Eddie.
So on item 12, it will be a receivable file?
Yeah.
Is that okay with no...
Hearing no objections, that will be the order. On item 27, which is before us, I will move it, seconded by Supervisor... Horvath. To approve this item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
No.
Supervisor Horvath, no. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries, 3, 2, 1, with 1 no and 1 no. Madam Chair, it's my understanding that there are no specials, so we can move on to general public comment.
Okay.
At this time, we will hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not on items on the meeting agenda. For members of the public joining us remotely, please use the raise hand feature if you are online, or press star 3 if on a telephone.
We will now call in in-person speakers, and while they're coming forward, we will take remote speakers. Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you? Danielle Garcia, Dr. Ezra Muhammad, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, and Loretta Lorraine, and Rosie Espinoza. Caller with phone number 818-645, your line is open, please state your name and begin.
Today, it's going to end soon, I need to cancel your closed sessions for the day, but we covered a lot of player territory, and I wish I had a better answer about the endless struggle between the community seeking justice and the justice system, which just doesn't seem to work very well. That said, I want to congratulate Jared B. Ray, the new CEO, for staying awake during a high percentage of today's festivities, most of it for sure, some, obviously, all of us. And by the way, it's, you know, little care that the service we can provide is as good as it gets, okay? That's all I'm saying. And once again, thanks to Horvath for bringing the bright, bright light when needed, and I hope Hon's feeling okay. I don't know where she is, but I assume this is some kind of a unscheduled holiday in advance of the November 12 cancellation.
Thank you. Roy Humphries, your line is open, please begin.
Okay, I'll be short and sweet here. Long live and God protect President Trump from the Democrat loons and assassins, and God bless America. And check my YouTube channel if you want some real enlightenment. And for Hilda Solis, when is that 7th Avenue Motel 6 going to be opened up for the unhoused? It seems like it's been almost forever, but that's the county, okay? And we need more and better jails, and properly done. I want to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller, your line is open, please begin.
Frederick Ramsdale, alumnus of UCLA campus, was among a trio of scientists winning the Nobel Prize in Medicine. I didn't see any celebrations in the streets. Last week, some people hitting balls, albeit one out of the park, caused commotion in the streets. There for the world to see, with all the talk of trying to stop street takeovers, all the world to see donuts being performed in full view of law enforcement, adjacent to people utilizing the crosswalk. This was for a division or whatever. Next week, is the county prepared for what's about to come? Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with phone number 323-652, please state your name and begin.
This is Byron, calling as a very concerned individual, long-term resident in SD2, resident donor in SD1. This meeting, over the last four years, the chair has said that if it puts in the agenda, she will vote to close the Men's Central Jail today at that moment. If the November 12 meeting is canceled, that leaves us less than a handful of meetings to actually put this on the agenda and put this on a vote, so we do not continue to use our budget, our very limited and shrinking budget that we opened this meeting, into carceral system and prioritize care first for our community. So we look forward to seeing that leadership from this body, from this board, and hopefully being joined by our other abolitionist offices. offices, our legacy offices, like S E four. But more importantly, making sure that we're moving to close the jail and not just continue to fund and build out. And more importantly, we need Joe and Council Harrison as the next D F C I.
Thank you. Claudia Jerez, your line is open. Please begin.
Head of CPSS, ten years, ICMS Case Manager, D W C. I would like to talk about deterrence. DA attorney, District Attorney did talk about deterrence. I tell you, if the deflection doesn't work, the diversion doesn't work, if the, you know, the deterrent doesn't work, then I think that the fourth D will be death. You hear? That means that if you don't change your ways, then you're gonna have to face death. I think that's very, very serious to say it, but I can say that I don't believe in death. I believe in second chances. And I can tell you, I think that custody to recovery, custody to rehabilitation is very real, is very important, that you know that there are people that deserve second chances. And I think that everybody will agree that is something that we do need. We do need people to have second chances. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Egenberg, your line is open. Please begin.
Hi, Helen Egenberg. I'm a resident of S D three. I'm really trying to understand your priorities when it comes to the care of juveniles in our system. And sadly, it's becoming so clear when you all continue to take updates off the agenda, to discuss what is happening in our two juvenile hall facilities that are still not compliant. We are approaching the one-year mark here. And sadly, Supervisor Barker, you allow the Chief of Probation, who reports to you all, the board, and us, the constituents, to decide when he wants to come and give us updates. I cannot give up believing that we can do better for our youth. We have so much that we could be doing. We have those high-tech scanners now, and we have better trained dogs. Let parents hug their kids, please. When are we, are we gonna move into two-year mark for noncompliance? Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Lovett, your line is open. Please begin.
I've been closing Men's Central Jail. I've been, my son died there in 2021. And back then, you were talking about closing the jail. Here today, four years later, we're still talking, with no benchmarks in place, or no definite closure on the jail. How many people do we have to lose? We're, the jail is averaging a death a week. You know, I don't know what's killing these people in there, because I'm not in there. But it, from my understanding, it's drugs. How the drugs are getting into the jails. Sheriff Lewin needs to invest in finding out what his deputy gangs are doing, and not trying to build more jails. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board. Remote participation for general public comment is now concluded. We will now go to our in-person speakers. Please begin.
Okay, I'm Miss Loretta Lorraine. I do gotta thank you, Ms. Mitchell. My identity crisis has been fixed because of your staff. I'm really proud of what your staff has done for me. When I came to see y'all at your office, also, I'm ready to give y'all all a show when y'all want to get Ms. Loretta Lorraine a chance to give you a drag show, one of my old-school shows. I would be glad to. And the matter that I would like to talk about is to make sure that our, our community will be safe, and y'all make the right funds to keep them alive and to keep them in a safe place, that they don't have to go to jail and be prosecuted for things that they're, they're trying to be. Because I know we have a mob inside the jail, a horrible mob. Even that DA, I don't know what he's talking about, because he's the, he's the leader of the ring. And we have, we all got to come together and make sure that our community is safe for the blacks, for the Hispanics, and also for the people that are going-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
For the record, this is Dr. Israa Al-Mohammed, author of the ADA-protected Bureau Care to Custody Cemetery Pipeline and the B-2C-3A Pipeline Prevention Model frameworks. These frameworks were entered into the county, state, and federal public record to establish the evidentiary basis for trauma-informed prevention equity governance, now observable across multiple Los Angeles County departments. This October twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five agenda, spanning public health, housing, probation, capital planning, and social service integration documents the first comprehensive institutional convergence between a county system and an ADA-protected community authored prevention framework. This convergence is not theoretical. It is structural, measurable, and historically traceable to the Bureau Care to Custody Cemetery Pipeline and the B-2C-3A Pipeline Prevention-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Here we go. Okey-dokey. Good morning, I want to say, good afternoon. Hi, Angel, I love you. It's mom. Now we're gonna stop fighting for you, sonny. Kissy on your bequity nose, you already know. Okay, hi, Angel, my only son. And this is for all kids in foster care, foster care for profit, under neglect, you know, the disguise. Okay, excuse me, please, if it comes from you. Yes, I say, must tell the truth. I, to start healing every entity who has been in this big trap, maze, spider webs, groupie love. Hey, groupie love, grouped up for studies. You know that? They study us, guys. Grouped up under discrimination and disguise. Angel, I apologize for this corrupt system. Sorry to say the truth. And that we have been a part of all these years, not only that, but publicly ignored without privacy and to this blind eye system. Forgive us, children, that we all have been tied up in this system, tied up so tight that we can't even fight at the moment. But since we're grouped up-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right. So, thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
Well, that's what the county does. DCFS, you really make people go bananas. So in short, even though you defunded Lhasa, we still have some holes.
Stop the clock, please. Hold on. Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
I don't know if you could reset it, because-
We stopped the clock. Go ahead.
Okay. So, we still have some holes. There's a lot of available housing available, where people are not being matched. There are also temporary shelters, where people are being put out. They're being exited. Not only are they being exited, but we have one particular gentleman, Lamar Washington, whose mother was actually in the system herself. So he was exited out of program, placed called home on eighty-eighth and Broadway. Not only did they discard his items thirty minutes after exiting, but he did not return in time because he got hit by a car. When he returned back, he was put out. We have to stop creating these temporary shelters as mini jails. He's on his way here, and I ask you guys to please have oversight for these temporary shelters. That's path and-
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes our time for general public comment.
And before you call, was on the agenda, we are going to continue closed session. I've talked to the CEO, and he feels that there's nothing time-sensitive that can't wait. So go ahead.
All right. So next, we have adjournments.
Yep.
Madam Chair, we have adjournments, and I believe Supervisor Mitchell will be beginning.
Okay. We will begin adjournments with Second District, followed by Third District, Fifth District, and I think the First has no adjournments.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Colleagues, when we adjourn today, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Henry Dayton Jackson, Jr. Mr. Jackson was born October eleventh, nineteen forty, and passed away on October thirteenth, just two days after his eighty-fifth birthday. He was a proud resident of U Park Windsor Hills community for sixty-five years, where he built a life rooted in family, service, and community. In nineteen ninety-seven, during a period of disinvestment when South LA communities were increasingly overlooked and underserved, Mr. Jackson made the courageous decision to open Hank's Mini Market near Florence and Eleventh Avenue. While many businesses were leaving the area, he chose to stay and invest. And for over two decades, he cared deeply for his customers and built his business on trust, consistency, and generosity. His store became more than just a market. It stood as a community anchor. In his latter years, Mr. Jackson entrusted Hank's Mini Market to his daughter Kelly, who, motivated by the concept of food deserts, transformed it from a liquor store into a vibrant hub for food justice and community wellness. Supported by the Los Angeles Food Policy Council and Sweetgreen, the market reopened in twenty eighteen, offering fresh produce, local art, wellness programs, and a safe gathering space. Mr. Jackson's belief in service laid the foundation for a business that continues to evolve and uplift while remaining true to its roots. In twenty nineteen, when I served in the California State Senate, I had the honor of presenting Hank's Mini Market with the Small Business of the Year Award. The market also received the Bay Good NAACP Black Own Small Business Impact Fund Grant and was named Small Business Champion by the L.A. Sparks. Mr. Jackson was known for his good humor, generous spirit, and his ability to make everyone feel seen and valued. A hard worker who also loved to enjoy life, especially golf, he will be remembered as a devoted husband and father, a respected community member, and a small business owner whose leadership and service made a lasting impact. He is survived by his beloved wife Dolores, six children, two grandchildren, and a host of extended family, friends, and neighbors and customers. Customers who benefited from him investing in the mini market, including refrigeration, so that they could have options for fresh fruits and vegetables, which are miles and miles from their neighborhoods. We hope that his family continues to uphold his legacy of kindness, resilience, and community care. When we adjourn today, I move that we adjourn in the memory of Diana Miller Shower. Mrs. Shower was born on November fourth, nineteen thirty-eight, in Omaha, Nebraska, and passed away on September twenty-second at the age of eighty-six. As a young girl, she moved with her family to Long Beach, where she later graduated from Cal State University Long Beach. Mrs. Shower served as a first-grade teacher, where she found immense joy in teaching young children to read, a calling she embraced with passion and care. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Shower lived a life grounded in service, faith, and family. She was an avid reader who devoted her time to Bible study and volunteered with programs focused on literacy and teaching English as a second language. Her commitment to education and compassion for others touched many lives over the decades. In nineteen sixty-four, she married Thomas Lee Shower. Two children were born of their union, and in nineteen sixty-eight, the family moved to Manhattan Beach, where Mrs. Shower remained a beloved resident for fifty-seven years. Mrs. Shower will be remembered as a loving and devoted wife and mother, admired for her kindness, strength, and unwavering love. Mrs. Shower is survived by her children, Thomas and Teresa, her brother-in-law Robert, nephew Todd, nieces Tamara and Diana, and a wide circle of extended family and cherished friends. When we move, when we adjourn today, I move that we adjourn in the memory of Betty A. Taylor Chalman. Mrs. Taylor Chalman was born on December eleventh, nineteen forty-one, in Dallas, and passed away September nineteenth at the age of eighty-three. From an early age, she was full of purpose and determination. In high school, she excelled academically and was actively engaged in student life, singing in the choir, leading as a majorette, and contributing to the school newspaper. After graduation, she and her identical twin sister Janice moved to Los Angeles, where they made their first home at the historic Sojourner Truth House in the Crenshaw community. Committed to lifelong learning, Mrs. Taylor Chalman pursued further education at El Camino College, earning a certificate in nutrition and dietetic studies, laying the groundwork for a distinguished career in public health. Her service to others spanned more than four decades. She began her professional journey at the L.A. Veterans Affairs Hospital in Westwood in nineteen seventy. After the nineteen seventy-one San Fernando earthquake, she transitioned to the county's Department of Health Services, serving in the Dietary Division of Rancho Los Amigos Hospital. In nineteen eighty-four, she became a lab tech, where she served with distinction until her retirement in twenty sixteen. Throughout her career, Mrs. Taylor Chalman was known for her diligence, compassion, and deep sense of duty, earning the respect of colleagues and the gratitude of the community she so faithfully served. Her dedication to public service extended well beyond the workplace. For thirty-five years, she was a proud and charant member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, actively participated in community outreach and service. A woman of unshakable faith, she welcomed many into her home and her heart, embodying the values of kindness, generosity, and grace. Above all, she was devoted to her family. Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Taylor Chalman is survived by her five children, Kalen, Karen, Keith, Kenneth, and Cynthia, thirteen grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. She also leaves behind a loving extended family, dear friends, and cherished sorority sisters who will carry forward her legacy of love, service, and faith. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I move that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of Joaquin June G. Chu, Jr., a longtime resident of the Antelope Valley, who passed away on October fifth at the age of seventy-nine. Growing up in the Philippines, June was the eldest of six children and worked in his family's lumber and bakery businesses. June attended Mahfouh University of Technology studying mechanical engineering, while also managing a fleet of trucks for his family's lumber business. He met his future wife, Nadavidad, while managing the truck fleet where she worked at her brother, at her brother's gas station. Married in nineteen sixty-six, they moved to the United States in nineteen seventy-six. The couple owned and operated stores in Stockton, California, from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-one. In nineteen ninety-one, the family moved to the Antelope Valley. Then, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand nine, June owned and operated Manila Seafood Center in Lancaster. June is survived by his wife, Nadavid, children Joaquin Willie Chu, III, Miriam Pagayo, Timothy Chu, and Grace Cumberbatch, their spouses, seven grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. I also move that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of longtime Claremont resident Judith Carroll Judy Roberts, who passed away peacefully on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, at the age of seventy-eight. Born on December thirteenth, nineteen forty-five, Judy spent her early years on her family's ranch in the Antelope Valley before moving to Pomona. She graduated from Genesha High School in nineteen sixty-three and earned her degree from California State University Hayward before settling in Claremont in nineteen seventy-six. After earning her teaching credential, Judy dedicated more than twenty-two years to the Claremont Unified School District Teaching Special Day classes at Condit and Chaparral Elementary Schools. Known for her compassion and creativity, she inspired students and colleagues alike and formed lifelong friendships throughout her career. Judy's creativity went beyond the classroom. She loved organizing school luncheons, celebrations, and community gatherings, adding her signature touch of color, sparkle, and joy. A lifelong Disney enthusiast, she treasured times spent at Disneyland with her sister and grandchildren. Her home reflected her warm and welcoming spirit, a place filled with charm, laughter, and love. Through the years of cancer treatment and recovery, Judy faced every challenge with courage, grace, and optimism. Her family expressed deep gratitude to her doctors and her caregivers for their compassion and kindness. Judy Roberts will be remembered for her kindness, resilience, and dedication to her students and to her family. Her legacy is one of love, creativity, and community spirit that will continue to inspire all who knew her. She is survived by her children Heather Davis, Amy Mann, and Loston Roberts, her beloved grandchildren Mackenzie, Katie, Landon, brothers Richard and Jeffrey Lewis, and many nieces, nephews, and extended family members. And last, I move that when we adjourn, we do today, we do so in memory of Donna Sytts, who passed away on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the age of sixty-seven. Donna leaves behind a legacy of kindness, excellence, and unwavering commitment to public service. She was born on September fourteenth, nineteen fifty-eight, in Northern California. She began, she began her remarkable career with the county in November of nineteen seventy-seven as a typist clerk for the chief executive office. Through her hard work, perseverance, and deep commitment to public service, she rose through the ranks to become an Assistant Chief Legislative Representative, proudly representing Los Angeles County in the state capitol. Donna dedicated forty-five years of exemplary service to the county of Los Angeles and retired December of twenty twenty-two. Donna was a loving mom, a cherished sister, and a devoted aunt, and a dear friend. Donna is survived by her daughter Lauren Sytts, along with countless friends and colleagues whose life she's touched.
Madam Chair, if I can join on that, I knew Donna well from my days lobbying for the Western Center on Poverty up until becoming elected myself. Worked with her very closely for many years. I had no idea she passed. If I could be added, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, we, I think Friday we were notified. So, yeah, we should probably do all as a county employee. So with that, we will take all of those adjournments without objection. So ordered. This will conclude today's board meeting. Our next meeting of the board will be a public hearing meeting to be- be a public hearing meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 28, 2025, at nine thirty. Have a good day. I can't believe we're getting out of here before dark.
I'm Supervisor Hilda Solis, and I'm here in the city of Montebello, and we are celebrating Adventist Health White Memorial in Montebello. And today, we presented a check for $1 million for this trauma hospital. But here we are right now at this new community resource center that's going to be opening up for the community. So many volunteers and family members and folks that come in and help support and partnership with the hospital can come here, get training, receive services, and it's going to be open to the public. I think in the next few months, it'll be available, but they'll provide vital services. But what I just went through right now is amazing. One of the very few hospitals that I have actually been involved with to see a robotic experiment that has been going on now for, I think, maybe over a year, where they use robotics, actual tools, to conduct very important surgeries. It cuts the time in half for these surgeries that are very intricate, but also saves lives and the cost. So I'm excited about what's happening here, the repurposing of this, this hospital, which almost shuttered almost three years ago. It was on the verge. At that time, it was known as Beverly Hospital, and it was going to close. But with the intervention of the state and the county and other partners, they were able to keep it open. And obviously, the Adventist Health Corporation came in and helped to provide the support and funding and staff to keep it open. So they really haven't had one day where they've been closed. And I'm so happy that now we could, as a county of Los Angeles, through Measure B, help provide them with $1 million to help them in their trauma unit, to build out and expand the services, not just for the city of Montebello, but for the neighboring community. Many of our cities across the way, Whittier, Pico Rivera, San Gabriel Valley, as far as El Monte and other places, people come here for treatment. They know this facility, they trust it, and it is one of those very, very much welcomed jewels, diamond in, diamond in the roughs that exist here in the San Gabriel Valley. So I want to encourage people to come by, visit, and understand the kind of healthcare treatment that's being provided here, and will continue to grow. So thank you so much for joining us today.